Trustee Jackie Calvert. Trustee Jeff Church.
Here.
Trustee Diane Nicolet.
Present.
Trustee Kurt Thigpen.
I'm here, and I may have the job off at some point depending on how long the meeting goes on for.
Okay, and our student representative is not here right now. We have a quorum.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's see, we're gonna ask, uh, we'll ask Deputy Superintendent Debbie Byers-Dorf, since this is graduation week, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you very much, Deputy Superintendent, as we celebrate some graduations. All right, just as we, as we, as we begin the meeting, I just want to review just some updates and protocols, because we know a couple of things have changed. Obviously, first of all, regarding public comment, for the record, public comment has not been removed from the agenda. Every action item, as considered by the Board, will, as standard, continue to have a public comment period. General public comment, however, which is public comment for those items not listed on the agenda, will occur only at the end of the meeting. This, and this decision was made by myself in consultation with the Board Leadership Team, as well as with Chief, our Chief General Counsel, and also including our Superintendent. We just have to be able to do a better job of conducting the District's business, and are not prioritizing items that have been noticed on the agenda as agenda items could potentially disenfranchise folks who have tuned in for those or shown up for those items. Pro or con, either side of the issue certainly doesn't matter. Sometimes, as we've all been paying attention, we haven't gotten to those agendized or prioritized items till nine, 10 o'clock at night, sometimes as late as one o'clock in the morning, and that certainly can serve to potentially disenfranchise those folks. After the published, noticed, agendized items, then I believe we have proven as a Board that we will stay as long as it takes to get, uh, to hear the rest of the public comment that is available, and of course, people continue to have the opportunity to email in public comment, publiccomment@washowschools.net. Again, publiccomment@washowschools.net. None of that is new, but I think it's important to note that that change was made. There is still plenty of opportunity for public comment, and that, um, and that this is, uh, goes for whatever side of any issue, you have the opportunity to come, and we certainly, I encourage you to do so, to come forward or to send in an email, and as usual, we will continue throughout the meeting to our, I'll continue to remind my colleagues, make sure we continue to take a look at those general public comments, or any public comments for that matter, that may come on, come to us during the course of the meeting, and then all written in public comments will continue, if, as a practice, to be made a part of the record for the meeting. Will be included in the minutes when they are posted, and will become a part of the record of the meeting. Additionally, just in terms of some review, in terms of our conduct during the meeting, and we appreciate in advance your support of this. We know it's important. Your time is important. Our time is important, and when you take your time to come to the meeting, that's important, and we do value that. We want to make sure that that, that time is spent in a way that's respectful on whatever side of the issue that is a place where people feel like it's, they're comfortable coming forward, and I'm asking for everybody's support in that, again, on any side of either issue. I work really hard to try to treat everybody the same. On this, I think it's important from a context standpoint, so just for reminders, again, we'll welcome public comment, as noted before. That public comment, however, should be substantially related to the item being considered. Going to ask you to really discipline yourself around that, substantially related to the item being considered on any side of any issue that is the case. I'm gonna also remind you that our purpose is to just be more efficient in conducting the people's business for the District, and so we're gonna ask to really, to really try to limit as much as possible distractions, which, and we know we've been over this before, long applause, lot of polite applause, fine, just not lengthy, not long, not to a point where it is of a distraction. Again, on any side of either issue, please no shouting out, no profanity, exactly stated, no media law, things like profanity, repetition, public, personal attacks, and all, not public, but personal attacks and all of that. I just want to ask you to please govern yourself accordingly on whatever side of any issue you may be on. Going to ask you to do that. Should any of those, um, lying so to speak be crossed, then we'll ask you to please adhere to them, give you a warning, and then beyond that, then we just have to ask you to leave, so that we can do, do the best job we can in conducting the people's business on behalf of, the District's business, I should say, on behalf of the people. So it's important to, to remind everyone of that, and probably that if you wouldn't, wouldn't mind, now that's a great reminder, thank you. All of us silence our cell phones, including all of us up here, to the extent that we can. So that being the case, from a reminder standpoint, just wanted to put that out to make sure everybody knows that those are the protocols, nothing new in that except for we'll replace a general public comment. Otherwise, just all be mindful of being respectful and courteous as we go forward. All right, so we'll go on to the agenda. Agenda item 1.04, this is action to adopt the agenda. My understanding is that there is public comment on this item. So JJ, I will turn it over to you.
Correct. John Epalito, Nicole Harris, Bruce Parks, Melanie Sutton.
My name is John Epalito. I've had kids in the District continuously for 18 years, only two years left. I've been intimately involved with this Board for 12 years, longer than most of you have been up there. I initially got involved because Superintendent Heath Morrison attempted to implement the International Baccalaureate Program in Incline for all schools. There was a bitter two-year battle that divided the community of Incline Village. Eventually, Mr. Morrison saw things my way and abandoned the IB program for Incline. But now Superintendent McNeil and President Taylor have decided our entire school district, have divided our entire school district by attempting to focus less on educating children in the basics and more on sitting them in front of screens for up to a few hours per day for their education, depending on the school and grade level.
Mr. Epalito, she always stops the clock when, because your time-
She doesn't always stop the clock, Angie.
Well, Mr. Epalito-
I'm gonna get to the point in just a minute. It's gonna take me longer if you interrupt me more.
Mr. Epalito, it won't be longer. It will only be three minutes.
It's longer right now, because you're still talking, Angie.
Mr. Epalito, I'm just going to remind you that the comment needs to be related to the agenda item. Do you understand that? You know the rules. Please adhere to them. I would really appreciate that.
Don't start it yet. I lost my spot. Hold on.
Go ahead, JJ. Start the clock, please.
No, don't start it yet. You interrupted me, Angie, and I lost my, that's not okay. Can you please stop it? Now, Kristin and Angie and a few others would like to teach everyone critical race theory starting in kindergarten. You can call it social justice, but this document that was posted on the District website and available for all the public is critical race theory. The District still won't say if teachers still have access to the document. People can find the document on our private Facebook page, Protect Nevada Children. The District's own survey showed 84% of the community is against teaching critical race-
Mr. Epalito, I'm gonna need you to get to the point and connect to the agenda item, sir.
It's in the next paragraph, Angie. Get there quicker if you wouldn't interrupt me. "The District's own survey showed 84% of the community is against teaching social justice critical race theory. The Board meetings have confirmed that most people are against this, including many BIPOC. Instead of listening to a majority of the community, you are supposed to be representing, you decide to silence us by removing the initial public general comments from the beginning of this meeting. Just a couple of us would not be silenced when fighting IB in Incline, and many more of us will not be silenced now. Kristin and Angie, you have done an excellent job in dividing our community, including our teachers. Many of the people you classify as BIPOC have come in here and said, 'Please stop trying to divide us.' Teachers are afraid to speak up, so they send their friends in here to read comments for them. Instead of listening, it appears you have decided you know what's best for all the kids. When I asked this Board to stop at the last meeting, I did not mean to stop listening to us. I meant to please stop dividing our community. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Epalito.
For the record.
No applause, please, please. Okay, that's, that's one warning. That's one warning for everyone in here. No applause, please. Thank you very much. I would appreciate it.
Nicole Harris, Bruce Parks, Melanie Sutton, Matt Tru.
Welcome, Ms. Harris.
Good afternoon. I want to speak on specifically the 1.04, and I want to bring up the public comment, which is on, I don't know, the third page, number seven. You know, it's pretty hot out there. I've had a heat stroke, and I'm sitting out there. There's not enough room. It's not air conditioning. I have no problem to sit with you during the entire Board meeting, however, we've got elderly people out there. So to move the public comment section back to whenever you are discussing it, it's really hard. The reasons why we are here is because we care about what is going on at the School Board meeting. We have the right to speak. If you're gonna limit our public comments down to maybe 15 seconds, that's not acceptable, and if you think the crowds are really up and roar now, wait till they hear about this, because what you're doing basically is, we are sitting here, listening to all the agenda items, and then we're not sure what we're going to be called to. So do we go home and take care of our dogs? Do we take care of dinner? Do I take care of my husband? Or do I say, "Well, you know, I'm dedicating all day Tuesday to be here at the School Board because I'm interested in giving public comments." I think you have to agree that it's, there is a better way of doing it. Now, if you're going to one o'clock in the morning, I don't think that's healthy either. So either you decrease the number of items, or we come to some conclusion, resolution, of how we can work together so we don't have this continued dialogue, you know, pretty soon we're gonna be on the freeway, because you don't want us here on the lawn area because, say, we're too noisy. Well, the problem is, we can't hear what's going on here, okay? If we're sitting out on the lawn. So I don't even know when I'm supposed to be up here until somebody says, "Oh, Nicole, you're next to go speak. You better get in here." Well, meanwhile, all my possessions are out there. It's 90 degrees. This is only June, and I'm concerned about somebody having a health issue out there. Maybe you should have the paramedics out there standing by, because someone's gonna have a heat stroke or something, and I would hate to have the school district answer that particular program. So unless we're in, like, a DeMonte High School where it's air-conditioned for everybody, it's not humane. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Bruce Parks, Melanie Sutton, Matt Tru, Jean Haynes.
Welcome, Mr. Parks.
Well, I would like, once again, to be able to come in here and tell you all thanks for doing a great job, but not the case. Should I wait for you to finish your discussion? Thank you. That was a nice little speech you gave before the meeting started. Unfortunately, that dog won't hunt. Don't hold water. I asked you the last time I came here, "Stop lying to us." You know, I understand the politicians' penchant for prevarication, but what you're doing is outright lying. When you move the public comment from the first item on the agenda to the last item on the agenda, you clearly indicate how you feel about the general public. Now, I understand fully what you're trying to do. That's okay. We'll play this game out however you want to. You get to make the rules, not a problem, but if you think for one minute we're going away, you obviously don't understand what the word patriot means. Well, I will educate you on that. I'd also like to remind you, you, every one of you, work for us, not the other way around. One of these days, you'll come to grips with that fact. See, the reason your meeting lasted so long last time is because you're not doing your jobs the way the general public thinks you should be, and that's why so many of us had to come in here and tell you that. You see, it's our job not only to present our grievances, but to give you guidance on how we feel things should be done. That's our job as patriots and as citizens. It's a duty, and we expect you to listen when we tell you things, but you don't. So your meeting lasted until well after one o'clock last time, because general public comment lasted so long. Well, it lasted so long because the public is fed up. We're disgusted with what we're seeing. We're tired of our elected representatives not doing what we asked them to do. You want this to end? Do your jobs. Real simple. But no, you have a mandate to put out a specific product that you are not complying with. We're not getting the product that we're paying for. And until that time, this is gonna continue. We understand. We're in a war here for our kids. You've clearly demonstrated three things to us. You hate us. You hate our kids, and you hate America. Thank you.
Yes, Chief Counsel. Thank you, Mr. Parks.
For the record, we started the meeting with 27 empty seats. We currently have 12 empty seats and an entire overflow room that is sitting empty, so anybody choosing to sit outside is doing so on their own accord.
Melanie Sutton, Matt Tru, Jean Haynes, Val White.
Welcome back, Ms. Sutton.
Good afternoon. As you see, I'm gonna pretty much repeat everything my friends have said so far and what they'll be going forward as far as speaking. The fact, you guys are cowards. You guys do not want to listen to us. You guys are paid by us, the people, and not doing your jobs. You want to remove the first public comment, 3.01, remove that completely, and only have the end public comment. Why? Because we aren't gonna stay here and wait for public comment? You guys don't want to listen to us? Okay, when we first started coming, there was almost 100 people. A few, I think it was probably four months ago, probably longer than that. But anyways, we had like 100 people. That was at Hugh Hug High, I think, and then the audio, the audio was terrible, and then we had it at DeMonte Ranch, and then you canceled, went to Zoom for, I think, three times, and then you finally opened it up to the public again and brought us here where there's not any room for everybody to listen to the, everybody else's comments, and then, well, you also moved it from four o'clock to two o'clock. Why? Because people are at work and you don't want them to show up? And then you, and then remove public comment, the first public comment. Like, what are you afraid of? What are you afraid of? The truth? That the people are not happy with the jobs you guys are doing? What are you afraid of? I mean, that is the most cowardly thing. I've called you cowards over and over again. That is beyond the pale, that you do not want us to come here for the first public comment because you don't want to hear from us, because you guys are doing a lousy job in not working for the people and not working for our children, our precious children, our future, the future of our, our community, the future of our country. You guys are not doing what's best for them. You're dividing us and not doing your job.
Matt Tru, Jean Haynes, Val White, James Benton.
Mr. Tru, please, welcome, sir. Your mic's not on. Hang on. Okay, go ahead.
Is it on now? Okay, yeah, I guess you know why I'm here. It's, just to briefly comment about this 1.04. It looks like part of a pattern that I've been recognizing lately, since you guys have been kind of on the receiving end of a lot of criticism from those of us that are paying attention. This, this is kind of another tactic that, you know, if you want people to trust you, you don't use these tactics. I asked Mr. Cottle a couple of days ago, you know, what was behind this, and he gave me a brief explanation, and I, you know, I can kind of understand that, but it seems like a time, a very well-timed excuse, you know, and I, I don't, I don't agree with it. I, I think you guys are all, some of you are, you know, very well-educated people, more so than myself. I'm a carpenter with some, some college, you know, so, I don't know. It, it seems like you could probably figure out a better way to address that issue of, you know, accommodating time for people to say what we need to say to you guys. I'm sure you can do it. It's just time management skills. If you can't, I'd really like to know why. I mean, I, I schedule 40 different trades to be on a job site all the time, and, you know, they all have their own things going on, and we figure it out, and, you know, I don't have a bachelor's degree or a PhD. I manage, though, you know, and so I figured you guys can do that, you know. I'm a little concerned about, you know, you knew there was gonna be a lot of us, so you put the signs out front, you know, like, "Hey, you people be quiet," you know. I was like, "Okay." You know, we're not, we're not a ruckus crowd. We're not the ones smashing in windows and burning down police departments, you know, in the name of social justice. Oh, by the way, I'd really like it if you would reach out to your partners at the local media and tell them to stop calling it social justice training, because that's not what it is. It's not social justice education. It is straight-up indoctrination. That's the truth of it. You know, you should be concerned when people are trying to figure out ways to get their kids out of the public school system, you know. I, I've been at it for years, doing it as much as I can, whenever I can afford to. So, you know, I know there's federal funds connected to this issue coming from the Biden-
Mr. Tru, you stay to the agenda item, sir.
It actually is, so. I know the Biden administration has connected some funds to local school districts to do with critical race theory, and I think that's the motivation for this pretended ignorance on how to manage time. Anyway, I'm gonna walk away with 10 seconds left over. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Tru.
Jean Haynes, Val White, James Benton, Catherine Snedgar.
Welcome, Ms. Haynes. If you can get that mask over your nose, ma'am, I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for listening to me. First of all, I want to say that we are not a racist country. I also want to say that I've heard and read that Nevada is like number 50 in the lineup of education. When I went to school, I was-
I'm sorry, Ms. Haynes. I'm gonna stop you just a, this is on agenda item 1.04, so it has to be about the action to approve the agenda.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Okay, so what I'm trying to say is, we need, I think what you guys need to do is stick to educating our children properly and get away from political and other kinds of things. We-
If you can stay on the agenda item, ma'am. The agenda item is the action to adopt the agenda. That's, so your public comment has to be related to the action to adopt the agenda for the meeting.
Well, then, thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Val White, James Benton, Catherine Snedgar, Margaret Martini.
Welcome, Ms. White.
To be clear, my comments refer to agenda item 1.04. Let's see, how much does WCSD want the public to know what they're doing? How much does WCSD want to hear from the public? Public comment at the beginning of Board meetings was eliminated. Now, the only time remaining to speak on non-agenda items is at the end of the meeting. When will that be? That's a great way to keep public comment opportunities a mystery for anybody who wants to speak. That doesn't show a desire to hear public comment. Agenda item 104 allows the Board President to change the order of agenda items, delay agenda items, or remove agenda items completely. How's that for letting the public know when they can actually come and speak, when the entire decision of when it will happen is completely in the hands of the Board President? That doesn't show a desire for transparency or public input. Let's see. Do schools want the public to see what's going on inside them? Well, you can't go into a school if students are present. You can't go into a school if instruction is happening. You can't go into a school if assessment is going on. Tell me, when is any of that not happening? That's what schools are supposed to do. So essentially, it removes any opportunity to see what's happening. This is about agenda item 1.04. You can't go into a school if the principal says it's a disruption. You can't go into a school if the principal says you're a distraction. Doesn't this sound similar to agenda item 104, where they're preventing you from giving public input and seeing what's going on in the District? Now, the school district has stated that attendees cannot sit in the grass just outside the building. They also watered the grass to make it uncomfortable for those who are outside. Not everyone can wear a mask. That's why they're outside. Change the venue if you really want to accommodate public comment. Prove that you want to hear public comment. Change the venue. Why would anyone be sitting outside in 95-degree or more temperature? Because the School Board and Superintendent refuse to provide a venue that will accommodate the larger crowds that are now showing up to protest the Board President and Superintendent's tyranny. Agenda item 1.04 is proof that the District does not want to hear what parents and the public have to say. They want unilateral control of not just the agenda, but the curriculum as well. Parents, pull your kids out of this District. That's the only way you're going to save them. Matilda's Board is removed.
Thank you, Ms. White.
James Benton, Catherine Snedgar, Margaret Martini, Blair Speth.
We'll get it on, Mr. Benton.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Benton. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. For the record, my name is James M. Benton. Definitions do matter. I am a non-person, non-resident, unenfranchised, natural man, and I'm here to discuss 1.04, actions to adopt the agenda. I am very concerned that, of the missing public comment at the beginning of this, this meeting and the agenda. I feel that free speech, public comments, and the open meeting laws are being restricted by these changes. Also, missing from the agenda is Board reports that usually occur after the meetings. On the November 10th, 2020 agenda, 3.01 is public comment, and then towards the end of the meeting, 7.01, Board reports. These appear to show a willful limiting of ideas in exchange between voters, taxpayers, parents. I ask that the Board reconsider add public comments at the beginning of the meeting to allow more public conversation. Add Board reports at the end of the meeting to allow not only trustees, but voters and taxpayers and their supporters to be represented through these discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benton.
Catherine Snedgar, Margaret Martini, Blair Speth.
For the record, my name is Catherine Snedgar, a non-person, non-resident, unenfranchised, natural woman, meaning I am not a legal fiction like you people.
Ms. Snedgar, if you wouldn't mind keeping that mask over your nose, ma'am, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I have a hard time breathing with it over my nose, okay? I have other problems, and I'm not sick.
It's okay. We can get your face shield if that's better for you, Ms. Snedgar, but we have to have it over your nose, okay? We can get your face guard if that, because it's easier to breathe that way. I understand it. Would you like a, would you like a face shield?
I'll just hold it out here.
Okay.
Because this is garbage. The whole COVID-19 is garbage. You're wanting to stop public comment because you don't want it in the public record. That's the only reason. You don't want our comments to be part of the public record, so that other people can go and see what we've said. Why do you want to do that, unless you're up to no good? Teaching this critical race theory? Tell me. I'd like to hear from you. What do you say to the kid who has one black parent and one white parent, and you're teaching it, and you don't want us to talk about it and about this agenda?
It needs to stay on the agenda, ma'am.
It is on the agenda.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's why you don't want public comment out there, because we're talking about how critical race theory is not fair to the kids, especially if they have a black parent and a white parent. Which one are they supposed to love? The black one or the white one, or both? Or both? Or neither? And you don't want these kind of comments getting in your public record? And you don't want them on the agenda? This is a communist school district. It is communism. Force me to wear a mask when there is no COVID? You know there's no COVID. Everybody knows there's no COVID.
Ms. Snedgar, if you can stay on the agenda, ma'am.
I am. I don't care what you say. Your agenda to take off public comment is criminal. It's unconstitutional. It's a violation of our free speech. And you think you can regulate it by making it whenever you want? When I used to go to county commission meetings, they started at 6 o'clock. Now they're at 10 o'clock in the morning. And you're doing the same things. You're doing the exact same things. And then you want us to approve an agenda that takes away our voice? Really? What school did you go to? I think you guys ought to be ashamed of yourselves. And I think we ought to do something about reducing the administration's salary so we have more money for the kids. We need to get rid of the administration. There are way too many interpreters.
Ms. Snedgar, the agenda, please, ma'am.
If you decide that you're going to approve this agenda and take off public comment, get ready. That's all I can say. And I'll, my last minutes or seconds, I'll just stand here and let you think about it. It is now. You're not untouchable.
Thank you, Ms. Snedgar.
Margaret Martini, Blair Speth.
Welcome back, Ms. Martini.
Thank you. Have you guys read the First Amendment? Obviously, with taking public comment out of the agenda item being number one, it is your intent to stifle our voices. It is your intent to stifle the First Amendment rights that we have. I would just encourage you all to reread that First Amendment right so that you understand what you're doing here. And I'd like you also to understand that by pulling it, you're not pulling the wool over our eyes. We fully intend to be here and support our First Amendment rights and our right to speak up as public comments on items that are going on within this district. And I think that the first speaker was absolutely correct. If you think our public comments are too long, then change the rest of the agenda to make it more reasonable. This is more important than probably 60% of the items on this agenda. And you're not hearing our voices. You have stifled our voices and continue to do that, all of you that voted for this or will vote for this. And I think that I just want to reiterate that this is on you guys. This is your agenda. This is not the agenda that was approved by the public, who pay your salaries and who you answer to. So you need to keep that avenue open for us to comment and not comment at the end of the agenda. I don't--
If you can keep that mask up, ma'am. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I don't think that you understand that we understand exactly what you're trying to pull here. I can't even believe that you thought this would fly. It's not going to fly. And you are not going to be stepping on our First Amendment rights ever, ever, never. So by changing this agenda, this is not going to change the public and how we feel and how we want you to act and how we pay you to act. So you need to rethink about this because what's going to happen is there is going to be more and more people out here once they figure out that you've stifled our First Amendment rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martini.
Blair Speth.
Mr. Speth, welcome, sir.
I think it is unacceptable that you guys have taken the initial public comments off the agenda. I know there's been a lot of late nights here. I've listened to every single minute, okay? And I don't care. We need to be heard. We need to be able to resolve our differences with our government, and that is what we are trying to do. We're trying to get through to you. If you don't want to stay here till 1 o'clock, start doing your jobs, please. This is very indicative of the strategy that the board has been using ever since Kristin has been elected or appointed, okay? There's been a lot of policy changes during the time when you guys should have been getting kids back into classes and teaching them, okay? A lot of this stuff feels like it comes in the cover of night. It's like there's no, unless somebody's all over your page, they don't have a clue what you're doing. And I've been guilty of it, not any longer. We're going to keep coming back and keep coming back. And I think there needs to be an independent audit done of every policy change since Kristin was appointed. Independent, okay? This policy is ridiculous. Equity and diversity is not what kids need to be learning.
Agenda, please, sir? If you can stay on Agenda 1.04.
I am on the agenda, and I'm making a connection to the way that this board acts with policy.
Okay, Mr. Eppelito, one more shout, and I'm going to ask you to leave, okay, sir? Okay, if we can please ask Mr. Eppelito to leave? I've asked him and I've warned him. No, that's Mr. Parks. You can ask Mr.--
And that's really all I have to say.
Okay, I'm sorry, your time is paused. You won't lose your time.
Well, it's my time now.
Yeah, I know, but you won't lose your time, but we have to take care of this. So, Mr. Eppelito, I'm going to ask you to leave the meeting. Mr. Speth, I need to take, so you're on pause for just a moment. Mr. Eppelito, I'm going to ask you to leave the meeting if you would, sir.
Please bring back the initial public comment to these meetings. We need to be heard, okay? We are the people--
Thank you, Mr.--
You are politicians, and you need to listen to us.
Thank you, Mr. Eppelito.
That's what I have.
Thank you, Mr. Speth.
That's all I have for this item.
Thank you, JJ. Bring it back to the floor. Agenda Item 1.04. You're leaning in, trustee church. Do you have a comment, sir?
Well, I do, yes.
Go ahead, go right in.
I can approve the agenda as is based on the comments from the general public, with which I agree. The absence of board reports, future agenda items, and the initial public comment. If perhaps the board votes no to accept the agenda, then I would make a motion to add public comment right away, let the public come back and talk, and then we get on with business. I noticed that at the beginning, you stated as part of the agenda that light applause was allowed, light applause was allowed, and then you said no applause. So I'm conflicted there. The comments about the board meetings going till 1 a.m., and even if you take away three hours of public comment, that still puts us till 10 p.m. That's far too late for people to have to wait to give public comment. It's just unacceptable. Free speech is such a healthy, important part, and I enjoy the speech from all sides, whether I agree or disagree. But I think it disenfranchises the community to remove public comment from the initial public comment. I do, as a possible compromise, remember that at one point, we had a time certain 6 p.m. public comment, which I thought was at least an option, that people know they can show up at 6 and make public comment. And then you also made a comment that we're going to stay as long as it takes. Not me. I'm leaving tonight at 6:30. If we can't get this done by 6:30, I'm out of here. And in the future, I'll never stay until after midnight unless it's just absolutely positively urgent. And for the record, I was not consulted on the policy change. So I'm not saying it's illegal. I'm just saying that it's a bad policy. Efficient government is important, but it's not as important as free speech. Maybe perhaps open government was not intended to be efficient, and that's something we have to live with. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee church. Counsel, you asked a couple of questions of me, and I'm happy to address them, Jeff. Trustee church, sorry.
To be clear for the record, this is a limited public forum, which means you're not entitled to come in here and just say what you want, whenever you want. That's not how the First Amendment works. It's never been how the First Amendment works. This isn't a violation of the First Amendment, contrary to the trustee's comment. This is consistent with the First Amendment. It's also consistent with the open meeting law. We are allowing people to speak at every single action item, and that just needs to be placed on the record that this is not a First Amendment violation, nor is it a violation of the open meeting law.
Thank you, counsel. My comments, just as you addressed a couple of things to me, trustee church, is that, one is it's the board leadership team made this decision, and so it does not require consultation. And I've stated publicly, I've stated directly to you via email, and I've stated at this meeting, is it's really about giving those who are here to speak about the agendized items an opportunity to do so as agendized. It isn't about one comment on one area being more important than another comment on the other area. However, those items that are agendized, are items that we have said we are going to be taking into consideration, and therefore, those things do have that much of a priority. I was going to ask what part of this is a violation of free speech, because that certainly is important, and I think counsel addressed that issue. So, Dr. Nicolet, I see that your light is on, and then trustee church, I see your light is on as well.
Couple things. I enjoy having the public comments at the beginning of the meeting. I respect the leadership's decision. I also respect the fact that a large element has to do with ensuring that our employees get home at a reasonable time because they got to get up again, just like most of you in the morning. And we want them fresh and ready to go, to do their jobs. So I can't help but think, the last thing I ever want to do is stifle public comment. Having said that, public comment is not a conversation. It's one way. It's what it's meant to be. I would love for us to have dialogue because I truly believe that everyone in this room and out there want what's best for our students. The behavior is not acceptable. Name-calling, threatening is just not acceptable. I think that all of us should rise to a higher level and treat each other with dignity and respect, no matter how angry and frustrated you are. If we had little kids sitting here in the middle listening to us, I bet we wouldn't behave in the same way, so why would we treat each other this way? So I would like for us to consider relooking at public comment in the beginning. I would also like to look at it to be two minutes. Because one of the things I've noticed is that the eloquence really only lasts about two minutes, and then we all start repeating ourselves. So two minutes makes it quicker. You stated the point. We treat each other with dignity and respect, and we have it in the beginning and allow our employees to get the heck out of here at a reasonable time, all of us for that matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Trustee church.
Thank you. Just three comments. My notes reflect that I said I'm not saying it's illegal, but that I value free speech and feel that it's important. So I don't, I have to read the, I'll have to look at the video again, but I don't think I ever said that it was a free speech violation. So one of us owes the other an apology. And then I heard a comment about watering the grass. I hope that's not true because we've never watered the grass at this time of day before. And if that was done to disenfranchise people, that is absolutely disgusting, if it's true. And I totally agree with many of trustee Nicolet's comments. I don't approve of people speaking on non-agenda items if they wanted to speak on 1.04. I think that's great, and they can object to the lack of the public comment. Digressing onto the areas that they did, not acceptable. I don't condone Mr. Eppelito's behavior. I don't condone Mr. Parks' body language behavior. I want to make that clear. We're all citizens. We have to be respectful of each other, and I understand we get angry. And once again, I just don't ever recall saying, and if I did, I'll correct it, that it was a violation of free speech. I think it was a, that free speech is important. Thank you.
Counsel. Thank you, trustee church. Counsel.
Free speech is important, and the people that were up here did say it was a violation. And by insinuating that it's important supports that point of view and therefore is goading on that attitude, and I need to create a record to protect the organization, that we are not required to allow people to come up and speak and say whatever they want, whenever they want.
Thank you, counsel. I will just have a couple of comments, and I will say this. Trustee church, thank you for those comments in terms of which you do not condone. I think all of us in this room recognize that you have quite a level of influence, and to the extent that you can utilize that influence in that regard, I appreciate it. I will say a couple of things, and this may be reiterating some things. I think it's really, I think it's really important to note that when items are agendized and is publicized to the public that these items are going to be addressed, that it is not fair. It does disenfranchise those members of the public to wait until un-agendized items are shared. And that's one of the concerns that we've had, and we've had shared, I, as president, I certainly have shared with me. And when you address those items at 9, 10, 11, midnight, 1 o'clock in the morning, that's disenfranchising people who have tuned in or who have shown up to talk about those items. It is difficult when your item is not on the agenda. I certainly understand that. I do. But for those items that are on the agenda, those are the items, in my opinion, in my opinion, that should be prioritized, and that's why we, as the board leadership team, have made that decision. Yes, it is a difficult balance. We cannot be all things to all people. We cannot get out at 7 o'clock at night and then still let everybody come and say everything they want to, and then still not disenfranchise those people with agenda items. We can't be all things to all people. And so this is where we've landed at this time, and I will ask for the board to support this effort, to support this agenda as it is written. And I am looking for a motion to that effect, if it is the pleasure of the board. If not, then we all go home because we don't have an agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President. Call those here second.
Second.
Second by trustee Nicolet. We've had plenty of discussion. Your lights on. Is that for discussion, trustee church? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition?
Aye.
The motions carry. Let the record show that we have an agenda. The vote is six to one. We're going to move on to the consent agenda, Agenda Item 2.01. These are consent agenda items. These are items 2.02 through 2.37. Yes, that's a large number. We typically have a large number of consent agenda items in the summertime. Nothing unusual here. So I am looking, unless there's some interest in a member of the board, in separating one of those. I see your light, trustee church.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to remove 2.04, Policy 9300, 2.06, which deals with a million and a half dollar contract, 2.14, which deals with contracts for services, and 2.15, another contract for services.
Okay, so we have, your request is to pull out, is not to remove from the consent agenda, is to pull out agenda items 2.04, 2.06, 2.14, and 2.15?
Yes. Two point, yeah, 2.04, 2.06, 2.14, 2.15.
Okay, and then so, and staff for those items, please be prepared to come forward. And trustee church, I'll ask you to have your questions for staff prepared as well. On the consent agenda items, we do have public comment. Again, just as a reminder, please make sure your comment is regarding the agenda item before us.
Bruce Parks, Margaret Martini, Valerie Fianaca.
Mr. Parks? I don't see Mr. Parks in here. So why don't we go to Ms. Martini? And if Mr. Parks comes in, he can certainly do that. Ms. Martini, I believe you were next. Okay, thank you, Ms. Martini. Who's next?
Valerie Fianaca, then Nicole Harris.
Ms. Fianaca, welcome.
Thank you for having me again. My name is Valerie Fianaca. I'll make it short and sweet. I noted expenditure of almost $4.3 million for various liability insurance coverages, including for malfeasance of the board. If you pass the policy to allow flags and banners for LGBTQ plus BLM but exclude others such as pro-life, Jesus Lives, et cetera, you get my drift, against the sage advice of your attorney, which I heard personally, can we reasonably expect lawsuits and this expense to increase? I know you can't answer me, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fianaca.
Nicole Harris, then Bruce Parks.
Ms. Harris, Mr. Parks, I don't see either. Mr. Parks, we've called him already, Ms. Harris, we'll give her a moment. Okay, looks like we're done with public comment then. We'll bring it back here to the floor, for, again, looking for a motion to approve agenda items, 2.02 through, and 2.03, 2.05, 2.07 through 2.13, and then 2.16 through 2.37.
So moved.
We got, I have three motions on that, so we'll just take, we'll pick, since Vice President Calvo, this is his last meeting, we'll take his motion. You can make as many motions as you want to, sir, you get a priority today. And we will, we will take the second from Trustee Thigpen online, I heard your motion as well. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition?
Aye.
Oops, I'm sorry, I forgot to wait for you, Trustee Thigpen, I'm sorry. You're the second, so I know that you're an aye. No opposition? Okay, let the record show, the motion carries, let the record show it is unanimous. We're gonna ask staff to come forward for agenda item 2.04. Mr. Starkey, our chief auditor, is there a second? Trustee Church, you have question for Mr. Starkey regarding this item?
Yes, and I'm not sure if he can answer it or not, but we are dealing, this is 93, Policy 9300. E, section E confidentiality, and that refers to E number I-1 and I-2. Can you explain to what degree complaints are confidential or would be public?
Yeah, Kirk Starkey for the record. Trustee Church, basically, the purpose of the confidential is to encourage reporting, and that's kind of the main underpinning on why this is here. As far as confidential, we will not, in reports that would go to the board or to the audit committee where we summarize the complaints, we would not have people's names. It would be, let's say, more related to, depending on the complaint, like we try to focus on a department or a position title, as long as it doesn't identify. If you go other way, by using direct names, you, in my opinion, you discourage the reporting of such items. So that's kind of the purpose behind that.
Okay. I understand complainants being confidential, except perhaps if they don't want to be. They may want to be public, and they, it would seem to me they should have that option. But number two, as I interpret it, it just is all reports. So, and I don't know if this is a question for you, or for legal, or for the superintendent, but, and we've talked about this at the policy meetings, I'm still confused to what degree the public knows anything. Would they get a report maybe that's public to say, a complainant alleged the bus driver was intoxicated while driving, the complaint was unfounded? I mean, would they get anything? That's just an example.
Good question, yes, sir. Currently, right now, we summarize the complaints, they go to, in kind of a manner you just described, and they go to the audit committee in that manner, and that becomes a public document at that time. Those summary reports are published as part of the agenda, and eventually, they will come to the, to the Board of Trustees as well. It'd basically be pretty much along the same lines of the same report with, that's what we're proposing with this new, with this new policy.
And just, I guess maybe legal could comment, is that correct? I just want to make sure, what, I'm on the fence of voting yes or no, and I'm totally opposed to all complaints being confidential, and that's what it says here, all reports. But if it's a matter of, well, we're gonna redact the employee, we're gonna maybe make it more generic, but the public still gets to know that we had, that we had a complaint, and we investigated it, and here's the finding.
Yes, sir, you would get, confidential doesn't mean you would get, some items or some reports of purported right waste, fraud, and abuse would be left off the summary report. That would not be what it means. It would be, the purpose behind it is to keep names, basically, out of identifying position titles.
And then section number three says the disciplinary action will not be reported. Again, that troubles me, but you're saying the public would know that it was founded or unfounded?
Yes, sir.
Bus driver was accused of being intoxicated while driving, it was determined to be true, action was taken.
Correct, and that's currently how we do it, as far as the report that gets summarized to the audit committee. It's done in that manner. So confidentiality does not mean we would take off a complaint that comes through our office, it would still be part of the summary. It would just be certain identifying information would be left off.
All right. I'm just confused with what Mr. Starkey's saying, being clear in here in the policy. Madam President, I think you can understand what I'm saying, is, I'm good with it. I mean, I'm good with that, I think, but is that how it's gonna be interpreted a year from now, I guess, is what I'm saying?
Well, it's in the policy, if you have a recommendation for the policy being stated differently, then this was the time that you can bring that forth, Trustee Church. Okay, why are you thinking, I'm gonna go to Vice President Calvo?
Thank you, Madam President, and Mr. Starkey, maybe you can help me. Back in our committee discussion, I believe we changed 2B to make it clear that the entire board will receive the, any findings similar to what the audit committee receives. Wouldn't that be everything that we would need to see if it's substantial?
Correct. Oh, sorry, Kirk Starkey for the record, the two, item 2B would be, I would say, more of a, of a formal report on an individualized complaint, and so you would get that, and then in addition, you would get a quarterly summary report, I think is what Mr. Church is referring to, which would show every single case that we get, that comes through, whether email, phone calls, or delivery. So they would be a little, little different. You'd get a formal report on, let's say, ones that are substantiated and of a material impact.
That, that's helpful. I didn't know, I didn't, I thought maybe that would clarify and help, Trustee Church, but I remember we had that conversation, that originally the board was not going to get that information, and so I think it's good that the board does get that information. So thank you.
You got it.
Thank you, Vice President Calvo. Other comments or questions for the chief auditor? Trustee Church, a question, or I mean, a recommendation?
Perhaps on--
Leave your mics off.
Thank you very much. Perhaps on E number two, all reports involving an employee shall be kept confidential, and I'm good with that.
I'm sorry, where is that?
Two double I.
Two double I.
E, E ECHO double I, says, "All reports involving an employee will be kept confidential to the extent possible, and in compliance with policies of the district and applicable state and federal laws. However, summary reports may be made available to the board, to the board and the public," or to board, how about this? "However, summary reports may be made available to the board, comma, committees, and/or the public."
Counsel?
Well, this is a substantial change. This board has approved this policy to move to here, so you would have to send it back to the Board Policy Committee. I just would point out that you've already had this discussion on this issue and chose to move it forward in this way, but if, this is not the place to cobble out the language of this significant of a change. You would have to go back to Board Policy Committee, by Board Policy nine, it's either 9070 or 9100, I can't remember which one.
Okay, then it seems like at this point, Trustee Church, it's for you to make a motion to that effect. Either you wanted to go back to the Board Policy Committee to consider that change, and if that motion passes, it goes back, otherwise, we go forward with the policy as stated. You're right, counsel, thank you, this is, this is similar to one we, conversation we had, so Trustee Church, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, yeah, it is similar, and of course, they say, well, we're gonna get to talk about it again at the board meeting in public, and now, but yeah, so my motion, my motion stands that we add a sentence to E two, to say, however--
I'm sorry, sir, let me interrupt you. The motion should be to send it back to the Policy Committee for that.
Thank you, Madam--
So you don't have to work out the verbiage here, okay?
Right. My motion is to send it back to review the policy with specific attention to E I double I.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor with the consideration being that change is suggested by Trustee Church, is there a second? I think that motion is failing for lack of a second, so we'll go forward back to the agenda item as it stands, and is there a motion to approve? This is agenda item 2.04, as submitted to the board. See, there's a motion from a clerkman, I'll get a second from Trustee Calvert, any further All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition?
Aye.
Oops, sorry, 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 Trustee Thigpen, I caught myself right after I said it, dang it. All right, I got the ayes. Opposition?
Nay.
Okay, got you, Trustee Church. The motion passes, six to one, six to one. Thank you, Mr. Starkey. We're on to agenda item 2.05, I mean, sorry, 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 2.06. This is the approval of, to purchase feet, fuels, as stated before, for 1.5, from the pilot, Thomas Logistics, through the joiner, for this, with the state and so on, that we see before us, our transportation folks. Am I gonna start with you, Chief Operating Officer? No, actually, we're gonna start with Trustee Church, you have a question?
Yeah, just real, basically, I had a citizen call me and tell me that we took a higher bid, so I'm curious if that's true, how the bid went out. I mean, it's a million and a half dollars, so it's a lot of money. I'm new here, but I just, that doesn't just seem like consent agenda item, we need to, I need to know what we're voting on. And then, do you happen to know if we have to pay the, what's called, W, no, no, not WC1, the sales tax, the progressive sales tax on that? RTC five, it's called RTC five. Do we pay the sales tax?
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna stay with this first, in terms of this specific item, right? And then, I'm not sure that the sales tax is a part of this, but maybe, you may have picked up something I didn't, Trustee Church, so, let's go with that first question in terms of, the question, what was the question regarding the bid, Trustee Church?
Basically, if they can just explain it, the rumor was, a citizen said, hey, we didn't go with the lowest bidder, and then, within the fuel that we're paying for, do we pay sales tax? If it's in this contract, if it's applicable to what we're talking--
All right. Scott Lee, Director of Transportation, so we didn't actually go out to bid on this. This is a joiner contract, the state went out to bid, the state did all of the selection, and then we join onto it. By doing so, we get a much higher price break.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Does that answer your question, Trustee Church?
And just, if you happen to know about the sales tax.
Off the top of my head, I don't know, I'd have to look at an invoice.
That's okay, thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Lee? Okay, looking for a motion, it's a pleasure of the boards, for agenda item 2.06. Moved by Vice President Calvo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Nicolet. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposition? The motion carries, let the record show it, seven zip. Thank you, Scott, Pete. All right, now we're on to agenda item 2.14. Our staff to come forward for that, and as they do, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Trustee Church, for your question.
And basically, I just, if they could explain what we're, what the 1.2 million is going for, for student data assessment, and we know we, citizens always have a question on the security of the student data.
Sandra Ayer, Director of Assessment, for the record. The contract with School City, School City is the assessment platform that we utilize to maintain our database on student assessments. We have our common assessments, we have our district finals. Teachers utilize the system as well for their own classroom assessments, and then team assessments as well, used at individual schools. The price or the cost is over three years. We looked at different options, and School City was going to cut us a break and provide us three-year contracts so that we have predictable expenses for the next three years, and that price will not go up. The price is based on a per-student seat, which means that it is X amount per student. So as our attendance, our enrollment goes up, the price will go up, because it is for a per-student. They look at our student count the year before, the count day before, to give us a price for the next year. That's why we do have some ranges for, not next year, but the year after that, and year three of the contract. This is part of our PLC initiative, in that we are looking at goal one, to have rigorous curriculum, instruction, and assessment alignment. This is the piece, that is the assessment piece, to ensure that students are learning what we expect students to learn.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ayer. Does that answer your question, Trustee Church? Okay, seeing no further questions. Thank you, Dr. Ayer, appreciate that. Okay, we do have some public comment on this.
Bruce Parks, Paulina Gershovitz.
Michelle Beethow, put that mic down, yes ma'am?
Yeah, hi. My name is Paulina Gershovitz, and I actually wanted to comment on 211, 212, 213, and 214, but I was outside reading the description of this, all these programs, that I think the descriptions are great, but they don't say the elemental thing. There is no evaluation or assessment of how students did after using these programs. We don't know how good these programs are, or they were, if you don't have an assessment of the students, and that's what I couldn't find in all the papers that are outside. Thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you, ma'am. Okay, looks like Mr. Parks has gone, so we'll come, go ahead, and we'll bring this back to the board table. Okay, looking for a motion, it's a pleasure of the board, on agenda item 2.14. Moved by Vice President Calvo, second. The second will take Trustee Calvert, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposition? Okay, motion carries, let the record show it, seven zip. Thank you both, Dr. Parks and Dr. Ayer. Okay, now, staff's coming, I see you're moving into position for agenda item 2.15. I'll turn it over to you for your question, Trustee Church.
Certainly, once again, it's basically, I get a lot of citizen input, why are we spending $2 million on social workers? One of the questions is, is it cheaper to contract than have in-house? Basically, the requirements for the social workers and what they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Church. For the record, President Taylor and Superintendent McNeil. My name is Catherine Loudon. I coordinate school counseling and social work for the Washoe County School District. This is the same contract that we've had, a continuation of services and supports that we've had for the last four years, without significant changes. The funding under this contract was previously a part of the Social Workers in Schools grant, and as a Board of Trustees, in an effort to have continuation of mental health services and supports available to our students, and to not have an interruption in services and supports and relationships that have been built, we continued on this contract with Progressus. The Social Workers in Schools Progressus contract has helped us build a pipeline to mental health professionals that we've been able to then hire, and as a critical need resource in our community that's very limited, this provides, through Progressus, an opportunity while our mental health professionals are in the process of varying levels of licensure, to be hired, and it gives them a smooth transition. So we're looking forward to this being passed, so that when our students start in August, they can continue to have the same great supports in their schools for elementary, middle, and high school.
Thank you, Ms. Loudon. Trustee Church, this might be helpful, that you said it's a cheaper contract out, this is the contract out.
Pardon?
You said, you asked if it's cheaper to contract out, my understanding, this is the contract out.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Is it cheaper to have in-house employees?
Trustee Church, we hire in-house employees that are licensed mental health professionals. We have licensed mental health professionals that are marriage and family therapists, licensed clinical social workers, licensed individuals who have social work licenses, and we have hired, when we started this grant, we had two social workers, one at a high school funded under ELL, and one at a, at a school that primarily served students who had an individual education plan. We now have 13, and I have seven-- We now have thirteen, um, and I have seven open on the job board right now, and schools are interviewing for them. We also have hired three mental health professionals. So, we want to hire a highly qualified workforce, so it's not cheaper to hire individuals that aren't qualified for the position, and we want to make sure that the individuals that are serving the students have that qualification.
So, if I understand correctly, this was a grant? So, not free money, but it was federally or state-funded taxpayer money? This is the first year that now it falls on us to approve the funding? Out of the general fund?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
So, trustee Church, the grant went away, and so this is what CFO Mathers has been speaking to as far as the per pupil funding formula, so now it is part of the base funding as we move forward, to provide supports for our students.
Does that make sense? I'm sorry, does that make sense? In other words, we don't get the grant anymore because they built it into the base funding, so, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
And now, if, are we looking to transition eventually to all in-house employees? Or we think this is going to be the way it is for the future?
Because of the critical workforce shortage, and because of our community's resource desert around critical mental health services personnel, this enables us, once people receive their licensure, to work toward making them be employees, and that's how we've built our workforce. And then, this actually gives them some options along the pathway to have a job through Progressus, which is really an employee services group, while they're building their work.
Thank you. Just, um, a lot of money, and so, that's why I pulled it off the consent agenda, because again, I think myself and the public and the other trustees need to know, much the same as the other agenda items, and, um, I guess we could deep dive into any and all of these, but then we would be here till, till the next day, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Church.
Thank you, trustee Church. Further discussion? We do have some public comment on this?
Darla Lee.
Welcome, Ms. Lee.
Yes, Darla Lee, for the record. A former K through twelve teacher, uh, one of the, uh, school district teachers told me, and I'm reading from a paper here, this is not my personal experience, okay, told me a few years ago, quote, "If it wasn't for so many of these screens, we wouldn't need so many social workers," end quote. So, is it too late to go back to simply educating the students? Stop teaching math that would confuse Einstein. As you may realize, none of the countries, uh, that with top K through twelve math scores have changed to teaching Common Core math as, or as our state has renamed it, uh, the Nevada Academic Content Standards. So, if you could please stop teaching controversial issues like critical race theory, revisionist history, comprehensive sex education, social and emotional learning, and quit trying to get inside all of the students' heads, focus those efforts on the kids that do need it, and educate everyone. I still remember when WCSD gave a psychological assessment to all the kids in four schools without parental consent. The vendor that has that data, and most stu, uh, parents don't even know who gave the kids the assessment. As with everything these kids do online, for their education, we don't know if, when, and how the data, the dozens of third-party education vendors our kids are forced to share data with may come back to and haunt them. Instead, if we could focus on actually educating children, and my question for me personally is just, I'm just appalled that we should need that many social workers. In these schools, we have that many children that are, uh, have problems in their social, in their, in their lives, that they need this kind of attention? That's appalling to me, and especially for as much money as taxpayers are, are going to be putting out for it. To get kids ready for the future, give them a classical education. Teach them the three Rs and how to effectively communicate, how to think and not what to think. Quit trying to indoctrinate our kids.
Ms. Lee, if you can stay on the agenda items, you're kind of veering off there a little bit.
Okay, fine. It's, the, the point is, if our students are that messed up, that they need that many social, uh, workers advising them, and, uh, I would say indoctrinating them, then we have a real problem in this school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Superintendent McNeil?
Yes, Ms. Lee? I would really appreciate it if you do not refer to our families that need the support as messed up. Thank you.
Do we have other, uh, public comment on this, CJ? Seeing none? We'll bring it back to the table here for this agenda item one point four five, I mean, two point one five. I'm looking for a motion, if that is the pleasure of the board?
A move.
Got a motion by trustee Thigpen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Calvert. We have already had discussion. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
I was waiting for the aye, I guess I had it in there, okay, all right, all right.
Aye, sorry.
That's all right.
Out of the poll.
That's all right. Uh, any, any opposition? All right, the motion is carried, let the record show at the seven zip. All right. We've completed our consent agenda, and now we're on to agenda item three. These are our, this is our legislative report. Uh, this is not an action item, so there will be no public comment on this item. We missed your last meeting, as things were, were finishing up like crazy, but, uh, thank you so much for your work. We'll turn it over to Ms. Anderson, Director of Governmental Affairs.
Thank you, President Taylor, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent McNeil. Uh, thank you for having me. It's, it's my first opportunity to be here, um, back in person since the conclusion of the, the legislative session at the end of May. Uh, you received a presentation at the last board meeting that was a document, I think you also received it via email, um, that was kind of my full report, and so I'm not going to, oh, thank you. Um, I'm not going to redo, um, that. So, this is an even more brief, uh, report, so, in my mind, we could talk about this for three hours. I think it's real interesting, but I know you have plenty of other work to do. So, this is an even higher level, uh, overview of the legislative session. I actually sort of made an effort not to refer to bill numbers and specific individual policies in this presentation, um, because you have access to that other information. I also wanted to mention that as part of the, um, the staff report, the Nevada Association of School Boards that you subscribe to and has their own representation in Carson City, provided a final report, which I consider excellent. So, you have a lot of resources. Uh, if there are things that I don't mention you want to talk about, I'm happy to do that. But, otherwise, I'm just really going to, uh, breeze through a handful of slides here about the legislative session, in terms of highlights. So, we've already mentioned one so far in this meeting, uh, the new funding formula and the consolidation of over thirty individual state categorical grant programs into the new, uh, pupil-centered funding plan. Going into the legislative session, we were very nervous about the impact that was going to have on the Washoe County School District. I would say that, um, nervousness, uh, rested with me up until the very final hours of the legislative session and the final days, when we did see a relatively substantial reinvestment, uh, restoring of the cuts that were made in the governor's original recommended budget, plus some additional funds, which got Washoe County School District in particular out of the hold harmless position, and that's what we were really dreading going forward in that formula. Uh, so, being out of hold harmless means that our revenues will grow with at least inflation and enrollment, and so we won't be just stuck here regardless of some of those other factors, and, um, for me, that is a very exciting end result as, at this legislative session. Uh, we did not, um, get the full amount of changes we wanted to, uh, the regional cost factor, which was a part of this formula, but I'm confident that I will continue to make progress on that over this interim. There was an additional two hundred million dollars of the state's dedicated, uh, ARP funds dedicated specifically to school districts made available in a piece of legislation in the final days, and that would be anything in addition to what the district is getting directly from the federal government. And, as part of new legislation, dedicating net proceeds revenues specifically into the Nevada State Education Fund going forward, um, and in addition to a new gold and silver tax that was part of new revenue at the end of the legislative session. I just want to take a minute, I don't like to use sort of insider terms, I try not to, but, one of the things that we will be really critically watching going forward in the next eighteen months is making sure that the integrity of the pupil-centered funding plan holds. And one example, uh, of funny business could be that this new revenue that will be dedicated to K-12 starting in 2023 just offsets the amount of general fund appropriations from the state, and we don't see a net increase, so we call that supplanting. Uh, and I think, you know, there's always a risk of that when we make these transitional moves, and so, I do think as, one of the benefits of the new funding formulas, we know exactly how much general fund money from the state is going in right now, and we will be looking for that number to increase in the next biennium, uh, not decrease or not be offset by any new money going into that formula. Also, uh, extending what we refer to as the rollover bond, uh, access for the districts to continue accessing the, um, school construction property tax rate now until, uh, all the way through 2035. Uh, it's hard for me to express how exciting I think this is, given how hard we've been working on school construction dollars for this district for a very long time. And so, having our, uh, kind of one-two punch with our WC one funds and continuing access to, uh, the existing property tax rate to support school construction is just very exciting for our district. Uh, my colleague at the Clark County School District sent me a calendar invite for 2032, uh, to make sure that we keep this top of mind, uh, going forward, and make sure this doesn't fall off our radar, uh, because it's, it's a long time in advance. And then, uh, one of the things we've worked on for a couple of legislative sessions is this concept of braiding, uh, pre-K funding, and I know that's a little bit in the weeds, and I hope I never have to say that word again, because it's so ridiculous, but, um, we basically were able to eliminate the necessity to braid those pre-K funds and get a standardized pre-K amount going forward across the state, which was a big one. And then, of course, seeing the governor sign Assembly Bill 57, which was the school district, um, bill draft that was introduced related to student learning objectives, uh, and giving our staff a reset year, uh, next year, to make sure our, our focus is in the right spot on, uh, teacher evaluations and student achievement going forward, so. Uh, lowlights, I'm not sure that's the right word, or missed opportunities, things that I, uh, you know, perhaps would have preferred to see go differently this legislative session. You know, and again, I think the reality is, there's always going to be new legislation. Uh, I was sort of expressing frustration to a legislator about, you know, but there's still so many things that got added, and he said, well, you know, sixty-three people got elected to make changes and come down here and make changes, and that's what they're going to continue to do for their constituents. And so, we do see some new reporting, new statutory responsibility for our district, some new unfunded mandates, uh, nothing I think that we can't handle, but, you know, it's always frustrating to have to add more, uh, during these legislative sessions, and often for good causes, and I'll talk about a couple in a few minutes here. Efforts around broader property and sales tax reform, even in a revenue-neutral fashion, uh, did not advance, and so, that opportunity to relook at our property tax structure, which impacts local governments across the state, uh, and some of our fairness around sales tax on digital goods, uh, legislation in those areas also did not advance. Uh, this is not for effect, this, I feel like it should have had the page intentionally left blank, but it's just an extra slide, so, uh, we'll move forward. Um, I did want to take the opportunity at the board level to just talk about a couple of pieces of legislation that were really championed by students within the Washoe County School District. I know how important students are to the Board of Trustees and their student voice, uh, and so I just wanted to draw attention to these two. I was lucky enough to meet, uh, Kenna at the bill signing in the governor's office of a Senate Bill 160. Uh, she's a student in Incline High School, and wanted to take a Farsi language class for dual credit, and was not able to find one in Nevada offered by an ENCE institution. And so, that frustration led to her exploring other opportunities and ultimately changing state law to allow for Nevada students to get dual credit, credit, uh, from, uh, outside of Nevada institutions only when not offered, uh, by the Nevada system of higher education. And so, uh, it was very exciting for her, and she was a champion for that legislation all the way through, testified in all the hearings, and really did great, so we're proud of her. And then, Assembly Bill 224 has had a lot of press recently, actually, uh, related to period poverty, requiring school districts, uh, to provide free menstrual products, and a handful of our secondary schools in sort of a trial period with full implementation going forward, uh, and she is certainly a champion for that issue, and, um, saw that bill all the way through. And so, proud of our students, um, for participating in the civic process, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to congratulate them on their success. We say there's a thousand ways to kill a bill, but only one way to get it through, and so, it's, it's harder than it looks, and they really were, uh, up until the very final hours, I think ten o'clock at night, when we saw some of the final passage on the last day, so, congratulations to them. Just in terms of what happens next, we'll see basically the next six months focused from our state agencies on the regulatory process. So, in a lot of bills, you'll see the executive branch given the authority to create regulations, and it's similar to your own policy work. Uh, and so, we will see those regulations created at the state level, whether that's through the State Board of Education or other, um, state agencies that have, uh, governance over something that we do. So, we'll be sure to track that process. We'll make sure our board policies are in alignment with any changes that happen, so you'll likely see a handful of new, uh, board policies coming your way as a result of some legislation, and then certainly making sure that our administrative and other processes are aligned to any new laws. So, again, just sort of what it looks like, we'll see a big chunk of regulatory work now, starting in January of 2022. We'll see the interim legislative committees start up their work, uh, in preparation for the next legislative session, and then, of course, we'll see those, uh, six months of campaign season where people are running for office, uh, and of, often have, uh, education platforms, and so, we do a lot of work with them during that time. Just very quickly, my final slide, um, I think it's important for the board to keep in mind going forward, there's going to be a lot of changes to the Washoe County Legislative Delegation, and I would argue not for the better, just in the sense of institutional knowledge. We have two legislators that are termed out of their service, that have been serving for a long time representing Washoe County and are in leadership positions, and a handful of others contemplating running for different office or other office. Uh, there's a potential for redistricting to potentially lose seats in Washoe County and see some of that, additional, uh, seats go to the south. And so, I think it's really important to keep that in our, in our mind going forward of, um, making sure that Washoe County School District in particular has a strong voice, a strong representation, and in many cases, that may mean our champions have to come from places other than Washoe County. And so, maintaining a statewide presence and relationships with our statewide elected officials, uh, I believe is going to be particularly important going forward as we see this balance of power potentially shifting to, uh, the Clark County. And I would just leave you, uh, with, the best tool that I have in my toolbox in representing this district is when we have amazing results that we can take and show our legislators and say, look at the great things we're doing here. You don't either need to support these efforts to enhance them or don't change them, uh, and so I think we have an amazing opportunity, uh, to show off what we're doing in this district, and that's the best tool we have going forward, um, through politics, uh, trying to keep it about our students, so. Uh, again, I'm happy to answer other questions. I got my whole list of every bill that passed or failed, and happy to go through that with you, but, um, otherwise, I'll just refer you to other materials you've had access to, and certainly available offline, so, thank you, President Taylor.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Dr. Nicolet?
A few quickies, thank you for all your work. You, you seem to have a new glow right now. So, board policy alignment, do you have any suggestions for what you might think we should be looking at?
I, I think you'll see, um, the process led by our, uh, General Counsel's Office, um, just methodically going through, looking at implementation dates, and bringing recommendations forward to the board policy committee, uh, to make sure they're in alignment with any new state law. So, I think that'll, um, be driven by your staff, um, giving you an idea of what the priorities are at that.
Good, I look forward to that, because I, I, I do want us to work on that as soon as possible. And then, my second question for clarification, redistrict, redistricting, so, it's the shuffling of the seats, and it's not as population grows, you gain additional seats?
This is not my area of expertise, um, but I would say it's, it's relative, right? It's, even if our population is growing, if it's growing somewhere else to a larger extent, you're going to see the districts, um, align with where the population growth is relative to other places. So, we're not going, I, I do not believe that there's been any purpose to add a number of, of legislators, it's just reshuffling the number of constituents in each district.
Thank you. Clearly, I need to do more homework. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Any other questions? Thank you, you sent us a great report, in that, which is, which is really comprehensive. Okay. I don't see anything else, so we can just thank you, and that, that work on hold harmless, let me tell you right there- Let me tell you right there, that was so important. That, and then, of course, our bill going through and getting some relief on student learning outcomes, it's just been fantastic. So thank you for all your amazing work down in Carson City, as always.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
I appreciate it so much.
All right, on to Agenda Item 4.01. This is Budget. Budget, budget. This is for our final amended budget, as we've been warned, so to speak, over these last several months, that once the legislature ends, we'd have to take another run and make adjustments and adaptations based upon some of what Ms. Anderson just spoke with us about. So this is our time to take a look at just that. So our CFO, Mark Mathers, as well as our Budget Director, Jeff Boswell, here before us to walk us through this. So thank you, gentlemen, and this is an action item. So there will be public comment if appropriate.
So thank you, President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, trustees. We are happy to, as you said, present this amended final budget for next fiscal year, which starts on July 1. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff shortly. But just to talk about kind of where we are at, we are at the finish line, thankfully. Just a few comments, as you guys have lived this, once again, we have a total budget in excess of $1 billion, with a B, dollars. That includes our capital funds, of course, but we have the largest budget of any local government in the region. So this is important. You're going to see a number of slides in your packet. We won't go through every one, but we think it's important to document the figures for each fund type and provide some high-level overview information for you so that you have it and the public has it. But again, we're at the finish line. This is the third straight year where we've presented a balanced budget to you. I know there's still-
I'm sorry, would you say that again?
I will. I'm happy to say it again.
I think I must have nodded off. I didn't quite-
Yeah, yeah. Third straight year of a balanced budget. We actually see actual results that reflect that as well, so we have not had a deficit in a number of years. We are a balanced budget, where revenues at least equal expenses. And so we're very proud of that. I know that's taken a lot of work of our Board of Trustees, but I'm happy we're still in a balanced situation. I won't go through, I don't think, too much here on this slide. Lindsay did a great job talking about the changes to the state's budget in terms of the funding of the K-12 system across Nevada. But as you know, you know, there were some very significant moves in late May that shored up and restored funding for K-12. So that largely helped us balance this budget, and so we are grateful. Another really historic change that we've talked about since December of last year was the implementation of a new funding formula for schools in Nevada called the Pupil-Centered Funding Plan. Again, I won't belabor all of the details on this chart because you've heard this many times, but there really are, I would say, three really significant aspects of the funding formula as it was adopted in legislation this year. One, we just talked about, we are out of a hold harmless situation. For the public, what that meant was, for at least some time, being in a hold harmless situation actually froze us at fiscal year 20 revenues, and that would be very difficult to get through this next full biennium at that level. And so we are out of that situation thanks to the state legislatures and the governor's passage of additional funding for schools. Some of the plumbing, if you will, that's been, you know, mentioned in terms of the new funding formula that really do have an impact on us, and this is technical but still important, is we no longer have a guaranteed source of per pupil funding, unlike under the Nevada plan. So if the state suffers through a recession or what have you, so that revenues are not materialized, our funding will decrease accordingly. The state is no longer backstopping any of the local revenues that we used to receive. And as you know, all, basically, all material revenues now for the operating costs for schools will be pooled at the state level and then redistributed to us, as well as the other 16 school districts. And then, we haven't talked about it too much, but we're really moving away from a cost-based model. The Nevada plan looked at school districts' actual costs, then applied various inflation factors, such as for step increases or the last biennium, a cost of living adjustment. We're moving away from that cost-based model to a revenue-based model, where whatever the legislature allocates in terms of revenues is what we will get proportionately. So, you know, we won't hear kind of the language about, well, this fund's step increases or a COLA or whatever. It's just, here's the money, you all figure it out. So that's a significant change as well to the funding formula. So again, I won't belabor these numbers here, but our base funding, i.e. our general fund funding, is now $7,222 per pupil. That is significantly higher than the $6,000-plus we receive in the current year. But remember, a lot of the categorical grants that we used to receive, as you mentioned in a prior item, are now part of base funding. So it's not easy to compare the current year to the future year, but that's where we start. And then we get a 1.3% increase, which is not much, for fiscal year '23, the fiscal year after next. So again, money will be tight throughout the biennium, but again, we've managed to balance the budget for you. And so-
Just before you go, I'm sorry, Mr. Mathers. Vice President Carle has a comment, question?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you both for presentation. I know we've talked about this at length in this budget process, but now we're at the finish line, so has the state defined what at-risk means?
The answer is no. The legislature in law directed the Commission on School Funding to go back and re-review their recommendation to use a very complicated, machine-based learning approach to identifying at-risk students, and they wanted the Commission to go back and test the reliability and the validity of that approach, and so the Commission's starting work on that. In lieu of that, right, if they don't get that work done, FRL probably will be the default, but we will see how that analysis goes. The Department of Ed, the Nevada Department of Ed, ultimately will implement that through a regulation.
Great, thank you. Well, hopefully they let the district know soon, since the school year's coming.
Yes.
So when we look at the weights, not at-risk, but English learners and gifted and talented, how does this funding compare to what we used to receive in the old model? Is it the same, higher, lower?
It is largely the same level of funding compared to fiscal year '20.
Okay.
And so there were really, the legislature chose, when it added funding in mid to late May, to add that to base funding, to raise funding for all students, and they kept this funding pretty much the same. And that will be, you know, kind of the charge going forward, is to increase funding for those weighted categories in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Carle. Mr. Mathers?
I'm going to turn it over now to Jeff Boswell, our Budget Director.
Dex Hornet, good afternoon. For the record, Jeff Boswell, Budget Director. So this first slide you're looking at here is a summary of the appropriations for all of our funds by fund type. So as you can see, in the far-right column are budgets over $1 billion, as Mark indicated earlier in the presentation. If we look at the general fund line item real quick, you can see a fairly significant increase from the FY '21 estimated column to the FY '22 budgets, and that's mainly due to the change, or the switch to the full implementation of the People-Centered Funding Plan, where former state categorical grants and class size reduction are now in the general fund. We'll touch on some special revenue funds later. Capital projects, you can see a decrease from FY '21 to FY '22. That's a change in the level of capital projects that we're doing, but the FY '22 budget is in alignment with the Capital Improvement Plan. Our debt service funds, that's for payments of principal and interest for our long-term and medium-term debt, and also a transfer to the Property Tax Capital Projects Fund to pay for the district's computer refresh program. We'll draw to the lower section here, proprietary funds, the internal service funds. If you recall, that's the Property and Casualty Fund, the Health Insurance Fund, and the Workers' Comp Fund. Most of the increase from FY '21 to FY '22 here is due to the increases we've talked about in prior presentations of the Property and Casualty Insurance Premium. And then lastly here, our Enterprise Fund or our Nutrition Services Fund. The increase from FY '21 to FY '22 is now a full, or, you know, assuming a full year of students being back onsite and meals being consumed at the rate they were prior to COVID. Moving to the next slide, we have just an overview of the, our FTEs for the districts are full-time equivalents of positions. And as you can see, a majority of our positions are in the license field, so those are licensed administrators, teachers, counselors, nurses, positions like that. Moving on to the highlights of the amended final budget, as we repeated earlier, this is the third straight year that the district has had a balanced general fund budget. Class sizes are maintained here partly through stimulus funding. We'll get to a little more detail on that, but if you recall, we used or shifted part of our class size reduction program to stimulus funding to ensure that we maintained our class sizes. This budget also includes the new fixed costs, so principal utilities, other positions for the new InSke Middle School, or Elementary School up in Cold Springs. We saw some special education fund revenue increases. We have bond and pay-as-you-go funding for major projects and the PC refresh program and the new Property Tax Capital Projects Fund. We also have Nutrition Services that will be offering universal free meals to all students at all schools. Getting to federal stimulus funding here, if not for our ability to use stimulus funding to fund or help offset part of our class size reduction program, we would be looking at a general fund deficit of about $4 million. So we'll need to keep this in mind as we build out our four-year financial plan, which we'll bring to you in the future, so that we can build the positions that are going to be funded by stimulus funding into the general fund or another funding source in future years. Now I'm going to hand it back to Mark to get us kicked off for the general fund.
Thank you, Jeff. So probably one of the more common questions we get, or if not, the most common question we get, is how does funding compare year over year? And so, as we've talked about in the Pupil-Centered Funding Plan, fiscal year '20 kind of serves as the baseline year for which districts who are in a hold harmless status are set, of course. So we wanted to kind of walk you through where funding was in fiscal year '20 and how each year it has kind of progressed. So for fiscal year '20, we received just shy of $554 million between what, you know, you've known as the general fund, as well as former categorical funds that we've added into this pot to make sure it's an apples-to-apples comparison. So when we look at federal revenues, former categorical funding that's now part of base funding, state special education funding in the green, and then our missile, and then general fund, you know, local revenues, if you will, that totals $554 million. If I, in the second column, add inflation to that, to get me from fiscal year '20 to '22, so that's two years' worth of inflation, two years' worth of inflation is another $25 million. So I would hope, you know, as the CFO, that if we stayed level, we'd be at $554 million. Adding inflation, we'd be just under $580 million. And then the last two columns show you the fiscal year '22 final budget you approved and the fiscal year '20 amended final budget to you today. So you can see funding in total goes up $1 million from fiscal year '20 to '22. And so it doesn't cover inflation, whether, you know, that could mean cost of living adjustments for employees or so forth. But you'll notice, and so when we did this, kind of, I wanted to backcheck our numbers, part of what's going on here is the enrollment decrease we have seen. So to be fair to the state, I think, you know, their counter would be, wait a minute, you know, we've increased the per pupil funding amount, what, you know, this is a little unfair to describe it this way. And so part of the fact that we're only going up $1 million is, again, we've lost 2,300 students to the effects of COVID, where more students are being homeschooled. You'll remember kindergarten-aged children could be held back, and many were, roughly 900 students who were eligible to go to kindergarten were held back, we think, and various other kind of dynamics related to this last year. So if we were to assume all of those students came back, the last column here reflects that change. And if they were all to come back, and we'd be roughly at 63,800 students, like we were in fiscal year '20, we, our funding would go up roughly 17 million, and we'd be at $572 million in funding, which is darn close to that fiscal year '20 number adjusted for inflation in the second column. So, I mean, this underscores, obviously, the importance of enrollment to our budget. We are a per pupil-funded entity, unlike other local governments who get whatever sales tax they're going to get or property tax they're going to get. We are driven by the number of students in that per pupil funding. So in reality, we've seen more, if we had all those students come back, we would see more than a 4% growth rate from our fiscal year '20 revenues to fiscal year '22. So again, a lot of times, this is the most common question I get, how did we do? How do we compare from fiscal year '20 to '22? So I'm hoping that answers that question. If you've had that question in your mind, the rest of this, we'll get into the details of the general fund and other funds, but I wanted to start there. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to, me or Jeff are happy to try to answer those. Okay, seeing none.
I see Dr. Nicolet. Dr. Nicolet?
Thank you. First, let me say, bravo, and the collective work on all this is, is thank you, just thank you. So it's going to sound like kind of a hinky question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So do we know the cost to the district of, an average cost to the district for each student that is enrolled? And I know there's some variables there, transportation, you know, all the variables. Do we have an approximate cost?
So, I mean, it's a really good question, and our former Budget Director, Mike Schroeder, did a lot of work on that before he left. So the district, like any entity, has certain fixed costs, right? The maintenance of our buildings, for instance. And then we have variable costs, i.e., you know, when enrollment goes down or up, we need either less teachers or more teachers, right? And some of the other fixed costs might be the custodians. We have the same number of custodians at a building that's 80% capacity than we do at 90%, for instance. So we've got a mixture of fixed and variable costs. You know, the analysis we've done, and it can change year to year, is roughly that, you know, 2/3 of the cost of a student are those variable costs. So the incremental portion of a teacher to educate that student and so forth, that eats up to roughly 2/3. Yes.
You good, Dr. Nicolet? Okay, thank you, please. Go ahead, Mr. Mathers. Mr. Boswell, whomever's next.
Thank you. I'm going to take over for Mark at this part. So this chart here is showing the changes from the final budget we brought to you last month to the amended final budget. This shows the final results of the revenues from the legislative session. And as you can see, in the state funding, or the state revenue line, we had about $3.3 million more in revenues. And then in the transfers out, you'll see a decrease of just over $700,000. And what that is, is we saw increased, a net overall increase in our special ed, state special ed funding, our gifted and talented and English learners weighted funding categories. So that reduced the transfer out to those funds. So in total, we had about $4 million remaining after the results of the legislative session. So- So how we achieved a structurally balanced general fund amended final budget is we started with the $4 million that we gained from the results of the legislative session. We had a cost increase of 427,000 related to property and casualty premium increases. And we, we've discussed that again in several, several meetings. The next item is $450,000 for the Washoe School Principals Association vacation payout increase. We then had a $50,000 increase to the communications advertising budget. And then we shifted back 50% of the half, so $5 million of this class size reduction program from stimulus funding over, back to the general fund. So our total cost increases were about 5.9 million dollars. We also had some cost reductions. So when we built the preliminary budget for FY twenty two, we assumed about 2,000 students would be at North Star. Those are coming in closer to about 1,000 students. So the cost for the online learning program there, we were able to reduce the budget by $242,000. Then we also had a line item, about $640,000 for student hotspots, because at that time, we didn't know what the status of distance hybrid learning was going to be. So because we're going back full in person this upcoming school year, we were able to back that out of the budget. Then lastly here, we have a salary and benefit contra. So we're recognizing anticipated turnover savings now. So all those cost reductions are about $1.9 million. And so the total of those cost changes was $4 million, and that's how we got to the balanced amended final budget. This next slide here just shows a summary of our FY twenty actuals, FY twenty one projected budget, what we had in the FY twenty final budget, and now the FY, oh, sorry, FY twenty two final budget, and now the FY twenty two amended final budget. And as you can see, the budget is balanced. Here's another summary slide of just the differences between the amended and final budgets. And again, both of those budgets assume the full implementation, and that's, that's what we're doing. This next slide here just shows fund balance over the last several years. As you can see, our fund balance now is 8.7 million, 8.7% of our expenses and transfers out. This next slide here, I think it's important to note that under the full implementation of the people-centered funding plan, almost all of our revenues are state revenues, almost 98.5% of the revenues are. This chart looked very different in prior years, we had sections of local revenues, but now we're almost fully funded by the state. This chart breaks out the people-centered funding plan revenues. So this previous slide, this big blue chunk of state revenues, that's the same blue area here. And then we have our little slivers of weighted funding. The base funding is made up of base per pupil funding. So enrollment times are adjusted base per pupil amount of $7,222. And then a portion of our transfer, or prior, our historical transportation cost and what we used to spend on our local funding for special ed costs. The next slide, this breaks out all of our general fund expenditures by function. As you can see, the biggest chunk here is for regular instruction. That's classroom supplies, school supplies, and a majority of that cost is for teachers. One thing I think is important to note here is that we have general administration and central service costs. Everything, those are about 7% of the budget, 7.1%. That funds the business office, human resources, information technology, the board superintendent, area superintendents, general counsel, and some other functions. Everything else is a direct support to the schools or to students. So that's about 93% of the budget that's directly to students and schools. This is just a, some text about the slide we just went over. The general fund expenditures by type, this shows that over 90% of our general fund costs are salary and benefits. And then we have other significant cost categories as well. This slide here just shows the general fund FTE or full-time equivalency for positions. And as you can see here, the majority of the positions are licensed instructional positions. And those are going to be teachers, ROTC instructors, and deans. It's just a pie chart showing that same information. Any questions on the general fund? Okay, we'll jump into other funds. So this is the special revenue slides. This has the final special ed and weighted funding revenues here. Those are the only changes from the, the final budget, and this doesn't include any of the SIR three budget. But future budget presentations, we'll have that once that budget's finalized. Our internal service funds, again, this is the property and casualty health insurance and workers' comp funds. The only change here is the increase in the property and casualty premium. And we went over that in the general fund changes. Capital projects funds, no major changes from the final budget. Debt service funds, no major changes from the final budget. And then our enterprise fund or nutrition services fund, no major changes from the final budget. I'm going to hand it back to Mark for issues going forward.
So that is a summary of the fiscal year 22 total budget for the Washoe County School District. Of course, you know, our work's never done, right? There's always changes. We need to kind of track those changes because all of them could affect our budget situation going forward into fiscal year 22. I think most of you know that, you know, labor negotiations with various bargaining units are basically on hold until our budget is finalized, right? Until we know what our resources are, it's, really can't talk about monetary issues too much. So that will begin in earnest here shortly. And obviously, that could affect our budget situation. You'll be hearing, you'll be receiving recommendations for uses of SIR three funding. This is the American Rescue Plan funding, will receive roughly 77 million. And I believe you'll be receiving those recommendations at our July 27th board meeting. And then, as, as always, enrollment again plays a key factor in how we staff our schools. So we'll go through a fall allocation process based on actual enrollment. We hope to see, again, a return of students who may have been held back in kindergarten or homeschooled or what have you with, you know, COVID kind of going through, you know, hopefully its last legs. And, and that will definitely affect the general fund budget. We'll look at the kind of the localized enrollment situation in Damone Ranch, and that could affect the decision on, as to whether to move forward with construction of the Rio Wrangler Elementary School or not. And so that won't have an impact on the operating budget in fiscal year 22, but would for 23. So, you know, we'll continue to talk about education and outreach efforts with you. And as we've mentioned many times, it'll be important for us to develop a multi-year plan that takes a look at, you know, enrollment, the increases in state funding, our SIR funding, and tells you, gives you a game plan for the next four years that, that we know will change, but at least you'll understand how we intend to, again, move back class size reduction, staffing back into the general fund and kind of pace the, the use of SIR fundings over the next two to three years. So we'll be back to you, we'll probably give you a break here over the summer. Before we get back into it, we'll probably see you in the fall. Once again, we have better enrollment numbers for next school year. But again, we appreciate your support for everything over the last three years to get to where we are today. Again, third straight balanced budget. It wouldn't have happened without the strong support of, of the superintendent and the board. So we're very appreciative, very proud that we can, again, present this balanced budget to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mather and Mr. Basel. I think we do have some public comment on this item. JJ?
Dee Anderson, then George Lee.
Ms. Anderson, welcome.
Hi, thanks. I'm not going to be nervous today.
Don't be nervous, it's okay.
I'm not nervous today. Okay, I did actually read the budget. Yes, every page. Well, some of them I kind of scrolled through really quickly. But after reviewing these materials for this agenda item, I would like to request of the board that they consider that future budgets include a public breakdown of the funding for each of the nine school district offices from the office of superintendent down through the other eight offices. And that the associated funding for each department, under their responsibility, be available for public review in a line item format. It would also be in the public interest that funding for each individual school be more transparent so that when principals submit their school budget, it become a matter of public record. So I am a little nervous, but that's all I have to say. So just for future consideration, you guys, it's most important for you, I think. So if they, it's up to you to direct them to do those and provide that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
George Lee.
Is it Lee, sir with a K?
No, it's L-E-E.
Oh, Lee, okay. I got it, I got it. I think you've been here before, but your head's down here, I can't see you, so. Well, welcome back, Mr. Lee.
Lights bother my eyes.
It's okay, thank you, Mr. Lee.
I was just watching the presentation, and it's great, it's in-depth. The only problem I have with it is that you guys aren't made aware that the national inflation rate is exceeding a parabola right now. And that making guesses, because it's future, they call, they call them guesses, about where we'll be in the near future with, because inflation is going to go, right, is something you guys need to consider and be more aware of. Because he can make promises about where we'll be, and we'll be so many millions and this and that. But if inflation goes to 5%, then no amount of contracts are going to be able to protect you. Anyway, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
That's all I have for this item.
Okay, thank you, JJ. We'll bring it back here to the, to the board table. This, um, this is an action item, as we all know. So we're looking for other, other questions of Mr. Mather, Mr. Basel. I see you leaning, trustee Church, you want to start this off?
Number one, just if you could comment on the inflation aspect, and then one statement. I thought the speaker raised some good issues, and I've always, since I've been on, I pretty well advocated that we might want to look at a fiscal or financial advisory board as one of our committees. But if you could comment on inflation.
Thank you, trustee Church. Mark Mathers, chief financial officer. I thought both, both public comments were really good and raised really good points. So I'll start with the inflation question. And as, and you probably have seen, we have seen an uptick in inflation. Most economists feel like it's a temporary uptick, but we'll see, right? Once inflation starts, a lot of times it can get out of hand. One of the things we did with this fiscal year 22 budget is increase our contingency account. And that's something we talked about at the board policy committee and that we've done. So our contingency amount has been increased to a little under 4.2 million. And that would provide the funding necessary, if we did see inflation, for instance, in fuel costs, which we're seeing, right? We're seeing diesel costs go up. I don't expect to see that so much in electricity or gas, but certainly fuel for our buses has gone up. So we have that contingency account that we can access because we knew, again, we don't have a guaranteed per pupil funding source anymore. So we need to prepare prudently for contingencies like inflation. Certainly inflation's also kind of a factor when we talk about collective bargaining and wages of our employees. So again, that will be a big issue going into fiscal year 22. So I think it's a very appropriate comment from that gentleman to raise that question, but we have prepared for those contingencies. Just going back to the first public comment, we did provide a breakdown of budgets by department and office in our tentative budget. We provide breakdowns of department budgets in the data gallery portion of our district website. That's on our homepage. And then one of the new aspects of the people-centered funding plan is we will be providing reports by school on their budgets and spending, and then that'll even be broken up further on a per pupil basis. So this goes back to one of the kind of the fundamental tenets of the new funding formula, which is funding follows the student. So you will start, that per pupil breakdown will also be available going forward. But again, department and school budgets are available on, on the data gallery, and they were presented to you certainly for the tentative budget. And, and we certainly can refresh that if the board would like to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Church. That, that gets to let, answer your questions, sir. I will just say, thank you, Mr. Mather, for those comments. And just want to make sure that Ms. Anderson heard that a lot of the information you were seeking for is available on the data gallery, you were looking for, available on the data gallery. So that information is there for you. Thank you, Mr. Mather. Vice President Caldwell?
Thank you, Madam President. So with the new funding formula, with the emphasis of the funding following the student, as you've mentioned, is the district expecting major changes to how staff are allocated to schools this year now that the funding follows students?
We'll pause.
So, so Mark Mathers, chief financial officer, that's a really important and significant question. I think it will change how we budget going forward. But I think this district has always kept those principles in mind. I know when we looked at title funding and the, kind of the federal guidelines for supplement, not supplant, we really, when we looked at per pupil spending for title schools versus non-title schools, which is what that analysis got to, we actually, we're, we're very good. And, and the, and the, the reason why we're required to go through that analysis is to make sure that title schools don't receive less funding on a per pupil basis from the general fund than non-title schools. And in fact, that's not the case, unlike some other districts. And part of that's based on our staffing guidelines that provides for additional staffing for one and two star rated schools. So I think, I'm answering it kind of in a long-winded way. I think this district has always kind of been sensitive to those issues. So I'm not sure that I would expect to see dramatic changes overall in, in staffing. But it certainly changes and makes us more sensitive to the fact, that fact. I think other districts will see more significant changes, though.
Great, well, I think that's good, though, because change can be good, but change can be, be bad if it's so sudden and, and really uproots things. So I'm glad that this district is not going to see a huge shift with this new plan, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Caldwell. Good, nodding, okay. Other comments, questions? This is an action item. And so if there are no further comments and questions, then I will look for a motion from my colleagues, if it's the pleasure of the board. And I see trustee Caldwell leaning in, he gets priority, this is his last meeting, he can, he gets priority.
Thank you. I move the board trustees approves the amended final budget for fiscal year 2021, '22.
Thank you, Vice President Caldwell.
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Caldwell, for the motion, and seconded by Clerk Minneto. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposition? The motion is carried, let the record show that it is unanimous, seven to zip, that we have passed a balanced budget, approved a balanced budget for three years in a row. Thank you so much for your help, Mr. Mather, Mr. Basel, and the team, and to the trustees. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to Agenda Item 4.02. We have the same suspects in front of, I'm sorry, presenters in front of us. This is Agenda Item, this is kind of closing the loop on this now, right? This is for the resolutions that accompany making this final so we can get it turned in and submitted to the state. So once again, Mr. Mather and Mr. Basel.
Thank you, Madam President. So I know this is kind of anticlimactic and it maybe is a little confusing. These are final fiscal year cleanup. These are final fiscal year cleanup items for the current fiscal year's budget, fiscal year 21. So these are augmentations we need to make to the budgets of various funds for fiscal year 21 before the fiscal year closes out on June 30th. We also have some cross-functional transfers here to make sure we stay under budget by function. So it's a little confusing, I get it, but this is for the current fiscal year, we've got eight days left in the fiscal year, and so again, this is just cleanup we have to do. We will try to get through this quickly, and with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff Basel.
Thanks, Mark. For the record, Jeff Basel, Budget Director. So our agenda for today is to go over the purpose of budget augmentations, and then the summary of the augmentation by fund. So first, when is a budget augmentation needed? We have the definition by NRS here, but the summary of that is when there is a need to increase the appropriations of a fund. This is a budget augmentation, budget augmentation is a routine item that we do. We do one in December because by law, we have to adjust our budget to enrollment. And then we do it in June, as Mark mentioned earlier, as an end-of-year cleanup for all of our funds. So in order to augment a budget, you have to have an available resource, and those are defined in Nevada Administration Code. So those are an opening fund balance, which is larger than anticipated, revenues in excess of those budgeted, revenues generated from previously unbudgeted sources, and unappropriated ending fund balance for, or of a fund for capital projects. If you find this very intriguing, there's other NRS and Nevada Administrative Code listed here for you to read. So now we'll get into the summary of augmentations by fund. So first, we have the general fund, and this augmentation is appropriating the remaining $6.6 million of unappropriated opening fund balance in the fund, and we're appropriating the fund for a couple reasons. One of those is to adjust the textbook purchase that were previously budgeted through bond proceeds, only half of that will, so we'll need an expenditure for about $3.1 million for textbooks. We also need to increase some transfers by $500,000 each to the property and casualty and workers' comp funds to cover possible increases in incurred claims. And then also increase the transfer to the Medicaid Fund due to lower-than-anticipated revenues, and I'll get to that here in the last slide. And then lastly, as Mark mentioned, we have some cross-functional transfers in the fund that are needed to adjust our expenditures, or budgeted expenditures, to the projected expenditures. Moving on to the class size reduction fund, in the winter months, we received a supplemental class size reduction award of just over $1.2 million to fund 19 class size reduction teacher allocations at one and two star schools. So we did distribute those allocations to schools, I think it was late winter, maybe early spring, right after we got that information. So the schools were given the allocations for the remainder of this year, so here we're augmenting the fund to account for that additional revenue and the additional expenditures. And the property and casualty fund, we're augmenting the fund by the $500,000 transfer in from the general fund for potential increases to the property and liability insurance and incurred claims. The workers' compensation fund, same thing as property and casualty, $500,000 transfer in from the general fund to cover potential claims in excess of those budgeted. And I will hand it back over to Mark to talk about our capital projects and debt service funds.
So for our GST capital fund, we're increasing appropriations of the budget by $618,000 or so dollars, and most of that is for, as we know, the installation of distance learning hubs at four schools, that's half a million dollars. And we're doing some other remodeling as well. And then for the 2020 rollover bond fund, we sold $130.48 million of bonds in January, and this augmentation is not augmenting that entire amount, some of that amount is needed for future years. But we did need to increase the budget for bond issuance costs, and then capital renewal projects as well that were funded by these bonds. Our debt service fund, we're augmenting by $30,879,029, just basically reflect a higher-than-expected opening fund balance, but that does pay for the interest payment on that $130 million we sold in January. And then we're pre-funding the PC refresh, the device refresh project. We will transfer $4 million that is in excess of debt service to that new property tax capital project fund on the next page. And then we're augmenting the budget for up to $750,000 in interest earnings. We probably won't have quite that much, but wanted to give the ability to do that. So again, the device refresh program is funded through revenues in excess of debt service and interest earnings. So we're making that transfer now that we know how much our debt service was for fiscal year 21, we know how much we can transfer, and so we'll do that so that that money's in the pot in that new fund, which is on the next page, beginning on July 1st. And that'll allow Chris Turner and the IT staff to start ordering devices and putting those in schools right away. And so you see the other side of the transaction, the augmentation of that fund for those monies.
The last one we have here is the Medicaid Fund. We're augmenting the fund by $1.8 million. This will be a transfer in from the general fund, and we're reducing revenues by the same amount, also $1.8 million. This augmentation is recognizing an anticipated reduction in the federal revenues in the Medicaid Fund for a couple reasons here. One, there was a rate reduction for speech, so we're feeling that impact in the current fiscal year. There was a 6% rate reduction that was approved as part of the special session last summer. Most of that will be restored, but we will still have an impact there. And then due to lower enrollment overall as a district and having students on hybrid and distance learning programs, we saw a decrease in the Medicaid eligible services that were provided. And then lastly here, again, cross-functional transfer is needed to adjust the budgeted expenditures to our projected expenditures. And that concludes the presentation on the June augmented budget. Are there any questions?
Looks like, oh, we do have public comment on this, okay.
George Lee.
Welcome, Mr. Lee.
Hi. I just heard outside something about count day and AMA, or the average mean attendance numbers. How's that calculated? I know, you're not going to answer, but I'm just saying, that's my question, because that really, really ties into all this, because it has to do with.
I appreciate that, Mr. Lee. Other questions or comments on this? And again, thank you, Mr. Mather, for claiming that we actually just signed what we needed to sign to finalize the budget, and this is to make sure we're good for the ending of this year's budget, so. Thank you. I knew there was another step before that was real, and that was it, okay. Anything else, otherwise, looking for a motion, if it is the pleasure of the Board regarding these Board resolutions, to tie up the loose ends, eight days, how many, eight days left of this fiscal year? Vice President Caldwell? I'm just going to call on you lighter, no light.
Okay, that sounds good, I'm ready. I move that the Board of Trustees adopts Washoe County School District Board Resolutions 21-010, 21-011, 21-012, 21-013, 21-014, 21-015, 21-016, 21-017, and 21-018, resolutions to augment the fiscal year 2020-21 budget and approves budget transfers as proposed.
This motion on the floor from Vice President Caldwell, is there a second? Seconded by Clerk Minneto. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of these resolutions, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none. Okay, let the record, the motion pass, the seven to zip, let the record show that it is unanimous. Thank you very much for your work, for finishing up last year, and all the funds, and in a positive position, and especially for three years in a row of submitting a balanced budget. All right, we're going to move on to Agenda, we're on our presentations now? On to Agenda Item 5, I know it's, we've gone for a minute, I'm trying to see if, because we've been at it for two and a half hours, so I'm trying to see if, if, let's see, why don't we go ahead, oh, these two are together, why don't we have, why don't we have a break? Okay, why don't we have a break? We've been at it for two and a half hours, so sorry, sorry, Mr. Cerise, I know you just sat down. I know that, so why don't we take a 20-minute, we'll take our, we take our dinner break now, because that timing, because then we'll take it, because we won't take another break, I don't think we have. I think we'll be able to go through the rest of this until the break, I think so? We'll certainly try so, so why don't we do that? We'll take a 20-minute break, and I may come back and add it if we're sure the food gets here and we're good to go. All right, so we're on recess right now. According to my clock, I have 4:22, so let's come back at, let's just make it 45. Okay, 45, we're on break. Thank you very much.
Done that way primarily for time efficiency. We're able to begin the mass grading while we're completing the design of the building, and then contract separately for the building once the construction is ready to begin, and once the design for the building is complete, things like that. But it requires that we administer these contracts individually. We'll get to the next slide, maybe. There we go, thank you. So these four contracts loosely described as the orditch, which was completed, relocated the orditch in 2020, the GMP 2, the onsite improvements, think mass grading and underground utilities, that's nearly completed. The GMP 3, which is primarily consists of the building, that's the largest individual construction contract, and then GMP 4 rounding out the scope for the project, the offsite improvements, and that's really what we're here to talk about. But I wanted to try and, again, set the context to talk about the entire project as a whole, which was originally budgeted at a construction cost of over $200 million, and was awarded at a total construction cost at approximately $160 million. That savings, if you will, or value under budget was largely attributed to the timing of the bid of GMP 3. As fortune would have it for the school district, despite the terrible impacts of the pandemic, we opened bids in April 2020 and saw much more aggressive pricing from our contractors. Fortunate for the school district and the taxpayers, and even more fortunate that they've been able to deliver on those construction contracts as we've continued to build the building. And the small print down in the lower left-hand is getting into the details of what we want to talk about here. You can see the individual base contract values, as well as the owner contingencies. Each construction contract is authorized with a small percentage of owner contingency for your typical construction, unforeseen conditions, underground, or various adjustments that need to be made out in the field in order to keep those projects moving forward. So you can see four separate construction contracts that are being administered individually, yet simultaneously. A significant amount of total overall project contingency remains, but we're speaking specifically about scope associated with GMP 4, and only working with a couple hundred thousand dollars there to solve any problems that may come up. So this slide is exact, the exact same slide that you saw in January, when we awarded the construction contract GMP 4 for the offsite work. And generally speaking, this is to mitigate the impacts of the new high school at this location. Significant roadway improvements, you'll see three new roundabouts at these intersections, accessing to and from the school site, and then at the intersection of El Rancho and Sullivan Lane, as well as all new paving, and essentially sidewalk from Sun Valley Boulevard all the way down to McCarran and just past McCarran, there's some improvements at McCarran Boulevard. All of that was in the base contract award for GMP 4 back in January. Now, since we've been under construction and finalizing the permit approvals with the City of Sparks and Washoe County, we've taken a much closer look at the sidewalk, specifically from the campus up to Sun Valley. This one's a little hard to see, depending on how hard you squint, but if you look at the project site, you can see the white dashed line leaving the campus and heading up Sun Valley Boulevard, or pardon me, Sullivan Lane, and then up El Rancho. That white is the proposed pedestrian route, the new sidewalk that we're constructing with this GMP 4. And then you get up to, you can see kind of the turquoise dash line and the yellow dash line. And what was originally proposed and contracted for is that turquoise line. So we're proposing to bring the students up on basically the right-hand side of the road, or the east side of the road, have them cross on a crosswalk at a traffic signal, continue up the other side of the road in that turquoise, and then matching existing sidewalk all the way up to Sun Valley Boulevard, where there's another traffic signal crossing to the north, continuing on their way up into Sun Valley. After extensive meetings and discussions with the City of Sparks and Washoe County, and our own Chief Operations Officer and our Facilities Department, we've ultimately come to the conclusion that having the students cross El Rancho twice despite being at a crosswalk is not in the best interest of safety for all the students that might bike and walk to and from the school. So that's really the change that we're here to talk about, looking at option two, as it's illustrated on that exhibit. So this next slide is sort of a zoom in of that same image, that yellow dashed line representing option, the option that we've selected or are proposing here tonight. You know, really keeping that sidewalk and the pedestrians, therefore, on the same side of the road, whether they're coming from Sun Valley, staying on that east side, or leaving the high school campus, going back to Sun Valley, staying on that same side of the road the entire length up to Sun Valley, felt very important to all of those agencies, as well as the Facilities Department. The case, or the simple fact is that the pedestrians will ultimately follow the paths of least resistance, and we need that to be a safe one. I took this screenshot from Google Street View, it really illustrates the point. You can see the very nice existing sidewalk on the west side of the road, and you can see the two pedestrians walking in the bike lane, right in front of the guardrail, and that is exactly the area where we are proposing to construct some sidewalk for, and for that very reason. However, this particular location, as maybe indicated by the presence of that guardrail, presents some significant physical challenges to constructing that sidewalk. The roadway width is essentially maxed out right there. We've got to maintain the two lanes of traffic, the existing bike lane, and then we are up against a bit of a canyon. I mean, it's a, you know, not the Grand Canyon, but it's a 10-foot rock drop-off that has a guardrail there. So in order to construct that sidewalk, we have to construct a retaining wall. So this isn't just the sidewalk, it's the excavation, the traffic control, the retaining wall, the backfill, the roadway reconstruction, then of course, the sidewalk itself, the chain-link fence that must go on the backside of the sidewalk to keep anybody from, you know, leaving off into the canyon, things of that nature, ultimately constructs the finished project product that this project and those students really, truly need. But it is at a greater cost to the project than what was originally contemplated, and it is not something that can be absorbed by the contingency associated with this contract. I circle back to that, because while the project overall is doing very well, and in aggregate could absorb this particular scope change, since we're contractually obligated to manage this scope within the contract through which it was executed, we have only $300,000 or so, we're managing. We're managing the typical unforeseens with that, but this major scope addition requires board action and that's really what we're here to discuss. So this is my last slide. It includes a recommendation. I wanted to just highlight this aerial image, um, is of the project or the, the location in question pretty accurately. You can see those trees on the, would be the left-hand side of the road in this picture and the existing sidewalk on the right-hand side. Very, uh, you know, very good quality, but having to cross the street twice really, uh, was going to create safety hazards that we felt strongly need to be avoided. And I, I want to end on a positive note, but I wanted to take advantage of the opportunity to comment. We actually unfortunately had an incident with our traffic control out there just yesterday that I wanted to mention on the record. There's so much emotion, heat in the air, uh, frustration and impatience sometimes in all of our lives. Unfortunately, there was a, a flagger, a traffic control person who was assaulted by a citizen. Law enforcement had to get involved and address the situation. But, you know, as we speak to the public and do everything we can in these public work projects, want to just urge and plead with everyone for their patience, um, for everyone's safety involved. It's a unfortunate incident. Everybody's okay, but it was not okay and I wanted to make a comment about that. And really, this view I like quite a bit because you can see the finished high school on the horizon or the nearly finished high school on the horizon. And, you know, this is really taken from Sun Valley in the foreground and this is, this is the connection that we're trying to make between that community and between that new high school. In order to make that, we need to sneak that sidewalk in along that canyon and it's going to cost a little bit more than we had originally anticipated. And so the recommendation here this afternoon is to increase the owner contingency amount, uh, in the amount here before you this afternoon. Okay, thank you for that, uh, presentation. I'll open up to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cersei. I, I do have a question, just a clarification. Um, I think it's, it's really clear here that this is, this is really a safety item, right? In terms of, um, I, I have to wholeheartedly agree, we don't want students, any students having to walk across such a, such a busy four-lane street, especially twice, right? Once is enough, especially twice. Uh, my question, um, is, so it, and one of your slides, I want to say, I don't remember which one, one of the early ones, one, two, three, something like that, one, two, three, yeah. You talked about how, um, you have about 4 million in total project contingency that remains, but, but I know it isn't in, it isn't in GMP number four. So does that, is this a reallocation then on that or we, or we want it, or we need to keep that project contingency? Um, and then maybe that comes back to us and we want to make, make sure and put this on the upfront. I mean, it's a safety issue, so I don't, I don't, to me, I think we have to do it. That's my idea, but I want to get your feedback on that.
No, great question. Thank you, uh, for the opportunity to clarify. So first and foremost, any unused contingency on any of these contracts will come back to the school district in full. Um, but with respect to the action before the board, this is, in addition to the base contract contingency, we're recommending that that 325,000 or so be reserved for, some of it's been expended already and be reserved for the possible unforeseens related to the remainder of the scope and that this being almost an exclusive scope addition be added to this base owner contingency.
I understand because it wasn't included in the first place and so not taking it. I understand. Thank you. That's, that's my question. Other, other questions, comments? Don't see anything, so look, oh, we have some public comment cards. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, JJ.
Darla Lee, then George Lee.
Welcome back, Ms. Lee.
Thank you. Unforeseen, I would have to disagree with at least that wording because for two years, uh, there was a, a large group of people that were contesting the location of the school and, uh, at least two years, as I'm sure Mr. Cersei will recall. And since it has, uh, not everyone on the current board was approving of it, um, but it, uh, it went through. So we, that are living in that area have been subjected for the last, what, year or so, to the pounding and the construction and now the road closure of Sullivan. But unforeseen, the safety, that's what we kept talking about, the safety of the students that would be and as well as the, the traffic, that the location of what, where this school is, not to mention the fact that the, uh, movable, the moving clay that the, that the location has at its base. So this wonderful new school is, uh, is having unforeseen and they've had six years at least, five, six years to think about the safety of the students and this is finally coming to the fore. That's, uh, I don't know, I, I have no words to express how silly that is, that this wasn't thought of before and, and brought into consideration, uh, considering how much has already been spent on this school. And I would like to just briefly say that the, the people that have their homes that are along Sullivan where because of the construction and the new sidewalks and the new road on Sullivan, these homes, at least four that I know of, have major cracks in their foundation. And, uh, so, and I'm sure they have no recourse to say, you know, well, it was because of this construction. All I know is that it was certainly not a help to the foundations of those homes that are along Sullivan. So it's unfortunate. I, I think the safety of our, of our kids is very important, so obviously this should be passed, but to have, to, to characterize it as unforeseen is just ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
George Lee Pablo Nava Duran.
Welcome back, Mr. Lee.
Hi, I'm back. It's George Lee for the record. Um, this 501, the way it's written, uh, owner's contingency, who's the owner? And instead of writing W C S D or the construction company or whatever, owner. Uh, the second thing is, um, offsite improvements. Can you pull up your slide number two, Mr. Cersei? Do you have a way, are you awake? Hello?
I'm sorry, Mr. Lee.
Mr. Cersei?
Mr. Lee, I'm sorry, you know, we don't, we don't engage in that.
I know, but can you pull up the number two slide? You, okay. Anyway, it showed El Rancho and the, the roundabouts and stuff. And he talked about the, the real crux of the situation. We're talking about path of least resistance. The sidewalk on the west side of El Rancho going down to McCarran is a four-foot sidewalk and I believe it's four foot all the way, but I, I don't think it's any less than or any more than that. And the one on the east side is also four feet. And anybody coming from Hug High, the Hug High now, in that Hug High zone are going to be going up El Rancho. They're not going to be walking over the hill and going all the way down to Sullivan to come up, you know, Sullivan. They're going to go up El Rancho. So why? I know, I heard some malarkey about how, well, NDOT didn't approve it. The point is, you need wider sidewalks on El Rancho. There's even a whole section on the east side of El Rancho that isn't even paved. It's like just dirt, you know? And I haven't seen anything in the plans, especially the plans that he showed in his drawing about putting sidewalks in. That ought to be considered. Because people, these are kids, they're going to be going up the path of least resistance, which means they're going to be, all the ones from Hug High Zone, this is actually this way, down to the river, all of this whole massive area, they are going to be coming up El Rancho. Now, you can say, oh, well, we can tell them not to, we can do this or that, but the point is they're going to be coming up El Rancho. So you ought to take a look at that and that's something really needs to be addressed in this contingency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Pablo Nava Duran.
Welcome, Mr. Duran.
Hello, how, hello, how you doing? Doing good so far? So I saw the similar, I liked the, the school designing for a football field. It looked like the mine watch high school football field, similar to the mine watch high school football field. So I like that. So, so I heard the other two comment about the safely walking to a wild show parkway. Uh, so I think you're very good point about the, about the sidewalk to make sure, had to make sure you had to student make walking safe to school from walking, you know? You don't want to get killed or get injured or death. So that's similar to what, uh, what I talked to you about zoning, meaning about the rezoning from make sure to booster, to have to go walk and you make a point about the, you walk some for, miss, well, it's go be walk some for booster because, because of a, so the walkway to booster, you know, they have a very narrow sidewalk and then most people, most of the student will have to cross the miniature all the way to go to booster. And I know you're working on a public entry structure. I saw the project, so good job for working on, so to make it students safe from walking to school, make it safe to walk into school. And, uh, I hopefully, uh, and, uh, yeah, I'm a cost, uh, I post, um, me and my, uh, I post to move to Sun Valley, but since the pandemic changed and, uh, cost of labor up, I decided to move to newer area and then, uh, start from crash. Uh, maybe next or two year, we might move to our area, um, something like.
Mr. Duran, if you can stay on this agenda item, sir.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I will stay. Uh, yeah, I, the new high, high school will make a professor for a student, uh, from Sun Valley to northeast Reno to have a new, uh, hence path of, uh, a high school. So, uh, more sets our location between the northeast Reno and Sun Valley. Uh, most of the student will be walking onto school and, uh, we try to make sure like everybody will walk safely and the first people, people over go on a bus including like, when over three mile of sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
That's all I have for this item.
Thank you, JJ. Dr. Nicolet, I see your light.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm out of my scope of expertise, but we need to increase the contingency. I'm not quite sure why, because it seems to me that the initial plan, seems to me that this, this reframing of the sidewalk idea would cost less money. So I'm kind of trying to understand why do we need more money for a contingency that seems a lot easier?
So the base scope included the crossing where we, um, build the sidewalk until we cross them onto the other side of the road, build some more sidewalk on the other side of the road where there is shoulder width available and then continue on up and have to cross them over again. That's what's in the base scope. What's being proposed is sidewalk on the same side of the road the whole way up, but in order to, so we still have sidewalk, the whole length of the road in the base scope, but in order to move that sidewalk essentially to the other side of the road, keep them on the same side, the added costs are associated with that retaining wall and the roadway excavation and the roadway reconstruction and all that business. It's more expensive to construct the sidewalk on that side of the road. That's why originally it was designed, uh, to cross the roads, far more cost effective, but ultimately, again, in consultation with the other agencies and much debate internally after we contracted for the work, felt strongly enough that we do need to keep them on the same side of the road and despite the fact that will cost significantly more to construct, the request for owner contingency will then allow us to issue a change order to the contractor for whatever the final negotiated price for that work is.
So as a, as a homeowner, my gosh, lumber's up 400%. Some, something like really crazy, so I'm not going to build my raised beds right now. What holds our prices? What mechanisms holds our pricing in, in place so that when we do something like a contingency and change, do a change order, we are not subject to those increased slash inflation costs?
By and large, it's the base contract that we've executed. So in part, executing these contracts as close to the time at which they'll actually be constructed does protect us to some degree from those market volatilities. You know, we, we don't contract for this scope a year and a half in advance. When we first started the construction, we'll contract or buy it from the contractor closer to the time that they will actually execute the work. And once we've issued those subcontracts, they can go and purchase materials and lock in those prices with their vendors and insulate themselves further from that risk. So really, it's the timing and the base contract that we've executed with them. There's always some more fluctuation than that, but, um, and conversely, as I mentioned, the timing with COVID, um, benefited the taxpayers quite tremendously in that the market was taking a brief dive and we happened to buy the contract for the building at that time at much lower than anticipated levels.
Did they take care of that, Dr. Nicolet?
Yes, absolutely. And I understood every word. You did a fabulous job. Thank you.
Thanks. Awesome. All right, Clerk Meneteau?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I, excuse me, I drive down that road a lot and I know that the children would not cross the street to stay on the sidewalk. They just wouldn't. Um, and so I think I'm in full support of this and I see that it is budgeted for and it just makes sense to me. So thank you for helping keep our kids safe.
Thank you, Clerk Meneteau. Seeing no other questions and we've gotten the public comment, looking for a motion if that is the pleasure of the board? Uh, Vice President Caldo, you'd like to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am. I'm with Board of Trustees approves the increase to owner's contingency in the amount of $1,133,000 for a total of $1,458,000 for the guaranteed maximum price, GMP number four of the new comprehensive high school at Wild Creek, also HUG High School, C Mar C 61600A for offsite improvements.
Thank you, Vice President Caldo. I'm, I'm going to second that. I'm going to second that. Just, just because, you know, it's HUG. That's all. No other reason, just no other reason, just no other reason. Although that's your district now when HUG moves, Clerk Meneteau. It is. All right, so we have a motion on the floor and there is a second, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? The motion carries that the record show it is unanimous, that we will build a sidewalk for the children.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cersei. Okay, Agenda Item 5.02, information and discussion to update the Board of Trustees on mental wellness supports, including the use of and potential use of telehealth in the delivery of medical and mental health supports for students in the Washoe County School District. This is for an information item. This was a, a board request, uh, from quite a bit ago from a couple of trustees and, um, certainly timely as we deal more and more with the effects of students and COVID and all of that. So I see a, a quadrae of people in front of us, but I'm going to start with, uh, our Chief Strategies Officer, Dr. Lamarcus, because I think you're leading this charge and you have the light on, so that tells me that. That's why I'm the president.
You just made my glasses fog up. Thank you, President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity, for the record, Paul Lamarcus, Chief Strategies Officer. I am joined by this amazing team, Trish Schaefer, the Coordinator of MTSS SCL, Catherine Loudon, the Coordinator of Counseling Department, and Brandy Olson, the Coordinator of Psychological Services. Uh, we had hoped to be joined by Ms. Delet Snyder, who is the Executive Director of Join Together Northern Nevada. She was available the two previous times we were trying to be on the agenda, but she couldn't be here tonight. couldn't be here tonight, so we apologize for that. We will be fairly brief, but we do want to give you some information because we know that this was a board request. So our objectives are really just to draw some attention to mental health awareness. Again, it was Mental Health Awareness Month when we originally were going to provide this presentation. We're going to outline our district's continuum of services, social, emotional, mental wellness services. We'll provide a little bit of information about telehealth as a service delivery model. I will discuss some of our current practices in place to support social and emotional well-being, and then we'll discuss some potential future directions. Just for a little bit of reference, according to the the Mental Health Alliance, that's a national organization, Nevada ranks 47th in terms of adult mental health and 51st in terms of student mental health. And this is based on a variety of factors, including if there is a mental health condition among adults or among students in the previous year, if there are incidents of substance use disorder in the previous year, if there are threats of suicide or there are suicide among the adult population, the number of.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lamarcas, I'm just gonna, I'm hate to interrupt you. So when you say 47th or 51st, is that that's a combination of those things, like in the number of those things or the occurrence of those those situations, those issues that you're talking about, or in terms of support for or people dealing with?
People dealing with. So in terms of mental health as being a concern, it's we are 51st in the nation among our adult population, 47th, or I'm sorry, 47th with our adult population, 51st with our student population. So there are a couple of other indicators as well that kind of lead to that ranking. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Schaefer.
Thank you for the record, Trish Schaefer. Thank you for being allowing us to be here today. I wanted to orient you to multi-tiered system of supports in terms of how we are able to effectively and efficiently support our students for academic and social emotional well-being. Multi-tiered system of supports is an educational framework that allows us to ensure successful educational outcomes for all of our students. This translates to our educators using database problem-solving processes to inform multiple tiers of integrated academic, behavioral, and social emotional instruction and intervention, leading to successful outcomes for our students. MTSS framework supports our schools in identifying students who are struggling so that they may provide support early based on their level of need. Instead of using a traditional wait-to-fail model, it allows us to our students to receive timely, evidence-based instruction and intervention, and provides a system for us to progress monitor on how they're responding to our supports. To give you a quick idea, it's built off the health model, and the tiers integrate academics, behavioral, and social emotional wellness. Tier one is the foundation, and that is which all students receive instruction, intervention, and support. We like to say that 80 to 85% of our students are not only responding but thriving with actions we do every single day. Some of our students will naturally, from time to time, need additional support with academics, attendance, or social emotional wellness, and that would be at tier two. This is typically a small group with students that have a homogeneous need, and we provide timely intervention so that they can return to accessing core academics and supports. And then finally, tier three, which is intensive individualized intervention provided for all of our students, typically, we say 3 to 5% of our students who are requiring more individualized supports.
Thank you, Trish. For the record, my name is Catherine Loudon. I'm the Coordinator of School Counseling. It's always interesting to me when people talk about how all of these things like social emotional learning and relationships building and rigor and relevance and equitable practices are separate things. They're all very much connected to one another, and what they're most connected with, as you heard Trish mention, is learning. It's the relationship that our students have with that one caring adult. It's the relationship that they have that brings them to school so that they can attend, to listen, and engage in material. It's the relationship that they have so that they can trust, so they can try an AP course or a dual credit class, or so that they can work on something related to their behavior or stand up in front of their peers and present. Social, emotional, learning, mental wellness, relationships, rigor, and relevance are the thing. They are part of all of it, and it's impossible to separate all of those things. You can't have a trauma-sensitive quality instructional class that doesn't look at all of those things on a regular basis. They are very much apart, and we're often talking about that in our offices, especially related to one another. It's just really critical for people to see and understand that it's that connection that contributes to all of those things, gets us the perseverance and the motivation that we need for our students to be successful in school.
For the record, I'm Brandy Olson with the Psychological Services Department. As you can see with that first bullet, student attendance is very important. Attendance, students who attend less than 90% of the time are unlikely to respond to core instruction. That's because those children miss the initial instruction, and then when they come back, they're a little behind. So they never quite are able to catch up if they struggle with attendance. Attendance is also very important to build self-efficacy and the willingness to take chances within that school environment. Consistent attendance is how you build a relationship with teachers and students and other staff members, and that is what gives students the courage and the willingness to take chances in their learning. So there's a variety of reasons why students may struggle with attendance. A couple of them, though, are students who are impacted by mental health needs or students who have are impacted by trauma. So one in six children have a mental illness that may impact their school attendance, and 25% of our children have experienced at least one traumatic event by the age of 16. So those students who are impacted by their mental health needs and trauma are often, when they are either are not at school, or when they are at school, struggle to stay focused within that classroom environment. They're often either trying to regulate their own emotions and behaviors, or they're really on edge and are looking kind of always expecting that next traumatic event to happen. So that's why it's very important that our classrooms have high-quality management so those students feel safe and comfortable and are willing to come back to school and are able to to start to able to build connections with the their classmates and the adults within their school building.
Okay, so I mentioned earlier that we use the same framework to support our students with academics as we do with attendance and social, emotional, behavioral, and it is through MTSS. And just like with academics, we intensify intervention based on student need. And I wanted to just quickly share a couple of examples that you might have seen during your school visits and help orient you to our tiered process here in our district. So I mentioned that at the foundation is tier one, and those are activities, you can think of them as daily instruction and/or prevention activities that are going on in our buildings every single day for all of our students. Examples of these might include our PBIS matrices that you see posted. It's a large grid, and you'll see Dipoli, for example, uses strike, strength, tolerance, responsibility, integrity, knowledge, and empathy, and they incorporate that into everything that they do. Other examples, you might see social, emotional learning lessons or accountable talk going on where students are learning how to debate and engage in discussion and defend one side or the other. For our students who might need a little additional help, this might look like our students receiving an attendance monitoring plan. If we have a child with something happening in their family and we notice that they're missing a lot of school, we might put in some extra supports to figure out what the family needs, what the student needs, and how can we get that child back in school? Another example might be some of our students might need some support in friendship. They might be experiencing where they're not able to make friends, so they might experience a small friendship group. And we will, as I mentioned before, the beauty of this is we are able to provide these interventions in a timely manner, so we're not waiting until the student isn't coming to school or in that example of friendship group feeling so socially isolated that they become depressed or have significant issues. Another example, for a few of our students, we say typically about 3 to 5% require very intensive individualized instruction and support. And this might look like a student who requires an individualized behavior plan, and we might need to dispatch a board-certified behavior analyst or a behavior specialist out to help a school team design and implement a behavior plan. This also might look like us making additional referrals to our community members, such as counselors or therapists. So we employ this method to make sure that we are working as efficiently and effectively with all of our students to meet all of their needs at the time that they need it.
So everyone at Trish shared the the triangle and some of the services that are offered through that. And you can see that everyone at the school building is part of providing mental health support to students. So teachers and site-based administrators work on providing that safe and structured and trauma-informed school environment. Counselors help with that SOS screening. Once we move up the tiers, counselors might help with some of those skill groups. We might have some behavior analysts support behavior, behavior plans. Social social workers, safe school professionals, and mental health professionals might also help with some of the specific counseling needs that a student may have as they move into tier two or tier three. School psychologists, when the kids get into tier three, help with the evaluations for special education and also those threat assessments. And our mental health administrator helps with those students who are in tier three as well to look at connecting them with some third-party partners that offer support within our school environment and also some that help our students outside of our school environment. Our counselors and psychologists, safe school professionals, and social workers, we consider ourselves all part of a three-tiered stool, so we work really hard, our departments work really hard together to support the students' mental health needs within the school environment.
So when we hear people talk about the pandemic across the nation, when we look at our local data, whether it was a part of our Washoe County School District 2021 Strategic Plan and Budget Survey, when we listen to our students at the mental health conference or summit that they had recently, they're all talking about a concern about the support for social, emotional learning, for mental wellness, and for overall safety. That tends to be in the top three across the board as people are talking about it. These things that we all had in place, like a concern about youth suicide being the leading cause of death for 15 to 24-year-olds, and about what to do at the increased numbers of middle school students who were vaping and perceiving marijuana use as as something that was acceptable and increasing their use of that. These things were present in our data prior to the pandemic, and now that the pandemic has occurred, it has, in some cases, increased. And we're seeing an interrelationship between several things. So as our district and as our nation has prioritized mental wellness comprehensively and school safety and social, emotional learning across the nation, we are finding that we as a district need to adjust and increase some of our services and supports for students. So though there are many different enhancements that people asked for related to funding, here are some listed some examples. We, as a school district, have one mental health administrator, Dr. Betsy Sexton, for 64,000 students. My colleague, Trish Schaefer, talked about tier level three services and supports, 3 to 5% of 64,000 students who might need more intensive care and support, as well as the tier two individuals. Threat assessments, we're hearing, working with our emergency manager and others, that we all as a district need to pay more attention to that as well. Here are some compounded ideas from across our departments of things that we think is very important, integrated, co-located, mental health services and supports for kids, attention to suicide prevention intervention. Here were some examples of things that we, as a as a district and as a department, are a department under multiple departments, under Dr. Lamarcas, see as valuable things to add to what our district has in place.
Catherine and I are both going to talk a little bit about this. We have a variety, and and Ms. Schaefer pointed at some of the tier three sorts of supports that are provided. We work very closely with several county agencies. We have many partners in this work. State-level partners, Nevada Department of Education in particular, the Office of Safe and Respectful Learning, DCFS, Department of Children and Family Services, local partnerships, Human Services Agency. We have close partnership around supporting students with foster care needs, but a variety of work that we do on an ongoing basis with Human Services Agency. I think I was beginning to mention our partnership with UNR Services. That's a robust relationship that we have, and we're lucky to have that. We also partner with a variety of nonprofits, some of whom you know, Children's Cabinet. We have many things that we do with Children's Cabinet. I believe Trish or Catherine mentioned SOS, Signs of Suicide Support, that's a partnership with Children's Cabinet. Quest Counseling, they kind of have a specialty around substance abuse support. We partner with them. BECS and UNR, Dr. Sexton has some contracts with the university, which provides additional support for some of our students with the greatest mental health needs. We wanted to focus a little bit of attention around mental or substance use, so Catherine was going to talk briefly about Join Together Northern Nevada.
So often when we, as a district, move forward with something addressing substance use with our youth, we turn to our Substance Abuse Coalition, Join Together Northern Nevada, for assistance and support, whether that's compiling the best resources, looking at evidence-based prevention program, or looking at a way for us to address a problem or concern. So here is a highlight of a couple of things that Join Together Northern Nevada has helped us do. They spearheaded the Drug Endangered Children Initiative, which pulled together many of our community partners from hospitals and emergency management and law enforcement to create an infrastructure for handle with care, which originated from law enforcement who wanted to inform schools to kind of keep an extra eye on a student or to provide a trauma-sensitive and informed environment. Join Together Northern Nevada put together that partnership for us. In response to the pandemic, we needed help reaching some kids virtually related to substance use prevention, especially the Substance Abuse Intervention Program for students who had engaged in use. And they put together some materials that were web-based, and it's working really well. Our assistant principals are able to access it. The information that the students fill out for their quizzes for that psychoeducational material has been very helpful. They funded multiple substance use prevention curriculum and helped put together resources for us, and they, using a program called Mind Mounders, which used to be called Brain Power, that was developed by the National Institute on Drug Abuse, were able to go into several, seven of our elementary schools to provide model prevention programming for our students. And in a lot of ways, they build our capacity for legislation that passes long before the legislation ever passes. So that can be the way that we, as a district, interact with supporting opiates, or how we address vaping or marijuana, or a variety of things that later come up on the radar as things that we need to pay attention to. Substance use, the numbers are alarming to people, and a lot of people are often surprised when I tell them that we, as a district, have had the same number of student deaths by suicide as student deaths by overdose. And we, as a department and as a collective group, are very concerned about that and would like to do more to support our students with substance use. We also would like to do more to support our staff. With pandemic, we saw there were incidences where staff were reporting increased use of substances as a negative coping strategy, and there are things we can do related to that wellness to provide support to our students.
So that was kind of a very broad overview of sort of our continuum of services. We're going to talk for a few minutes about telehealth as a basically as a We're going to talk for a few minutes about telehealth as a, basically as a delivery mechanism. It's the use of telecommunications to deliver what otherwise you would receive in person at your doctor's office or your medical professional or health professional's office. This could be a phone call. It could be a mobile unit that pulls up in front of the school. But more and more, it's through a digital interface, sort of a Zoom call, or a Teams call, or iPad, sort of a connection that is made. Certainly, the providers who provide these services are licensed, and they only provide support that's within the scope that they're licensed to provide. These are the sorts of services that you can find. Today on NPR, there was a discussion of just an overwhelming availability of telehealth just for any of us, depending on what our insurance might provide, but urgent care visits, information for families, follow-up care and consultation, over-the-counter medications in certain circumstances, prescriptions being called through on a child's behalf, community school referrals. And then this last bullet, and we'll talk a little bit more about this. Brandy and Catherine, I think, have some examples of psychiatric and mental health support services that can be provided through a sort of a telepresence. Why? Why would we do telehealth? Well, it kind of gets back to one of the things that I believe Brandy was talking about earlier, and that is lost instruction and how damaging that could be. So there is evidence that with telehealth, kids attend school more regularly. There's also less interruption, even in the day in which they receive services. There's evidence that graduation rates over time increase as a result. So those are really the why. The why is to have less interruption of instructional time by providing the service right there at the school site. We've had a couple of past efforts around telehealth years back now. It's probably, and Dr. McNeil will probably recall some of this, it's dating back probably a decade. We had an agreement with Renown for a short period of time where they would provide a mobile unit that would show up at Wooster High School and serve families sort of in the Wooster vertical with some basic medical care needs. They would also go to O'Brien Middle School out in the North Valleys, and they would provide the same sorts of support. It just did not prove to be a sustainable model, and it's also very difficult to do at, you know, 100 schools throughout the school district. More recently, I think this was spring of 2019, there was a very brief pilot that was undertaken with a company called Hazel. They had a presence at two of our schools, Traynor Middle School and Cannon Elementary School. There was some initial feedback from staff that was very positive and from families that were served as well, but it was not a formal evaluation. There was some suggestion that attendance had increased. But that was a very small pilot during the summer of 2019 because of some significant infrastructure needs that would probably need to be invested in to move forward with the pilot. We put that on hold. Hazel would like to partner with us in the future, but if we went down this path, we would probably be looking, you know, through a regular RFP kind of a process. So I think we would like to talk to you just briefly about some less formal forms of tele, what I call less formal, forms of teletherapy that are occurring in our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Lamarcas, for the record. It's Catherine Loudon. So yes, the psychological services and counseling were very involved from the beginning with some of those past efforts through Community Health Alliance, Renown, and Hazel. And in fact, Hazel worked very collaboratively with school psychology and counseling to go over all of the materials and do things. What we noticed happened, though, as a result of the pandemic, people's comfort with telemedicine and telehealth has changed. They are actually more responsive to it. So we have in our schools, mental health professionals who are providing telehealth counseling. Natalie Sanchez is a good example, and several others. It's a way to increase the services and supports. We have a critical shortage of these individuals in our schools. There's often issues with transportation. There's issues with people accessing these important individuals who can help provide them the care that they need, families and others. If we can do this on our campus, it's very, very successful, and we see some incredible results. We've learned so much about the training, about the technology, about confidentiality, about the acceptable platforms and how they all cost. And we even saw in some of our schools, we have, I have this great example of this counselor who was out as a result of some medical reasons and couldn't work during COVID in person, but he was able to set up a screen. So every time a student walked by his office and wanted to engage with him as the school counselor, he was immediately available, and he could, the student could sit with them and work with him on the screen, and they had a lot of fun and made a lot of connections that way. So there's a considerable amount of work that we, as a district, should do to build this and support it more. One thing I want to mention about telehealth is any type of telehealth that occurs with someone that's outside of our district, we receive parent permission, active parent permission and family permission for them to engage, and we don't collect data by, at our school site levels or involved in that. We really allow that practitioner to work directly with the family and the student in that capacity when they are doing that work. And I didn't know if, Brandy, if you had anything specific that you wanted to add to this?
Just that I originally came from Oregon. We have a lot of small rural districts there, so many of them have been using telehealth for quite a while, specifically for psychology and psychiatry. What they found is it's sometimes easier for families to engage that way. Middle and high school children especially seem to like that platform and feel really comfortable with that, and they're able to see some, a lot of the same positive results that we historically think about with in-person supports.
Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you. So one thing I would, I'd like to mention as well is, by and large, with the formal telehealth services that are provided, the vendors will tell you there's no cost to the school district. By and large, they bill Medicaid directly for services and/or they work with the student and the family with their own medical insurance. We do feel, because of HIPAA concerns, FERPA concerns, and just the sharing of information that does occur, and very little information is collected, we've been consulted with our information technology services. They believe we would want to create like an infrastructure that's specially designed to support telehealth if we were to go in that direction. It's a very minimal investment for something that could have some very strong, long-term impacts. There's a little bit of administrative time, meaning it could affect nurses, clinical aides, in terms of supporting the clinic within the school. When a child shows up, they just don't walk through it, you know, there's got to be some support for that. But the costs are extremely minimal to provide this service. There would be a possibility to provide some basic medical services, which could increase attendance rates, which could increase students' access to curriculum. That's an important consideration. We think, and this is one of the few silver linings from COVID, we do think people, some people are very comfortable with accessing especially mental health support using telehealth services. That's something we would like to continue to do. This last bullet says community schools. As most of you, or I think all of you know, we do have a variety of schools where we co-, what we call co-locate services. So we have family resource centers where a family can come in and they can receive some basic case management to access certain services throughout the county. Community and schools may have set up like a little food closet, or there may be some other supplies that are available to families who need them. As Catherine mentioned, we have some agreements with Natalie Sanchez, Lorraine Benuto, a couple of other providers who have provided some of this therapy within buildings. And so the idea of a community school is get the local community, the parents within a school, to define what's needed within their community, and then try and provide those services to the extent possible within the building itself. It is a community hub. We have an interest in our families coming every day. I believe that's it. That was a lot of information. We'd be happy to try and answer questions.
Well, thank you for that, to all of you. I think it's just amazing how far this has come, and certainly with, I'm going to agree with Catherine Loudon saying that, I'm sure COVID has helped out a lot, because people had to get treatment, you had to see people, you had to get, I had doctor's appointments, you know, via Zoom and whatever platforms they were using. And so I think that really did help to raise people's comfort level. And it sounds like, just in school districts, just like other places, it gives more access, really, and allows us to serve more students and meet more needs. So it's actually pretty exciting to learn about, right, to me. Trustee Calvert?
I have a couple of questions. So how do teachers identify students that have problems? I mean, how do they identify those students?
Thank you. There's a variety of ways in which they can do it. At tier one, we use a couple of different methods where we're looking at a variety of data sets. So if they're not coming to school on time, if they suddenly begin to struggle academically, if they start to exhibit behaviors, that's a signal to us that something's going on. We also use something that we call teacher nomination, where we look at teachers who are concerned about student need or student behavior, and that's just an initial screening to go further. We also have some additional screening items that help provide some more information as intensity of need increases.
And I would just add to what Trish Schaefer said, for the record. This is Catherine Loudon. You know, a lot of times, that starts with their initial training that they have for instruction and their work, and then just conversations. So we talked about relationships. So the conversations that they have with other teachers, with their administrator, with their school counselor and school psychologist, and they are recognizing that something might not be going well for a student because they're watching them, and then they start that conversation, which then can lead to some of these other things.
And then one thing that I've kind of been hearing a little bit about is kids that cut. How do we deal with that, or how does that?
So I don't know if Brandy wants to talk about that, or I could. So through school counseling and school social work and school psychology, we engage in training around self-injury, which people often talk about cutting. And we make sure that our counselors and social workers and psychologists are able to work with families and with students around that. We also, if we hear or a student discloses about a peer who's engaged in the behavior or the behavior themselves that they're having, we will dispel a lot of myths about it. We'll work with the student and the parents. We'll connect to resources. So here are some examples of ways that you would use a mental health person in your building that would help find those resources and support and actually follow that case to make sure that the student has some support while they're at school, but then also is connected to resources.
And also, one more. What happens, I mean, we do a lot for them when they're in school, but once they're not in school, how do we service these children? I mean, they still have these issues, they still have these problems. So what resources are available to them once they leave the Washoe County School District?
Let me try and take that. I wanted to address your first question just real briefly, so I don't lose that. So Trish leads Social Emotional Learning MTSS, Catherine Counseling, Brandy School Psychology. There's the same kind of a presence in every building. Every building has an MTSS team, or what you might call a safety team. Every school sets aside time in which they discuss all of their students. Teachers have access within their own school to a variety of supports. And then, when a school determines that they're unable to meet a child's need based on what they have locally, we have a referral system through the MTSS website where they can request, they can call us and email us as well. But there's a referral site where they can receive specific support around attendance, or around behavioral hearings, or around having a behavioral technician come out and support the school. They can receive mental health supports now through that service. So we try and do everything we can to make it very efficient and very timely to get school support for their students. In terms of your second question, so we, for example, we have a process, Trish runs it, it's called District Intervention Assistance Team. It's sort of the district-level MTSS team, but on a bigger level. At that particular meeting, typically, Human Service Agency is represented, Children's Cabinet is often representative. Depending on the student and their particular situation, Juvenile Services might be there. Often, we will find children who are maybe expressing some things in school that cause some concern, and then when we dig deeper, we realize there are broader issues. So we can use that DIAP process, or in one of the schools, for example, that has a family resource center, we can try and connect families to resources that we don't have within the school district. And so that oftentimes becomes a process of providing to the school a set of possible resources for students and families. The school will work with the student and the family that we hopefully will follow up to make sure that the child is accessing those resources. So we do the best we can in supporting them and case-managing them out in the community. But your question, I think, is a very valuable question. This is why these partnerships that we have are critical. These are all of our kids. They're Washoe County kids. They're not just Washoe County School District kids.
And one more. So I was talking to a lady yesterday, and she was saying, I'm not going to put her business out there, but she was talking about how she works with kids that are at West Hills. So how do, if they decide they want to come to the Washoe County School District, are they able to do that, or how does that work?
Now, if a child is at West Hills, there's probably a good chance they've already been within our school district, but that's not necessarily the case. But let's say a child is in foster care, and for a period of time, they've been receiving support in a facility in Texas. Or let's say there's a child that has a significant set of needs, and they've been receiving services in Fernley, but state DCFS has determined that that environment is no longer a safe environment, and they place them in the Washoe County School District. We try and transition all those students into the best available school for them, typically their zone school. Brandy and Rochelle Maria, who's not here tonight, they kind of take that on and try to facilitate that transition. But absolutely, any child who is being served at West Hills can be served by our schools, and we will welcome them, and we'll try and provide them all the supports we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Calvert. Superintendent McNeil?
I was just going to, really quick, Catherine, would you mind talking a little bit about Safe Voice and the protections that Safe Voice takes? Because I think that's important to Trustee Calvert's questions as far as when a child leaves here at the end of the day, what Safe Voice is available to do.
Yes, absolutely. So you may have heard or seen posters in the schools, or people talking about it on the news. Safe Voice Nevada provides a confidential way for students to communicate and file a tip or express a concern about something that they're having, and often will have self-injury, or students who are feeling suicidal. They will engage with Safe Voice. They'll file a report. The reports go to the Department of Public Safety. They go to a core team in our office of school counselors and social workers, and then they go to the site team. But the student is able to engage in an immediate dialogue. It doesn't matter if it's 3 o'clock in the morning and they need immediate assistance or support, it's a direct contact to someone so that they can have that. We then partner with our Department of Child and Family Services Mobile Crisis Unit and the Nevada Department of Education, who also design this infrastructure and support. Through Safe Voice, we also hear about things like if there's been bullying or cyberbullying, or there's been threats, or there's been something else going on in a or there's been threats or there's been something else going on and a student just has an app on their phone, that they can pull up their phone and make a contact or they have a phone number or they can engage through the website, either our website or the other website. And I have heard counselors work with our students because we teach about Safe Voice, what to do if they don't have a device so that they can report and ways that they can connect with others that way. But it's definitely a direct line to the individuals in the school and to helpers that are out there. And it's something that's mandated in the state of Nevada and something that we use often in addition to Crisis Support Services of Nevada.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Trustee Digpen, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, great. I just want to thank you all for the presentation. This is something that's, you know, really been very moving for me to hear, the amount of resources and work that's being done to help our students and try to, you know, cut down on substance abuse and our suicide rates. And, you know, having, at a personal level, experienced the loss of someone to suicide more than once and someone who's dealt with depression and anxiety my entire life, I understand the value that this has and that can help save the lives of our students and hopefully help to, you know, create some hopefulness so that we're teaching them now at a young age to avoid substance abuse, to seek help when they need it, and that it does get better, there is help out there for them. So I commend you for that work. On the telehealth aspect, I am a big believer in that. When I worked at Renown for a number of years, I was helpful in that project and kind of scaling it up. And I see benefits to that, especially to our rural schools that may not have access to, you know, a person in their school to seek help. So I think that is well worth visiting and really am hopeful that an RFP gets out there at some point to kind of help us with that. And I like that there is the parental consent aspect of that so that parents have to opt into it and that, you know, we don't collect anyone's data, as I know that's a concern. So excited to see where that ends up going in the future. And I just want to thank you all for the work that you do. It takes a big heart and a lot of work and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Trustee Digpen. I too, just as I said, I'm excited in the growth in this and look forward to more of what we've been able to kind of pilot before we kind of knew that how big of a thing it was going to get. But it looks like those preliminary results certainly were positive and look forward to an RFP getting out there and working forward to, I mean, working with partners like Hazel or others, however that ends up. But just to be able to provide that support for students that need it is just really, really good to hear. So thank you all. I know that's what you do each and every day. Dr. Nicolet, I see your lights on.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Wonderful information. And there was an alarming, there was alarming number that you said, and I want to, I'd like a little more information so I understand it. One in six students have mental health concerns. So that's 10,000 of our 60,000 students. Can you help me understand when you say mental health concerns? I think most of us are aware of the big things that worry us a lot and why we have Tier Three. What are the everyday kinds of things that our students are experiencing?
Anxiety is really the number one mental health concern that students are dealing with right now. So just having a diagnosable anxiety disorder or depression, those are really the most common things that we're seeing with students at this time.
And then when you get to that point, and it's a team effort, totally understand that, when does the parent become involved?
You know, oftentimes the parents are involved from the very beginning. They want help for their student. So sometimes they're accessing outside help before, at the same time, we're providing them the student support within the school environment. Sometimes the parents are struggling to get their child outside help. So that's where, you know, our counselors, our psychologists, our family resource centers, our mental health administrator is really key in helping connect our families with outside providers that take their insurance or whatever insurance they have and can support their child.
And if I may just build on that, I'm sorry, Dr. Nicolet. I explained the MTSS process is the same for academics as it is for social, emotional, behavioral support. And we require parent notification and permission at the Tier Two and the Tier Three level. So parents are very active and they can refuse for their students to receive additional support. So it does require parent notification and parent active consent.
Thank you. That was a great, I'm sure we could go all into the evening with the tidbits that make all this come together. So I will add that I think the telehealth is, I think, a strategy that I look forward to us continuing to develop because I think it could, when I start thinking about parents, whatever the dynamics are in a family, I think that can really help the family, the students, the students' friends, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Trustee Calvert?
Just one more. Do eating disorders play into this at all? And if so, how?
So yes, we actually spend some time training our staff, counselors and social workers and psychologists relating to disordered eating. And we provide them with some of the resources. And so piggybacking on a lot of the things that people were talking about related to mental health and mental wellness, when we notice that a student is having a difficult time and is interrupting a function that they may have or an ability for them to engage in activities that would be regular activities for a student or something that would be healthy for themselves and their bodies, we want to raise awareness about that and provide some support. There are often students who aren't aware of disordered eating or what's defined as disordered eating until they get to high school, when they suddenly find out in health class what disordered eating is. So we try to, in collaboration with social workers and psychologists and actually school nurses, raise some awareness around that, pointing to the different types of disordered eating, pointing to ways that they can receive support. We have partners like Reno Behavioral Health, you mentioned West Hills, several others who often come to our meetings and try to make sure that we are up to date on what we need to know about these things, including the websites and national resources and initiatives that can help with us.
Did I take her that, Trustee Calvert? Okay. Well, this is, you said a brief, it wasn't that brief, but that's okay. It was very informative and really, really, really important to see the kind of support just going to our students. People were asking earlier on the agenda about social workers that we need in school. We have students and families that need support. And if they don't get the support, then they can't do the academic work. They can't, you know, achieve, they can't study, they can't learn, they can't provide support for their, it's just a part of our being able to do what we do. So I certainly, just as one trustee, and I certainly see some nods, I see the connection between the academic function, the mission of what we do and the support piece, MTSS and all those things that make up the multi-tier systems of support. So that's my piece, and I think the superintendent's going to add to that.
Yeah, well, I couldn't have said it any better. I think the academic part of this and this team knows how mental health, we have got to get better as a community to take the stigma off of receiving mental health supports. That is just so critically important for not only our students but our staff as well that it's okay. We exercise our bodies, we take care of what we put inside as far as food and substance. And so we need to do the same thing for our mental health and make sure that we're taking care of each other around that. So just again, thank you so much, very, very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you so much. We will take our dinner break now, but I will remind our trustees while we're on break, we have gotten some public comment that's come in while we've been in our meeting. Now, we've had one break to be able to look at, and I have my iPad here and I'm reading stuff as we go. And we'll encourage others of you to do the same so that we're making sure that we have those public comments in our minds and they'll be a part of the official record when they are listed. Okay, it is just about 6 o'clock. Let's call it 6:00. Let's go 6:20. 6:20, 6:20, 6:20? Okay, we'll be right back here after dinner break. Thank you, everybody.
6:20.
6:20. I don't see anybody, so we're good to go. And also, we just want to, Trustee Church has had to, he's left, he told us all he had rodeo tickets, so he won't be here for the rest of the meeting, so there's six of us. And for a quorum, excuse me, we still need four, just for the record, okay? Did I get that right, Council?
Yes, and four to pass any items.
Yes, yes, four, that's what I meant, not for a quorum, but to pass any items, we still need four, even though we're down to six. All right. So with Agenda Item 5.03 being pulled, with no updates and seeing no dissension to that, we're going to go ahead to Agenda Item 5.04. Discussion of Possible Action to Affirm the Recommendation. This is some good news, you guys, of the Group Insurance Committee for a group health insurance rate increase of 0%. 0% for Plan Year 2022 and a benefit change to move prevention dental services outside of the calendar year maximum for $100,000 costs to the health insurance plan. So this is for possible action. Before us, I see a Chief Human Resources Officer.
Can I say so?
Ms. Ellison. No, I think it's appropriate, Clerk Minnetal, that we actually hear the presentation before we make a motion. I mean, call me a stickler, but I think we might want to hear the Agenda Item first. All right. Thank you very much. Now, we will turn it over to Minnetal. We've gotten staff in the building. Thank you for your patience. We'll go ahead, not in the building, in the room. They've been in the building. Thank you for your patience. Now, I'll turn this over to Ms. Ellison and Ms. James.
All right. Thank you, President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, members of the board. I'm Emily Ellison, Chief Human Resources Officer, and I am going to turn it over to Jackie because this is her last board meeting before she retires. And we have great news, so.
And why she said that.
Boo.
Just focus on the great news. I apologize for being late. Jackie James, Risk Manager. Last time I would get to say that. I do have good news. In January 2020, the district went with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield and their provider network for our healthcare coverage. And also in 2020, as everyone knows, the pandemic kid. So as a result, we saw a drastic decrease in our expenses. And so as a result of that, for this year, we had a 0% rate increase for our members. Looking at the recent claims experience, we have seen an uptick. We do have members who are now accessing care that they didn't during the pandemic and the shutdown. And so because of that, we're having members who are going to their doctors and their dentist and receiving elective procedures that they might have put off. And as you can imagine, there's a concern, a national concern, that healthcare costs are going to go up significantly in the coming months to cover lost revenue that happened during the pandemic. So, and also, members who put off care and didn't have, received early diagnosis and interventions. And so there's some significant costs that could happen there. So it'll be even more important going forward for our members to be smart healthcare consumers and how they access care is going to have an effect in future rates. But the good news is that the Insurance Committee met in May and they received a rate projection for 2022, and that is looking for a 0% rate increase for our members. So that is very good news. The Insurance Committee also wanted to look at benefits that they could bolster for our members and that would have little to no impact on the plan. And one of those areas was our dental coverage. And so our dental coverage has a $2,000, sorry, I ran, has a $2,000 calendar year maximum and that has been placed for many years. And so our preventative services go towards that $2,000 calendar year max. So the Insurance Committee is recommending that we move the preventative services outside of the calendar year max. So what that would mean is if you went in for a teeth cleaning and the plan paid $200 for the teeth cleaning, currently, that $200 that the plan pays comes off of that $2,000 and it leaves the member with $1,800. So moving it outside of that, it would not come off of that $2,000 and would leave the member with a full $2,000 to apply towards other services. It would bolster the benefit for the members and give them greater coverage. And so that change would have approximately $100,000 per year impact to the plan and it's felt that the plan could absorb that. So therefore, it's the recommendation of the Insurance Committee for the Board of Trustees to approve a 0% rate increase for 2022 and also to move the preventive services outside of the calendar year max.
Fantastic. Thank you, Ms. James. I see JJ waving her cards. We'll take the public comment on that first, before we go further, I should say.
Pablo Nava Duran.
I'm on Schofield Gatto.
Okay. Oh, okay, Bill, okay, got you. Thank you, Mr. Duran. We'll come back to you. Thank you, sir. Any, so no public comment on this item? Okay, so thank you, Ms. James. Fantastic job, way to go out with a bang, especially based upon projections, as you shared, I think we've all, everybody pulled back last year with COVID and things. I mean, I'm walking around in the boot now and that's a surgery that was supposed to happen, really, about a year ago, actually. So even in the midst of that, to not have an increase, you know, knowing that the usage we expect to go up, and we want people to get taken care of and take care of themselves, so we want that. And then that's just a bonus on preventative care. Hopefully, what that will do is encourage people to do the preventative care, you know, all the more so, which is better for them and then helps to prevent bigger items, bigger issues down the road. So thank you very much, Dr. Nicolet. I see your light, you're pointing, I see it.
Just trying to understand here, so $100,000 buys us moving the calendar date. Is there any, is there any down-the-road impact?
It's not moving the calendar date, it's moving the preventative services outside of the calendar year max. So right now, a member could get three cleanings per year. And again, I'm just, I'm just using the number $200 just to make it even or an easy number. But if each of those cleanings cost the plan $200 and they got three cleanings, that $600 that comes off of the $2,000, it's only leaving the member $1,400 for any other services that they might need throughout the year. Crowns are, can easily be a couple of thousand dollars. So that wouldn't even cover a crown for a member. So what we're seeing is a lot of members are foregoing their cleanings so that they can keep the full $2,000 in case something happens. Well, then if they're not getting the preventative with their cleanings, then bigger things happen. And so it ends up costing the member more. So by moving it outside of the calendar year max, it's just giving the member a little bit, they can get their three cleanings a year, which we want them to do, and then they still have $2,000 if they should need it.
Thank you.
Yes.
May I clarify that for you, Dr. Nicolet? Okay. All right, seeing no other questions or comments on this, just thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm excited for you to retire, but we're certainly going to, we're certainly going to miss you. You have set a high bar.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'm gonna miss everyone.
Yeah, and the work that you've done, you've set a high bar. If it is the pleasure of, of, um, Vice President Calo, I'm looking for a motion.
All right, I'm on it. I move the Board of Trustees affirms the recommendation of the Group Insurance Committee for a help, for a group health insurance rate increase of zero percent for the plan year 2022 and approves the movement of preventative dental services outside of the calendar year maximum.
There's a motion on the floor from Vice President Calo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr.
Diane Nicolet. I like cleanings, so I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Let's have that on the record, Dr. Nicolet likes cleanings. All right, there is a second. I see no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposition? All right, the motion carries. Let the record show a six zip, six zip, six zip.
Before we conclude this item, if I may, Dr. Taylor.
Please.
I'd like to say a few words to Jackie for her retirement. I got tissues right there. Uh, this, this is more than just a celebration of no increases. This is, this is a celebration of Jackie and her commitment to this district and to the Risk Management Department for the last 30 years.
Oh, my. Oh, awesome.
I, I was recently interviewing to fill the very big shoes that she will leave, and there was a principal on the committee, and we were talking about the job, and he said, "It never ceased to amaze me as a principal how many things I had to call Jackie for." PTA wants to put on a fireworks show, call Jackie.
Fireworks show, well, please do.
Parents wants to take kids on a safari, call Jackie. Fire in the science lab, health insurance question, disability claim, school flooded, need a piece of playground equipment inspected, call Jackie.
Wow.
Let's be honest, she knows a thing or two because she's seen a thing or two. Jackie cares immensely about this district and our employees and our students and me. I feel so supported by her, and I don't think risk management will ever be the same without her. We're gonna miss her terribly, but we are so excited for this next chapter for you and for you to be able to spend time with your grandbabies. And be sure we will be calling you because a lot of institutional knowledge to be retiring. So, we love you, Jackie James. Kristen, did you want to say anything?
Well, Jackie is a consummate professional, and she's been here, um, she truly is, she is all about the school district. Um, her kids have, have gone through the school district. Um, she's a, she's a lifelong learner. Jackie is always, always ready at the bat to say, "What else can I do? What else can I learn about?" Um, but just thank you so very, very much, Jackie, for all of your professionalism, your love and your dedication, uh, to the students, the employees, and everybody of the Washoe County School District. Thank you.
Jackie, would you like to say anything?
I just want to thank everyone.
Let's get you in the mic. You're not going, you aren't going yet. Oh, yeah, hold on, there we go.
I just want to thank everyone. This has been one of the most difficult decisions for me to make, and I have cried many a time with Emily and told her how hard this is. Um, it, it does give me an opportunity to help out my family, and so I'm, I'm forever blessed, but I love everyone here. I love my risk management staff. They are the greatest group of people, and they work so hard for this district. So, um, I'm very proud of what they're doing and the work they're doing, and I am always here to help if anyone ever needs it. So, um, I can volunteer, I'm just saying.
Can you drive a bus?
Yeah.
Right, right.
I haven't did that.
Well, we sure appreciate just all the, I mean, I know in my time on the board and just the scene you come and present and share information and doing some, some difficult insurance things, really just following through, hearing from the public, hearing from the teachers especially, on those things, just being professional and thorough and very communicative. It's certainly helped me as a board member and just, just allowed me to just grow to really appreciate, um, what you do in risk management, so. I think for all of us, uh, we, we wish you the best. Go enjoy your grandbabies.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jackie, and then thank you for, uh, no increases to the insurance committee and then, uh, this great, uh, benefits change, so people, we can have preventative care. Really, really important. Fantastic. All right, love that. All right, we're gonna go on to agenda item 5.05. This is, um, discussion and possible action to provide direction to the superintendent about the process to engage stakeholders, um, possible changes to school start times, school start times for the 2022, 2023 year. This is for action, and clearly, we're beyond four o'clock. I just want to say a couple of things. One is, this, uh, is not, this, whatever, first, whatever decision is made ultimately, it isn't, it, it isn't until the 2022, 23 school year. So this is not for anything happening in the fall, but, but even more important than that is, this is not making a decision on bell schedules. This is, uh, really a presentation. I mean, we'll have some information about, 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 um, some, 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 uh, to give us some options, some of those things that's going out, but this is really about the process to engage stakeholders. So this is not time, so just for the public and for us, no, this is not decision time. This is really, our motion is about what's going out to the stakeholders and how do we engage them in this process, because it's such a big decision, we certainly want to make sure stakeholders are involved in it, so. Just with those two pieces of clarification, I'm gonna turn it over. Who's first? I don't see anybody's red light. Okay, Ms. Anderson, we're turning it over to you.
I didn't want to interrupt you. So, good evening, President Taylor, trustees, Dr. McNeil, Michelle Anderson, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer for the record, and with me today is?
Troy Parks, Chief Academic Officer.
Troy Parks, Chief Academic Officer.
Pete Etchar, Chief Operating Officer.
Um, and this evening, we're bringing back information related to the school start time options for the school year 2022, 2023. We're gonna, like I said, do kind of a brief overview, and then, uh, Mr. Etchar will be explaining kind of where we are today. Next slide. And the study, um, as many of you know who sat on the board, uh, was completed in 2019, so there are a few important updates to consider when you hear it. Um, costs have been updated, there's been growth in the community, meaning more schools and more subdivision, um, subdivisions, and then the labor market has changed, um, as we all know. Um, and Mr. Etchar will elaborate on those in just a bit, so that way you guys have kind of the full picture, um, as you're hearing the presentation. So just as a reminder, um, just a quick recap, on December 10th, 2019, um, at the request of the board, trustees reviewed research and information on school start times as it related to our current bell schedules, and they requested additional information and possible options regarding future bell times, uh, that are for, uh, later time for our middle and high school students. Then on June 9th, a year ago, uh, the Board of Trustees provided direction to move forward with the draft school start time options for possible later start times for most students and propose the stake, and, um, and the proposed stakeholder engagement process, again, for the 22, 23 school year. And, uh, the focus really, the, the committee, which we'll, uh, talk about in just a little bit, their focus was really on health and wellness. These were the reasons why a potential change to the start times was even brought forward. Um, you'll notice, um, on the screen, uh, all of these are tied to research that was previously done, and in the parentheses, you'll see a number that will correspond to the reference, which is at the end of the slide, slide deck, so that you guys can do a quick reference, uh, to make it easy to follow.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, yes, this has been a popular topic in our district for a long time. Uh, I won't go back to all the many opportunities we had to talk about scheduling, uh, different start times and bell schedules, but I was part of the steering committee, uh, as were many different, uh, volunteers from the Budget Department, Office of Accountability, uh, OSL, our school police. And our big focus at that time was to look at options, uh, as we looked at the research. We wanted to bring forward options that might be feasible for us to look at, and we were going to bring those to the Board of Trustees. Of course, we looked at costs at that time, which, uh, Michelle has mentioned, those have changed. Obviously, we're always going to get a lot of stakeholder input. Uh, I anticipate we'll be doing a lot of that in the next school year. And then, uh, as Dr. Taylor mentioned, we're talking about a 22, 23 implementation possibly. So the options that we're going to go through, you'll see the start times have changed from our current model. Uh, in general, our current model has our earliest start for our middle schoolers, uh, and then our high schoolers usually start around eight, and then our, our normal time for our elementaries right now is somewhere between nine and 9:30 for the most part. There are costs associated, uh, with any change in our school start times. Uh, those costs are directly related to new bus drivers, which I'm sure Mr. Etchar's gonna remind us that we have a serious shortage of, uh, bus drivers. So here, we just wanted to give you an opportunity to look at the different options, and Pete's gonna be talking about the specific challenges with each of these, um, but wanted to give you an opportunity to kind of get, get a quick look. Quick point to make here is where you see two elementary start times, those tend to be a, a little less expensive because you're spreading out, uh, the elementary start times and a little bit more efficient. Uh, and then when you see the elementary, middle and high school start times that there's only one, uh, those tend to cost more because we're transporting all schools at the same time. And here are two options, E and F, and Pete is gonna go into more details about these options. So, as we embark on this, again, uh, it's important to realize that there are a lot of impacts, uh, to our community when we change school start times. These are some here on this slide. Obviously, at the high school level, we have many activities that are after school, some before school, uh, athletics, clubs, uh, those are going to be impacted. We have, uh, great community partnerships, uh, many of them provide after-school care and after-school programs. Uh, we'll be needing to communicate and work with them, uh, making sure that, uh, our new schedules will work with, with theirs. Uh, many of our schools, and here you have, uh, McQueen, Hug and Reed, and Reno mentioned, uh, have different start times than would be the norm. Uh, we also see that at the elementary level where some of our schools are walk zone only, so they've petitioned to have their own start times. And then, of course, uh, we know from reality that many of our middle schooler and high schoolers, it has been convenient for families to have them at home when the elementary students get at home, and then they don't have to pay for that after-school childcare. Another one we really, uh, has kind of popped up even more so during COVID, is the idea that, uh, many of our high schoolers are taking on part-time jobs and working in the afternoons, uh, so if we move those start times, uh, will be affecting the families and the local businesses. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Pete.
Thank you, Pete Etchar, Chief Operating Officer. So this study was not focused, or really even about providing greater efficiency in transportation, it was about sleep patterns, and as, as Michelle said, about student health and wellness. So as Dr. Parks said, the current bell times very generally are middle school at 7:30, high school at 8:00 AM, and elementary schools at 9:00 and 9:30, with elementary school being a six-hour day, middle school and high school roughly six and a half, and there's exceptions to every one of those things I just said, but that is generally the hours we have. So the goal of this committee was to not have any school start time, uh, at 7:30 and potentially move the elementary schools earlier and the secondary later. That was one of the goals I know this committee was trying to achieve. So I'm gonna kind of talk about what these options are, because I think there's, there's some things to take away from this, and maybe some options that you may want to, uh, consider. So option A, just simply slides the current schedule back a half an hour. So high school would be then out at about 3:00, and elementaries could be out as late as about 4:00 PM, but it is cost neutral for transportation. I mean, there's obviously impacts for that, having elementary school out at 4:00, is, you know, later in the day, and even our transportation staff could start facing traffic, you know, you know, higher volumes, but it basically just slides everything back half an hour. Options B through F, move the start times around and also condenses start times. These have a big impact financially and probably more importantly right now on required additional drivers. And why you may ask is that, it's because there's mainly due to two factors, since the bulk of student transportation is in elementary school students. So if you look at, so the first factor is this, if you look at options B, E, and F, they have one start time for elementary schools. So we, again, currently, we have two. So condensing all of this, the elementary schools into one time adds more routes. Now, that could be avoided if you started before our elementary schools at 7:30 and 8:00, for instance, in options E and F, these options could become cost neutral and driver neutral. But when you condense them together like that, it takes a lot more drivers and a lot more routes to do one start time for elementary school. Now, the second factor is, if you look at options C and D, you only have a half an hour between the elementary school start time and the secondary school start times. Right now, we have one hour, and this, again, adds significantly more routes and drivers. So if you move the, again, if you move the elementary school start time to 7:30 and 8:00 AM, for instance, in C and D, and, or move the secondary later to give that one hour separation between elementary and secondary, these options, again, could become cost neutral, as close to cost neutral as we could. Even having a 45-minute separation between elementary and secondary could reduce our driver need and the cost that you're seeing on these slides in half. So it's really critical, that separation, because drivers don't just drive an elementary school route and leave. They, they drive elementary school, then they go pick up a middle school or high school, and they, they have multiple routes or runs during that route. So it's really important to look at that. So when you see these huge numbers, and we all know, I mean, right now, we're down 30 drivers right now, just to have the level of service we had last year. So look at this, and even though it's a year away, and who knows what the world will be in a year from now, and what the labor market will be, it's obviously pretty impractical to think that we're gonna find another 30 drivers on top of that. But I do want to kind of at least give you what those options are, because I think this committee worked under an assumption, we don't want to have anything before 8:00, and I understand that, and we don't want to have anything going too late, but it definitely has a huge impact just on the transportation side. If you could hit the next slide really fast.
May I, just before you go on?
Absolutely.
Just, um, if you can go back, go back one. Yes, thank you. So I, I heard what you were saying in that if, um, that, if that time between, I'm looking at C and D for an example. If that time between elementary school and middle school or high school, if, again, they may flip-flop, right, and it'll be the same, if that time is increased to 45 minutes or an hour, in, um, it, that, it could be close to cost neutral.
For an hour would be cost neutral, 45 minutes would probably be about half of what you're seeing there, so it could still be 16 drivers and half, or three quarters of a million.
Okay, so that means it would have to, I mean, it'd have to go back significantly, then.
It has to be an hour separation, so you would need a half an hour to back those times up for elementary school, back half an hour, so for C and D, be 7:30 and 8:00.
Right, it would be 7:30 and 8:00, or the middle school, high school would have to go up in later, which is.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that, but that hour is what, is that quote-unquote sweet spot if, right, um, to allow, to not have the financial impact, but still, okay, I get it, thank you. Just wanted to clarity, thank you.
So this next slide, and I'll, I'll go quick on this. So it's just kind of where that, that annual operating cost number come from. Well, it's from all these things. I just talked about routes and drivers. Every time you add a route, add a driver, it's, the driver's about $30,000, $39,000 a year with benefits. It takes additional fuel and maintenance, about $10,000 per bus per year for fuel and maintenance. Roughly, it's about even, $4,800 for fuel and $5,100 for maintenance, so about $10,000 a year for every bus. Now, those costs that you're seeing do not include new buses. Right now, transportation is receiving about 18 new buses a year through our, our current funding source. So if we were to add more routes, I've talked to our, our Transportation Director, Scott Lee, and he's saying, you know, we would look at everything we could do to squeeze another year of life out of the buses we have, so I really couldn't say until we get there, if we were to add more routes, if we had the drivers to do so, how many new buses we would need. Right now, the Transportation Department tries to replace buses, uh, after 15 years of service. Now, we're not quite there, but that is the goal that we have, and so we're working toward that goal. So those are the costs that go involved with this. And with that, unless there's any other questions on the routing, I will turn this back over to Ms. Anderson.
I'm sorry, do I have one more question? What are our typical start times now? I saw, I'm trying to go back on the slide and see it. Okay, there it is. All current, I see the current options and the high school options, and then I see there are a few schools that do that a little differently, right? Reed and Reno and Hug and the Queen.
Our current ones, if you take A and just back everything up half an hour, that's our current times roughly.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, and as we know, anytime you're going to potentially change something, you absolutely need input from your community, and you absolutely need input from your employees and your community partners. So moving forward, if we were to be doing that engagement, we would do a comprehensive engagement campaign. We'd obviously start out with a website where we would have, why is the adjustment? Answer those frequently asked questions. Have people be able to see that overview of it. Give that medical perspective, have the relevant research that goes with it. And then, of course, provide a survey that everybody would be able to participate in. The other addition that we'd want to do is obviously town halls, both virtual and in-person. I think we've learned with COVID, sometimes it is not feasible for people to come in person, so let's make it to where people can engage in the process. And so having those virtual and in-person town halls and cover everybody in the Washoe County School District boundaries, because every voice matters in our district. Again, engaging with those employee groups. And then, as we saw in those previous slides, we have community partners, Boys and Girls Club, and those before and after-school programs, and make sure we're getting input and communicating with them as well. And so what does that look like? So we would be putting on the webpage, we see, we have seen across the country, and I think we take some lessons learned. There are school districts across the country that have done a fantastic job, and there are school districts across the country that have not done as great of a job, and you see them, you know, in the news media and angry parents that have been surprised, say, by the bus schedule because, or the start time schedule. So we want to make sure we're doing best practice. So having that information on the district's website, we would do that in August of 2021. Sending out that staff and family survey in September. The last thing we want to do is confuse, you know, speaking with Dr. McNeil, we don't want to confuse our families. It's not happening this school year. So let's do it after the school year begins and start that in September so that they know it's for the following school year or potentially for the next school year. Having those virtual and in-person town halls in September as well, again, including our families, our employees, our community partners. And then bringing it back to the board at the two different meetings in October. So for the October 12th, bringing back those survey results, bringing back the information that we received from the town halls, and then a final decision in October, should you choose to move forward. And that concludes our overview and presentation.
Okay, okay, comments, I asked some comments, we do have public comment. We'll start, oh, that's right, Mr. Duran, I believe.
Pablo Nava Duran. The board also received an email from Rebecca Paris.
Thank you, Mr. Duran, you have three minutes, sir.
All right, so I'd like to say this is my last public comment for today, so before I'm going to leave. So I want to say that I'd like the Gacho, like, to say, I know that you're a helpful concern about the student, the tardiness, and graduation, you want to increase graduation, increase the student wellness, all kind of stuff. So I do support moving from a major school from 9:30, 9:30 or 9-ish to 8 o'clock for single, for 8 o'clock class. So that make it better because my sister went to my Rosa Academy, Star Eight. So very likable, so I think that will helpful for a major school student to get more engaged. 8 o'clock instead of 9:30 or 9:00-ish. And to make a, to make a major school a single, a single time instead of double times, make more likable. And I do like the current, I like to, current Washoe County School District, like, I think the problem is a high school had to miss the class to go and play for athletic events. And I think that middle school, high school should be switched. Like, high school should start at 7:30 and then middle school should start at 8:00. So that will, more like this, less like it, students will miss the class. And I do like option, I like A, I do like option B, A, B, E, F. I don't like C and D, that costs a lot of money for a test creator. And it did not make sense for the Gacho. So I do know the middle school, I do know the middle school should start no later, no earlier than 8:00. So I'm going to have to say, I do make sense to, like, maybe start a major school, like, start a Gacho 2024, 2025, 2025 school year instead of 2022, 2023 school year because my sister could be a high school freshman for that year. And I do support, and E and F were more options, like it to me, the best possible for me, for the student well-being. So moving students later than 8:00, that make the high school student have, student happy miss the class for play sports, especially for the 3A team, so.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Just ask the board to just direct your attention to the public comment that came in. If you haven't had a chance to read it, please make sure that you do so. Vice President Cottle?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for the presentation. This is, this is going to be a challenging decision because I do remember the discussions that we had a couple of years ago, and a lot of it centered around what's best for the students' body clocks. And it makes sense in the body clock, elementary to go earlier and secondary to go later. But elementary getting out earlier is going to cause family issues. So the school district and community partners are going to have to be ready to fill that gap. Secondary going later is going to prevent challenges for activities, athletics, and obviously, we talked about students that have part-time jobs. So to get this right, it's going to be very important that, as we talked about outreach, but it has to be really deep outreach. And so what I would recommend, and I know it'd be a lift, but I would recommend is all of the schools that have PTOs, PTAs, connecting with them on what they think for their school community is the best way for outreach. An in-person town hall, virtual town hall, only a survey. For those schools that don't have those organizations, reaching out directly to families of that individual school, how would you like to receive this information? And then you can take regional schools and combine them. So we have these three elementary schools in the North Valleys all want, all believe of virtual events better. Put those three together. So you can have a deeper conversation with parents so that it can be more individual. You'll get better feedback than just trying to, we're going to do three town halls for the whole district, and we might get 10% of the families take part. Because this is such, can be such a divisive issue when it comes, and there's so many moving parts, plus you have all the budgeting issues and labor issues. The last thing the district's going to want is its decision time, and the board is sitting here going, I don't know if we have enough information to make a decision. And then we're kicking that can down the road, and it's like that never-ever-ending conversation that you never actually solve. So what that looks like is a challenge with this timeframe because you would basically have a month to outreach for every school in our district, which is hard. But I do think it would be necessary. So I'll go ahead and kick it off with that, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Cottle. Other comments, Dr. Nicollet?
I was not part of the Board of Trustees when this conversation began, so I don't have a lot of history as to why, would be my big question. I mean, really, what are the two big variables that could help me feel good about spending more money and then sustaining that? And my worry, especially about our high schools and after-school jobs. And I totally agree with our, with our public, Pablo, that just seeing students missing class to do any kind of activity is just never acceptable. And so I guess I wonder, why are we treading in this water?
Dr. McNeil can add to this as well. We were given direction from previous board to look at the options, and the basic premise behind it was the student health and wellness. While the research out there is not extremely conclusive, there is a lot of research that substantiates, especially our high schoolers tend to be up late and sleep late. And you might have heard a circadian rhythm and that the bell schedules being moved later for them. Many districts across the nation have went under certain similar school schedule, start time changes. And there is some research that they ended up with better results, higher graduation rates, happier students. Being a parent of a junior in high school, I can tell you, my anecdotal research says that's true, that they tend to try to stay up till midnight regardless, and then don't want to be up at 7:00 to get to your 7:30 classes. So, but it has been, as Vice President Cottle mentioned, one of those initiatives that we've tended to look at and then not come to a conclusion because I've served on this committee before. And there are many challenges with the community.
You want to say, I'm wondering, do you respond to Dr. Nicollet? Or let me respond, if I may, Dr. Nicollet. If you look at the fifth slide, that was part of the conversation when they came back with the research. It was a question of, you know, two trustees get something on the agenda, hey, let's look at this. Not let's do something, but let's look at this. So the first round that came back to us was, this is what the research is showing us. I believe Dr. Lamarcas made that research, did that presentation, and this is what we found. And as a result of that, we said, okay, let's go to the next step, then let's get some parental feedback, some input from teachers and the community, and that's the outreach piece of it. So the reason it's being looked at is because of what the research shows as a benefit to students, through their health and wellness. But what we end up doing is totally up to us.
May I reframe that, maybe totally up to the community, the parents?
Well, I mean, it's up to, it's, we, but we, they don't get to vote. We vote, though we want to get their feedback, which is what this is about, is let's hear from them. And what they say about it, and so on, the notes really, as a board, we got to decide, right? And hopefully, that should absolutely be a big part of it. That's why this piece is important because it's how do we get that input and allow them to weigh in and talk about what this, what their view is, what their impact is, whatever their anecdotal experience is, as Dr. Parks. And of course, that makes a difference to us, us trustees, so. Vice President Cottle?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm curious on what, if any, feedback we've received from staff. I do remember when we had this discussion, it was almost referred to, like, with principals, it was us grabbing the third rail because they kind of had more freedom and start times of their schools within the scope of the district. And now this is the board and the district saying, you will start at this time, that's it. And there was some nervousness back then that there could be some angst in the district about us making that decision. So I'm curious on if we've had any feedback from principals and even other school-based staff, or is that also a part of the next step?
So I would venture to say I don't think we have any recent feedback. I can tell you from a principal perspective, yes, they're very focused on creating the best circumstances for their constituents at their school, which is their families. So we do see some of our principals advocate for changes to start times because they decide that a new schedule, maybe a block scheduling is going to serve their students better. And then they would go to their area superintendent and take it through transportation. And if it all worked out in the past, which Mr. Martin was always very accommodating, if they could accommodate, we have made what I would call mild schedule changes so that not every school is like our proposal, right at the exact same times. And that was a whole true for elementaries as well at times. If they have very few buses serving them, we have much greater flexibility around their start times because we're, we might only be dependent on, like, one bus. But I think in general, principals are always going to err and focus on their specific school and their needs. And I would expect we would get some, you know, how far are we reaching to change the start times?
Thank you. I just have two quick follow-ups on some things you said. One, we do have core schools that don't have buses that are serving them because the school zone is all the walk zone. So how much flexibility do they have in this? And number two, in your slide, it was, number three, you have four high schools listed, McQueen, Hug, Reed, and Reno, that are currently on a different schedule because they went through the process to get approval, and it was negotiated with WEA. Is that flexibility still going to be there for those schools and other schools that possibly want to do something like that? Or would this decision essentially end those exceptions? Thank you.
So I'll go out on the thin limbs and say, the future is very uncertain there. I think, and Pete chime in here, we're, when we look at the current labor market and the expanding of transportation and bus drivers, I mean, I think Pete would say we have a daunting lift just to get ready for our current schedule, and we're very concerned about getting the number of drivers to be able to fulfill that obligation. So I think it'd be very challenging to have complete flexibility for our schools because this is driven by costs at this point, what we're able to afford, as well as the labor availability. So I don't have a certainty that we would be able to provide flexibility like we have in the past just because so much has changed.
Pete Hartz, again, Chief Operating Officer. I think Dr. Parks said it well. One of the challenges we've had on the transportation side ever since I've been here was the number of start times that we had at schools. I don't remember the exact number, but it was like 38 different start times, whatever it was, probably even higher. But I mean, it was just a lot of, and so when you talk about the routing is always a challenge for our schools, so the more flexibility schools have, and especially if it's independent. And I know they usually work well with, was, you know, Rick Martin and now Scott Lee, but it does make it more challenging when we have that many start times. That being said, as I showed through those different options we have in front of us, we need at least two different start times for elementary schools to even come close to being able to do this in a cost-neutral basis. But when you have 40, 50 different start times, it does make it more challenging.
No, I appreciate that. I know we're not making that decision, but I think it's something to think about because, like, these individual communities that have that flexibility now, that may be what they say is, we have our own agreement, and they may be vehemently against taking that away from them, and that's going to cause some challenges in making a decision. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Cottle. Superintendent McNeil?
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Taylor. And just a couple real quick points on that. So part of this outreach effort is going to be for our employees and for our staff because they absolutely are stakeholders in this process. And the other thing that I also want to bring up is, we have to take a look at stack times. So between elementary and middle, if we keep an elementary or give them a particular flexibility, that may have an impact on that middle school time as well, too, as well as for childcare as well, too. Because as Dr. Parks was pointing out, many of our families may rely on the middle school or even the high schooler to help supervise. So stacking those times is going to be important in what we look at.
Thank you, Dr. McNeil. And I think really, when it, when it, when it comes down to it, we need to take whatever time necessary to do the outreach. That's important for the families, for the teachers, for the staff. the families, for the teachers, for the staff, right? Certainly. And we know here, and that's part, part of why when I said, hey, we, we have to make the vote because we have to consider that, you know, from the families, from the staff, the transfer, the real transportation limitations, and then the financial limitations, which they're connected, but they're different. We're hoping for enough bus drivers to do what we're doing right now. I mean, so that's why we, we have to put all of that in the pot and see what we, what we come up with. So I think that, and even if this puts us in November instead of October, which might be necessary to get to a place where there's comprehensive, I don't know if that's the case. As one trustee, I'm okay with that. I would rather take, we don't want to push families out too far, so I get that. We certainly want to have it done before we, before the turn of the calendar year. I think it's important. Certainly, yeah, right, for budget considerations. But I just think that this is something because it's such a big issue. I mean, there are compelling issues on all the sides, right? The, the well-being of students and, and, and what the research says about how they perform and, and all those things. That, that's real stuff, right? But the impact on families and, and teacher, I mean, this, it's, it's, it's a big, it's a heavy lift. It's a big issue. And so in this, in terms of, of the presentation here is, is the, let's do what it's necessary for us to do to make sure these, the constituencies that we're looking at have a voice, whether it's those that, I mean, they, maybe they don't ordinarily do surveys. We know there's certain top groups of our populations that those, those families don't necessarily do a really good job. It's us getting involved in surveys when we break down the demographics and whatnot, doing the best we can to, to make sure they have an opportunity to, to be present so we can hear that voice of, of all of them. Because it's just such a big issue. And even if we end up where we are, I mean, who knows, right? We don't know what we're going to end up doing. We have no idea, right? At least I, maybe you guys do, but I don't. But even if it's, it's important for us to be able to sit back and say, one, we know that whatever decision we make, whether it's just, even if it's to stay the same, it's not going to please everybody. We know that, right? But we, but it's really important that we say, we had, everyone had an opportunity to have their voice heard, and that we considered all of those things, and then landed in the place that we thought was the best place to land. So that's just, just more, just more encouragement on just maximizing every opportunity that we can to hear the voices because it's such a big decision. Dr. Nicolette?
Huge decision. And I think about the community in general and our students that work for them, whether it's a family situation, or, you know, they're just going to school after work, or sometimes before school, they're going to work. I really like what trustee Cottle said. I, I like giving more time. I like the thinking of being very creative and how we do some different things with outreach. And I guess lastly, I would say the only time constraint we have is that which we place on ourselves. And if it takes two years to get this right and make sure that everybody knows what's going on, then I say, let's do it. But I agree, let's take our time and let's do this right. And, and in your famous words, President, we're not going to be able to please everybody. We don't please everybody now. But if we can assure our community that we're going to do the best we can to receive, turn over every rock for input and, and share that, true transparency, sharing all information, then I'd say wherever we end up, we end up.
Okay, that being said, I'm looking, it looks like Vice President Cottle has a motion.
Okay, well, one thing I was going to quickly say is-
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was that mo, my bad.
Uh, I have to think about it. Is that I just think it's important as a district, we remember that there are populations of our community that are never captured in the traditional way that we have outreach. And so I do think that creative mind needs to be there on this because we can't, we have to at least make sure we're doing everything we can to reach them. If we, if they just choose not to take part, I mean, that's different. But we know it's there, and we don't want to miss anyone. So that's why I, I like the school-based approach, especially because those staff members know how to outreach those families. How that looks in a motion is another thing. Let me, let me just take a, take a stab at something. I'm over the Board of Trustees, directs the superintendent to formulate an outreach plan to where every school has an opportunity to provide feedback in a way appropriate for that school, whether it's through a PTO organization, through the staff at the school, so that the district can get individual feedback from every school community in our district to provide a comprehensive report to the Board of Trustees.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Seconded by, by trustee Calvert. The only thing I would say is, I, I, that felt a little weedy to me, in terms of getting down a little too much into, into saying, I think, remember, I think it's more of where the, the what, and the what on that, I think they got a little bit too much into the how. Maybe for me, maybe, but, but I, but I like where you're going because I think it's important. And so maybe if, if you're, if you'll be open to a friendly that really says that didn't have PTO and all that stuff, but that makes sure that each school is involved in, in, in a plan to get inputs from their population. And then that way, it's, it isn't so narrowly focused to this, or this, or this. And we're charging the superintendent to make sure that that happens. And when that comes back to us, it should be presented. I just, I just, I don't want to tie the hands, but what if a school doesn't have a PTO or what? I don't want to tie their, their hands, but if you work, that they work with each school to make sure that they're, that's, you see what I mean?
And I'm good with that. I just want to make sure the point of it was that every school is going to have an outreach plan for that school to ensure that every family has the opportunity to provide that feedback through a very intentional outreach plan by the district. So.
So what might that, from a friendly standpoint, you want to maybe?
You can take out the, the PTO and, and staff and just, and just, we can just say that, that every school needs to have an, have outreach specifically. So I mean, that was a lift, but that way you can reach everybody. With no timeline because that, I don't, that would probably handcuff you a lot because I don't want you to cut corners to meet the timeline. Going back to what Dr. Taylor said, if you miss the timeline, if we go into November, great.
Okay, that, so you're okay with that from a friendly change? Trustee Calvert, you're good with that? Okay. So we have the motion, we have the motion on the floor. JJ, you want to, can you give it a shot?
Absolutely. The Board of Trustees directs the superintendent to formulate an outreach plan that works with the individual schools to ensure every family is provided an opportunity to participate and provide feedback.
Did me, I see I'm getting some nods from the, from our trustees that made the motion, okay? Any further discussion? I'm ready to dump a comment on this item. So all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dang it, trustee Bigpen. All right, I got the aye. All right. Sorry, sorry, sorry. And I just looked up so you, just to you see if you had any comments. So, all right. So all those in favor, everybody said aye. Any opposition? The motion is carried. Let the record show it is six to zero. Thank you very much. And we know that's a heavy lift, but it's just so important. So we appreciate all your work. All right, Agenda Item 5.06. This is Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Washoe County School District's New Strategic Plan Response to Recovery. This is a two-year action plan to address system-wide academic recovery from a global pandemic, which includes goals and objectives based upon improving conditions for learning, re-engagement, academic recovery, and accelerated learning, and moving the college career readiness pathway and prom, and promise of a graduate with the presentation on the results from the survey on the draft strategic plan. And this is an action item, and we're way past 4:00 PM in terms of when we're going to see it. And our superintendent is over with Dr. Laura Davidson in front of us. So we'll turn it over to Superintendent McNeil.
Thank you very much, President Taylor, members of the board. So for tonight, Dr. Davidson is going to go over the feedback results from the strategic plan survey that was out. She'll go over some of the themes and some of the trends that we're seeing in the strategic plan. You all have had an ample, ample opportunity to review the plan. We all had a work session on the plan. We brought it back a couple of board meetings ago, and then the last board meeting as well. So as soon as Dr. Davidson is finished, I will review the plan very, very quickly so that we can go ahead and get to the work of making the motion. So with that, Dr. Davidson?
Thank you, President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, members of the board. For the record, Laura Davidson, Director of Research and Evaluation. And tonight, I'm presenting the results of the Response to Recovery Strategic Plan Survey that was on the district website for the past two weeks. So I'll start by just doing a quick introduction of why we did the survey, some of the methods behind it, and how we got the word out about the survey, and then some of the themes that we heard from our stakeholder groups about the strategic plan that we're proposing tonight. So why did we do this survey? So it's incredibly important to get stakeholder feedback on any strategic plan that we do. We know the strategic plan is our roadmap for many decisions that we make in the district, and certainly right now as we're recovering from the pandemic. So always important, but incredibly important this year, especially for some of the S R three funding that's coming our way in the next two years. They require that we post the Response to Recovery Strategic Plan online and collect feedback from multiple stakeholder groups. So it's not only important, but it's also required for some of that stimulus funding that's coming our way. So Communications did an incredible job posting this information to the public for the past two weeks. They developed a website specific to the Response to Recovery Strategic Plan where they posted the plan in English and in Spanish. They created a video. Many of you featured in that video to explain the plan. That was posted on several social media sites. There was a viewing party. And then they directly emailed all staff and all families in our school district with both the plan and a link to this survey. So it was available for two weeks on the website, and then they did two follow-up reminders to make sure that people were able to see it. And those reminders went to 66,221 families and staff, and it closed just on Thursday night. So you can see, as we are talking about surveys, this one had a challenging response rate. So we only had 2.6% of those respondents from those direct emails respond to this survey. That was about 1,701,699 responses to the survey. So probably a couple of reasons for that. The timing of the survey is tricky with the end of the school year and school being out. We've given a lot of surveys this year. We might have hit our saturation point for the year. And then this survey also required people review a fairly lengthy document before providing their feedback. So we know all those were challenges to hitting a high response rate for this survey. You can see on the bottom there how the survey responses broke out by role. And so the majority was from family, 23% staff, and then 8% selected multiple roles. So we'll show you some of the results by role groups, but you'll see there weren't huge differences in some of the data for, for by role. Okay, so this survey was brief. It was just a couple of questions. The first question that we asked was, how much do you agree or disagree that the measurable objectives in each goal address the most important priorities for Washoe County? So you can see over on the far right there that about three quarters of all role groups believed that we're in agreement that we are hitting the mark on the priorities for Washoe County School District overall with this plan. Not a lot of difference by respondent group. And then I'll just make a quick note here, because it's always confusing, the, the numbers don't add up to the overall because of those multiple role selections. So if people pick staff and family, they're represented up there twice, as well as in that multiple role category. And we do that because we want them to still stay with their original group, and then we just show the, the multiple role groups separately in case there ever questions about why those N sizes don't add up on this slide. So this question was tied to the previous one, and only the folks who said that they disagreed to the previous question saw this open-ended question here, which was phrased, if you disagree, why do you disagree? So you can see now we're working with some pretty small sample sizes. Just 270 people decided to provide feedback of the, about 480 who responded disagree or strongly disagreed previously. So 50% of that small group of strongly disagreed, disagree folks chose to provide a comment on this question. So just a reminder of how we do theme analysis, we take a random sample of the comments that we receive, get multiple coders to look at it to identify themes that we think are emerging. And then we look for search terms related to those themes and go back and forth to create that codebook so that when we're searching for terms, we feel very confident about the numbers that we're providing. That said, things like misspellings and, you know, different synonyms that we didn't think of aren't going to catch every single theme up here. But the, I feel very confident that this is, are the large themes that emerged from that process. So over on the left, you can see the number of comments that we received in relation to each of these major themes. I think because of the timing of this survey, following or right before the last board meeting on the ELA supplementary curriculum, it's natural that we would get some comments here about the district or the plan over emphasizing race and diversity. Most of these comments were not specific to the plan. They were just general comments about critical race theory in, in general. So just about the district generally, not specifically about how the plan addresses race and diversity, although there were a few of those comments. The other three themes that emerged, both in this question and the next one, were that it's broad, we're at a high level with the strategic plan, and many calls for details on how these goals will actually be achieved. So what does the action plan for each of these areas look like, and what does that mean for staff? About 34 said that, in general, the plan doesn't emphasize certain things that are really important to lots of staff, including things like smaller class sizes, other longstanding issues like higher staff salaries and retention of effective staff. There are a lot of calls for social and emotional and mental well-being supports to be called out specifically within the plan. But there are equal numbers of about 21 people who said that they just wanted everything to return to normal, and they didn't see the need for a specific Response to Recovery strategic plan that addressed the pandemic at all. There were also a few comments about reducing standardized testing, and then 10 comments specifically that requested something about arts and music be added to the strategic plan to call that out specifically. So the next set of questions we asked was about each goal within the strategic plan. As you can see here, the majority of folks, again, agreed or strongly agreed that we are on the right track in each of these areas. These, again, didn't very much by role, so, but about three quarters of all respondent groups agreed that these, these were the right priorities within the strategic plan. And then the last question was just a very broad one. Please provide any other comments you have about the strategic plan. We had about 468 responses. The themes here are almost identical to the first slide that I showed you on themes. The only ones that emerged here that are a little bit different from that was that folks are a little bit more split on prioritizing or not prioritizing COVID-19 mitigation approaches in schools. So we had more comments here about, we do need to keep masks, we do need to beef up our COVID-19 mitigation strategies. And then that final one, there were more comments in this question specifically around technology and that the district should ensure all students and staff have sufficient technology. But overall, very similar themes to what I presented previously. And that was it. I'm happy to take any questions on that, if there are any.
I don't think we have any on the survey. Any, anyone? Okay. Back, back to you, Dr. McNeil? Thank you, Dr. Davidson.
Thank you. Thank you very much. JJ, can you put up the strategic plan, please? So this would be the actual document that if approved, we would be putting out to our public. And as, as you all know, you all have been involved with strategic plans before. The strategic plan is just that, it's a roadmap. It is not meant to be an in-detail document. That's the work of the staff and the superintendent. So the strategic plan is the what, and the superintendent and the staff carries out the how. And so within that strategic plan, as you all know, there are five goals around academic achievement, human capital, community engagement, transparency and efficiency, and safety and security for our schools. And with each, and within each one of those goals, we go down to the objective level. Thank you very much, JJ. So if you want to, there you are. So we go down to the objective level, and then finally, you come out to the measurable outcome. And as you all know, there is a pathway as far as reporting- And as you all know, there is a pathway as far as reporting back to the board. You already have those dates. Those are integrated into your board calendar. So we come back to the board, and we report on the measurable outcomes and the progress to date on this Response to Recovery Plan. And just as a reminder, the Response to Recovery Plan is a two-year plan. So most likely, the board is probably going to want to start looking into developing a five-year strategic plan during the '22-'23 school year as this plan finishes up. This plan, as Dr. Davidson was reporting, is also very heavily tied to our SR2 and SR3 dollars. And so this document allows the board to have an outward-facing document as far as the uses of those dollars. And so with that, I will turn it over back to President Taylor.
Okay. Now, we know, we know we've had an all-day work session on this as well, but now we have the additional information of the community input, which I think is really important. I think what Dr. McNeil said that's really critical is that when we do the longer term, it isn't uncommon for districts across the country, especially larger districts, to focus on the recovery piece for the next two years because of the loss, you know, of time, instruction time, and so on, opportunities and whatnot for students. So this isn't, this isn't outside of what you find in other places across the country in terms of a targeted two-year effort. And this falls in line with us because it's strategic plan time anyway, so we can do it that way. But certainly in the second year of this Response to Recovery Plan, in the second year, then that would be the time when, I guess, another heavy lift effort, Ms. Anderson, in terms of putting together really a big, a robust, community-wide effort on the next five-year plan, or whatever the next plan is that we decide we want to do, right? Then whatever that next plan would be to go forward, a real comprehensive plan that isn't limited as much as this is really targeted toward, that's why it's called a Response to Recovery Plan, because it's really, really targeted specifically, intentionally on that two-year, that two-year effort. So. Would you all have a comment on this? Great. Thank you, JJ.
Christine McAvoy.
Christine McAvoy for the record.
McAvoy?
Yeah, that's.
I'm sorry. We probably mess it up every time you come. I'm sorry. Ms. McAvoy, welcome.
Thank you. Okay. So I don't know if you guys can do this or not, but today I'm here to request the board make a motion that no racially divisive CRT social justice-type teaching will be allowed in our schools. I feel at this point, the board knows where the majority of the community stands. We are against and will not stop fighting to keep children from being indoctrinated with these hateful curriculums like we saw in the Benchmark Advanced Supplement. I do want to thank the board, though, which seems like they are listening.
Ms. McAvoy, I'm just going to pause you. You should stop your time.
I'll wrap into the, I know it's.
You're connecting it?
It's a little long.
Awesome. Thank you. You got three minutes. As long as we're connected.
It'll come back.
We're good. Thank you. Bring it around.
I was thinking that as I was saying.
All right, good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I do want to thank the board because it seems like they are listening and understand some of the concerns. Trustee Church, who fights against his hate, and trustee Cottle's motions to take divisiveness and politics of any supplemental curriculum. And most of the trustees spoke about how equity is just not easily defined, and trying to make equity mean in our school district that it is equal opportunity and not equal outcome. Thank you for all that. However, here we are today looking at the Response to Recovery Plan, and we are once again dealing with the word equity. So Goal 5 Plan, 5.1, "Provided continuously improve a climate of belonging and self-worth and justice among students, families, staff, and community that is centered around an inclusive collaborative equitable and engaging learning environment by providing equitable practices, strategies, and material." The question again will be, whose equity? As one of the trustees looked up in Webster's, equity is defined as fairness. But the real trick is, how do you define fairness? If you want to talk about books being written about a word, as trustee Nicolette spoke of, the word fairness will fill endless shelves in a library. And whose justice? There's another volume-filling word. What I am concerned is with Superintendent McNeil and the Equity and Diversity Department. If Ms. McNeil consented to the hateful words of the letter, asking how students can learn about police brutality, demonstrating rioting, this stance is just a wash and the divisive politics of the day. Just as when you look at the Equity and Diversity Department's website, it is steeped in all the buzzwords of CRT and defined equity as every student having the same end goal on the website. It seems logical for those who believe we live in a white, systemically racist system that their equity fairness would be to teach radically divisive curriculums and promulgate policies, regulations, and plans that match that vision. And then next, you see Part 5.32 talks of an equity action plan, again, will be framed through the equity lens. So another giant plan soaked in the word equity, a word defined in as many ways as there are people on earth. How much money is the equity framing costing when it could be spent on teaching the basics? If you think of the logical progression of teaching CRT in schools, do you believe any family with money will stay in such a hostile district? Who will be left behind? Will you label the white child who has a disability, no clothes to wear to avoid bullying, being abused at home, to bear the burden of being labeled the oppressor? Is this a safe school environment you envision? Please do not go down this path. Teaching racism, for whatever reason you feel or believe is as good intent, is still racism. Thank you for listening. I do appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. McAvoy. Did I get that right?
You did.
Okay. You're welcome. Looks like we have another card coming.
Marika Moore.
Hi, everybody.
Welcome, Ms. Moore.
Hi. Thank you. So jumping in here, I'm going to comment on general comment that this was really interesting. All of these presentations are awesome to hear. This one, I second what she just said. But what I like to say is, regarding the presentation and the feedback that went out and was received, I, you know, we didn't receive very much feedback. There's a lot of people that did not get to comment on the recovery plan. And from what I have seen, there's a lot of people, a lot of people planning on pulling, they're even having workshops to pull their kids out because of the mask requirement. So what was just said is, I guess, a lot of people think there should be more of a mask requirement and more social distancing, but from what I'm seeing on my end, so maybe revisit, because I don't see that. I don't see people wanting more restrictions. So I just wanted to let you know that, revisit that before you start making decisions on making people wear masks, because a lot of parents are not happy about it. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
That's all I have for this item.
Okay. Thank you, JJ. Vice President Caldo?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I think regarding the survey, I think it's important for the district to evaluate what happened to the number of responses in our surveys, because I'm in the ballpark, I think, of around 10,000 responses to the budget survey. And the budget, it's important, but we don't get, you know, five hours' public comment on the budget. But then the benchmark had about 1,500, and this had about 1,700. So maybe 10% to 15% of what the budget survey got. To me, that's shocking. So I think evaluating on what's going on there, is it fatigue? Is it the length of time that it's open? Is it the delivery method? I think that's just an overall important point. And then my question is going to be for legal. Nothing that is in the strategic plan can be in a violation of a board policy. So I have that right. So board policy can't just be ignored to execute a strategic plan goal.
That's correct.
Okay. So I think it's, I think we have to just remember that, that we have to make sure in our policy development, that policies reflect what the board wants to see in the district operation, because the strategic plan is part of the operation. And so I'm referring to what the discussion on 9210 and what the board wanted to see out of equity here, that is going to spill into this. It has to, because that's a policy. And so I think it's important for the board to make sure that our policies are being carried out within strategic plans as well. We don't talk about that a lot, but I think it's important just to make sure that as an accountability measure that it is. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Caldo. Other comments, other comments, other comments on it. I think that was an important point to make, because the board laid out some really specific things, whether it was how we move forward, or whether it was in our policy, and what it is that we look for when it comes down to what equity means for us in this district. And as long as that's how we move forward from a policy standpoint, there is nothing that can violate that.
I think Dr. Davidson.
Oh, you want to make a comment on that, Dr. Davidson, please? On the, on the survey?
Yeah. Just, I'll just jump in quickly in response to that. I think we've been talking a lot at multiple presentations lately, that we do reach a point of survey saturation, I think. So just moving forward, to the extent possible that we can do random samples of smaller population groups so that we aren't oversaturating. And then I do know this one is challenging surveys after the school year ends is tricky. But I know that this, the plan needs to be posted by a certain deadline because of SR3 funding, so that's why there is a quick turnaround and the need to do it after school's ended. But, and then Michelle, I don't know if you want to talk at all about some of the dissemination practices that you did. We did actually quite a bit more dissemination for the survey than we have previously, but to your point, we, at the start of the school year, had 18,000 responses on one of our surveys, and now we're down to 1,700. So it's definitely something we need to look into.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, obviously, we know sometimes our, you know, surveys aren't picked up on the news media, but our media partners did cover the survey. So it was interesting to us to see we did have that low response rate, because we did push it out to the news media, they did cover it to help us get that input. And going back to the, when we're talking about equity and what does that mean, with the plan, obviously, you see the draft plan, but my team's charge will be to take this plan and make it look like a finalized document, where we have definitions at the beginning, so it can be clearly defined, so people, the community, our families, read that and really understand where we are going with that, so it isn't doing any exclusion. And then we did not include on this, because we thought it would be very confusing in the draft plan. Obviously, you have those benchmarks where we're reporting back to the board at those specific timeframes. That would be included in the final plan. So just to make that clear for the board.
Thanks to you both. That's good, actually, good additional information, good reminders and good. More stuff that lets us know when it's going to actually come out and look like it. The measurements are important, and we've worked really hard on our strategic plan in the past to always have measurables, because what gets measured gets done. And so there are things that we're looking at. So that makes a difference. So thank you. So they're certainly in there. Thank you for that. Dr. Nicolette?
Thank you. And I would have to say that as a general community member who, who looks at, at these measurables, they're not always clear. And that's not a, that's not a right or wrong, good or bad. It's just that, you know, I've been in education a long time, and I had to really go through this with a fine-tooth comb to figure out, oh, how are we going to measure this, and what does that mean? And then what are we going to do with it? So I would have to say that as succinct as this plan is, and as much work went into it, that I would say, I don't even know, a lot was done behind the scenes with our teachers, our leadership, the experts. It's still, it's still very, very complex. And for the general community to want to spend time on this, I think the numbers came out pretty darn good myself, because it was people who were really very interested in looking at a complex document, and I would have to thank them for that.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolette. Any other comments, questions from the board? Dr. McNeil has turned this over, and the recommendation is for a motion to move forward, and certainly keeping those things in mind. And I think a real key piece is, we never want to put anything in there or out there, so to speak, that contradicts what we've already established in policies. And that, that gives some accountability, I guess you can say in one word. And then also a comfort level, I guess, in another word, in that there's, there's nothing, I will say this, I think it's important to say, is there is nothing that I've ever heard from anyone on this board that wants to be divisive in our schools, that wants some students to be seen as bad and other ones as good, or based upon how they look, how they live, or anything like that. And I don't think there's, not I don't think, there is never going to be the intention of, at least the board, as I know us to be today, to, to put anything out there that allows for that. That's not the intention. And, and I think we've, we've worked hard over these last few weeks in particular to put some things in place to make sure that doesn't happen. And it can't be slipped in, because those things have to be changed on the public record. So. All right. Vice President Caldo, I think you're leaning in for a motion.
Yep. Last one. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the new Washoe County School District Two-Year Strategic Plan Response to Recovery.
Thank you, Vice President Caldo. Is there a second? Second, and reluctantly, I heard that reluctantly. No, no, it's because it's his last one. I get it. I get it. But Clerk Vanello, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposition? The motion is carried. Let the record show, it is six to zero. Six to zero, so we have a two-year strategic plan going forward. We have, certainly, staff has their marching orders. And thank you for those, thanks for those in the community that stayed to make sure that your voices are heard on it. Keep, keep watching, and I know you will. I know you will. All right. We're going to, we don't, our student representative is not here, off for the summer, I'm sure. So we're going on to the superintendent's report, Agenda Item 6.02. Oh, do we have public, do we have? No, no, it's not yet. It's not yet. I got the agenda. I'm good. 6.02.
Well, I think we've all enjoyed graduations this week. We had, we've had great graduations, which is, just kind of fills your bucket every single day, to see those, those students actually physically walk across the stage and get their diploma after, after what they've been through. And just a huge shout out to our principals and our teachers and our staff that have been there. It's just been tremendous. And we'll, we'll take a look at, at feedback from our principals and our staff as far as how this year's graduation ceremonies went. And we will bring that back to the board several months down the road, as far as what that would look like. And then just super quick, I wanted to present to the board. This is something that's near and dear to our hearts. I can't even believe it's been 10 years that we have been a cross-district initiative with Castle. And so, for 10 years. So very nice plaque. So celebrating 10 years of the Castle Collaborating Districts Initiative presented to the Washoe County School District, in appreciation of their ongoing commitment to social, emotional learning for all students and adults. So.
All right, turn that sheet. I want you to see.
Thank you.
Fantastic. That's great. That's it for your report, Superintendent?
That is it for my report.
Okay. We're on the public comment. JJ, we have some, some public comment? Agenda Item 7?
Aye.
Okay. Hang on, just be seated. She'll get, she'll get to you. Hang on. Okay. It's all right.
Valerie Fianaca. Then William McCrayley.
We're back.
Welcome, Ms. Fianaca. Yes, welcome back.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Cottle. You represent my district or my region, and good luck to you wherever you go. I really appreciated the fact that you're going to include parents' consent in the telehealth. That was a concern of mine. Before I go on, I'm one of the 1,699 people who responded to your survey. I read every, every bit of it. I want to say first off, something I hadn't planned to say, but COVID may be the least of your problems. Kids leaving for homeschooling and less money in the following years may be bigger than COVID because of your CRT program, which you don't call CRT, I realize. I took a deep dive into the Washoe County website today. I spent three hours at it before I came, and I sat here for all day. At least a deeper dive as a citizen can do. I wanted to look at all of the materials and curriculum that I could. I would like to see a portal for all materials to be accessible to everyone, but I suppose that's rather wishful thinking. One thing's very evident from my multi-hour foray. However, the concern over CRT is a day late and a dollar short. It's everywhere for all to see, and has probably been there for some time. Shame on us for not paying closer attention, us people out here. I would like to refer back to the last board meeting and mention the HUG High School coach and history teacher who spoke. He's an icon in our community, by the way. He was in favor of this curriculum, but I'm not sure he totally understands it. I, too, want America's history taught accurately, as he does. The good, the bad, and the ugly, which there are some of there. But most importantly, our triumphs. Hopefully, as a people, we can agree that America has done great things and helped many people achieve greatness. People don't flock here for no reason. They see us as a country of opportunity and freedom. Let's not lose that thought in our education of our children. It's really important. I watched a North Korean woman talk recently who had escaped her country and eventually wound up here after many struggles, describe her college campus culture as being more oppressive than North Korea. And I wanted to cry. I really wanted to cry when I heard her say that. She's going to Dartmouth. I think Dartmouth. Maybe not. I don't remember. But I don't remember a lot. That should shock every one of us, but it will not. I'm old and tired. I've seen a lot of politics. I saw an actual bomb blow up inside of our Capitol Building. I don't know how some of us are old enough to remember that happening. Yes, inside. That protester was later pardoned by President Clinton after serving 15 years in prison. You can Google it to check me. What we're witnessing right now can be called whatever you like, but it's straight up Marxism.
Thank you, Ms. Fianaca.
William McCrayley, Lexi Dieter, then Tyler Tolstok.
Welcome, Ms. Dieter.
Hello. Um, hello, everyone. My name is Lexi Dieter, and I'm a very recent graduate of Kalina High School. I'm here today to bring the board's attention to a blind spot I feel has gone overlooked for too long. The avoidance of LGBT plus topics in Washoe's sex education program for high school students. As a queer student myself, I have been frustrated by this blind spot many times. For a district that presents itself as being student first and equity focused, it seems to me entirely unacceptable that LGBT plus students are not provided the same accurate and direct instruction that straight cisgender students are. The world of the queer teenager is one that is often already difficult to navigate. It is my belief that in light of this, schools should especially strive to be safe, accepting places for them. But how can we expect high school students to feel safe and accepted in places that consistently fail to adequately acknowledge them in their curriculum? Together with Washoe County Students for Change, I implore you to reform our sex education program for high school students. While the change is made to the curriculum as a result of the September 2019 meeting, or a start, the current program is still inadequate in that it fails to provide the same care and thoroughness and education for LGBT plus students as it does their peers. Equity is ideal, but equal is our right. To rectify these failures, Simone Gardella, Leah Della Bordella, and I have created a nine-part acronym to demonstrate the elements we feel are most lacking from the current curriculum. Embrace it. The E stands for expression versus identity and includes information on pronouns, as well as the differences between presentation and gender identity. The M stands for mental health and introduces students to the ways in which sexuality and gender can affect mental health by tackling topics such as gender dysphoria and the impacts of bullying. The B stands for boundaries and consent and covers both the importance of clear consent and the idea that abuse is not always direct, nor always perpetuated by men, nor exclusively present in cis het relationships. The R is for reclaiming language and explores the serious history behind certain words and why only people who identify with them can use them. The A stands for alternate family structures and explains how adoption laws vary by state, surrogates, and other options for building a family. The C stands for contraceptives and provides guidance on the various contraceptives and birth control methods that may prove useful in same-sex relationships. The E stands for exploring health in relationships and centers on how to navigate a lack of acceptance in any relationship, be that platonic, familial, or intimate, and strategies for recognizing and avoiding unhealthy relationships. The I stands for intersex and the T stands for transitioning. And both of these letters are concerned with the gender experience. Embrace it is 100% based on Goldfarb and Lieberman's 2020 study titled Three Decades of Research: The Case for Comprehensive Sex Education as Shared with the Board via Email. It is our intention to have comprehensive sex education be added to the agenda for July's meeting, and we would appreciate any guidance on how to move forward with that mission after the meeting. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Dieter. And congratulations on your graduation.
Tyler Tolstok, Eugenio Jersovich, Mark Green, Victoria Meyer, James Benton.
Welcome back, Mr. Benton.
Good evening, Board. My, for the record, my name is James M. Benton. I wish to discuss masks tonight. During my talk, I may ask some questions, but they're rhetorical questions and I don't expect an answer from any of the board members. There's just something that I will be continuing to study on. The Washoe County School District has a mandate to educate students and do no harm. I object, I object to wearing a mask. I believe that it's unhealthy for me. I also believe that masks do not guarantee protection from viruses. What is the science relating to masks? Some states have already eliminated mask requirements. The Washoe County Commission is not requiring masks. I was there today. There are effective treatments for COVID: ivermectin, hydroxychloroquine, and others. Last year has been a year of pandemic. Heart disease, 690,000 deaths. Cancer, 595,000 deaths. COVID, 350,000. Has the health emergency been politicized? There is data based on the Epoch Times that parents sent some masks to a lab to be evaluated, and they came up containing dangerous pathogens. They also sent masks as a control that had not been warned. Data shows that children are minimally affected by COVID and that children are not super spreaders. Governor DeSantis signed an executive order eliminating all COVID restrictions, including mask wearing. But some school districts in Florida maintain the requirements. Where does the Washoe County School District get the authority to mandate the wearing of masks as a medical intervention? There are negatives to wearing masks in an educational setting. Do the benefits outweigh the negatives? What are the negatives? What are the remedies to someone who finds wearing a mask unhealthy? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benton.
Stephanie O'Camp.
Welcome, Ms. O'Camp.
Okay. So according to your own website, the school board has five goals. I want to talk about goal three, which is to engage family and community members. The community engaged in regards to the Benchmark Program. The community took the survey. Did you seem to care? No. Instead, you created a task force to carry out your sick and vile child abuse because the community engagement didn't confirm your own systemic bias and races. Let's talk about goal four, which is to establish a system that is effective, transparent, efficient, and accountable by using meaningful structures and processes. What could be more effective, efficient, transparent, accountable, and meaningful than a community poll in which every single person had the opportunity to take in regards to the Benchmark Program? Nothing. This was perhaps the best possible tool to gauge public interest in this program. And you took the results of this poll, which were almost 90% in opposition, and crapped all over the community and created a task force to deal with this because you didn't like the results. Perhaps most of you have lost, lost touch with the broader community. According to the law in Nevada, child abuse is a general intent crime. This means that a person doesn't have to intend to harm a child or violate the law to be guilty of child abuse. The person only has to commit the acts that result in harm to the child. Examples are perpetually telling a child they're worthless and brainwashing or radicalizing a child with destructive ideological beliefs. Charges can range from a Class A felony that carries with it a life sentence, to a Class B felony with one to six years in state prison, to a gross misdemeanor with up to a $2,000 fine and/or 364 days in jail. NRS 432B140 defines maltreatment of a child if the child has been subjected to harmful behavior that is terrorizing, degrading, painful, or emotionally traumatic. With the critical race theory that makes up the Benchmark Program, you will be degrading children, you will be emotionally traumatizing children, you will be brainwashing and radicalizing children. According to the law, this all constitutes mental abuse of a child. There is a very real possibility that you all could become felons. One can dream. Are any of you familiar with disparate impact discrimination or disparate treatment? It arose out of Title VII of the 1964 Civil Rights Act, which introduced regulations that prohibit discrimination on the basis of a protected class. Disparate impact requires no intent to discriminate, but whether the outcome of the policy or practice results in discrimination against individuals in a protected class. This includes any practice that has a different negative effect on persons of a protected class. An individual complaining of discrimination by disparate impact does not need to show that there was a discriminatory motive, but only has to show that the actions resulted in discrimination. Here's a question from the Benchmark Program for fifth grade. How does white male privilege give people a false sense of self? This question will have a particularly negative impact on white male kids. This is in violation of federal law on the basis of color and sex, two protected categories, and could possibly be the basis of a disparate impact claim.
Thank you, Ms. O'Camp.
Dee Anderson.
Welcome, Ms. Anderson. Don't be nervous. You're okay.
I'm getting, I'm getting there.
You're, you're getting better. You're getting, you're good.
Okay, well, I had to change everything because this meeting has been a little bit of a kumbaya, a little bit more so than the past few. So, but there's only one person who can be held responsible for entirely eliminating the opening public comment opportunity from this board's agenda and relegating the only remaining public comment timeframe to the very end of the board agenda, no matter who actually made the decision. That person is you, Ms. Taylor, the current board president. That's not an attack. I actually think if I were in your position, I might have tried to do, come up with a similar idea because I'm something of an efficiency expert, and I think it is kind of a good point. Unfortunately, I'm not sure the motivations are based purely on efficiency. And so the timing of the actions are going to be viewed as nothing more than a punitive response to the disfavor with overwhelming public objections to the district's attempts to implement and inflict a curriculum that is divisive and detrimental to the public good. I wrote this prior to the meeting, so I'd like to take a moment to thank all of you for making what, what appears to be some conciliatory action this evening. Perhaps you are beginning to listen. The bottom line, there's nothing you can do that will make us go away. We are not uninformed. We are not uneducated. We are not going to be bullied by anyone calling us racist or ignorant because we are neither. We are people who may have innocently declared our belief in libertarian principles, believing that if we let people do as they wish, they would have the courtesy to extend the same to us. What we have come to realize is that there is indeed right and wrong. There is indeed good and bad. But our tolerance wasn't enough. You have come to claim our souls. But more dear to us even than that is that you have come to claim the souls of our children. You won't prevail. Very simply, we will not let you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Shannon Coley.
Welcome, Ms. Coley.
Shannon Coley. I would like to respond to a column written in the RGJ by Stephanie Crown and Dallas Smith's column in This is Reno. Ms. Crown believes that we, the people objecting to the social justice curriculum, should be ignored by this board. She calls us wingnuts, political activists, white supremacists. Her utter superiority and condescension is palpable. Every time I have addressed this board, I have used direct quotes and specific examples from the curriculum. I am not sure that they have even read it. Ms. Crown, there is nothing political or racist about objecting to the school districts using divisive terms like oppressive culture and white male privilege. And Superintendent McNeil, it does use those exact words. This is not misinformation. You flat out lied to K U and R, trying to make it look as if we, the people, are spreading misinformation. That's called gaslighting. I demand you contact Paul Boger and retract the false statement. On Benchmark Social Justice at Every Age page, it literally says that work must be done through productive struggle. Seriously?
Ma'am, if you can keep that mask up over your nose, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
With five to 10-year-olds, productive struggle. How is that okay? That sentence alone should disqualify Benchmark from being considered. Do you know what other youths have struggle sessions? I'll give you a hint. Think cultural revolution. I am not a political activist because I'm raising objections to lessons that state ludicrous axioms like BIPOC people are denied access to clean water, jobs, healthy foods, and voting rights. This is a declarative statement as if simply because of the fact of the color of their skin, they are denied these things. And you wonder why we are questioning these lessons. Ms. Crown and Mr. Smith and other people criticizing our objections say we are trying to suppress this country's racist past. That is another lie. I want the true history of America told. Can anyone please cite the specific grades and lessons, lesson plans that illuminates this racist history which we are trying to suppress? I must have missed those ones. Because these lessons are not about covering any meaningful historical events. They are socio-economic grievances that every race struggles with. Yet, they are portrayed as if it only relates to minorities. Benchmark depicts the abomination of slavery as America's original sin. It is not. Slavery has happened on every continent to every race since antiquity. But America did abolish it. And in 1964, there were federal civil rights laws.
I'm sorry, you know your time is up. Thank you, ma'am.
Marika Moore.
Welcome back, Ms. Moore.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So the presentation on transportation was interesting. And I noticed, it was hard for me to read, but it looked like it was 1,558,000 was the highest expense that could happen because of the transportation changes, I think. Did you guys see that? Was that, I'm just putting it out there. Okay. So I love how, I, this might not be exactly right, but you want to create an outreach plan to ensure every family is invited to participate in that. I love that, too. So if that's the possible most expensive part of the budget, and from what I understand, it's about $10,000 per student that the school gets. I'm going to go back to what I said before. I don't know if you know, but there are workshops being held around the county teaching people how to get their kids out of public schools because of what is, has happened and what's going to happen with this benchmark. So, great. A task force has been created. The social benchmark has been supposedly put away. I don't think it has. So if it hasn't, and this task force continues on pushing this social benchmark program, CRT, I've read it. Have you all read it? Have you actually read it? Have you read it?
I will say this, we all had an opportunity to read it. You know, we don't respond. So I want you to go ahead. I don't want to use up your time. So, okay?
Because that is true, what they said. So if everyone starts pulling their kids out because of the masks, no, the masks, you know why they should go. They shouldn't have been implemented in the first place. I wrote this last July. This shouldn't have happened. They should not be required to be wearing masks to public schools. Masks. Proposed vaccinations. I know that's not there. Proposed vaccinations. They'd better not enforce that. Back to the CRT. So if 1,558,000 dollars is the biggest expense for transportation, then it will take 155.8 students only to make up that really high cost. So in the outreach plan about transportation, why don't you bring up social benchmark and ask every single family to participate that? Because my kids and black people, white people, Mexican people, they're all, they've all been here. We're not racist. We're not homophobic. Let me talk about how this divisive plan is wrong.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Pablo Nava Duran.
Welcome back, Mr. Duran.
Okay. And first, I apologize.
Okay, I feel sorry about that you heard about people talk about CRT. I like to send a message to white-winged groups to say that, so. So, I know you, I know that America is a true country, a real opportunity, happiness, pursue life, liberty, and pursue happiness. It's a way, way to go for the America. Yes, it's a good thing about America, and there was a bad thing about America, about the slavery and the civil war, and then we got the patronation of the Thirteenth Amendment and Fourteenth Amendment, which gives sense to all the people who were born, who were born here, and the Threeteenth Amendment, what a people of color have the right to vote. And, uh, yes, we do have our oppression, that the truth from America. The good, bad, and ugly, so. The ugly is, uh, we banned, we have a Chinese collusion act, which is, we have a Chinese collusion act, and we got immigration act in 19, 1924, which is ban all countries from Asia and limit people of South Europe and limit people of North Europe. That's homophobic as America has gets. A good thing, uh, you got immigration act in 1965, we get regular quota system, and I do know the, the white wings groups are, have a friendship from Fox News, ORN, or Nuke Mass, or, or from Facebook, any kind of white wing oracles, that kind of stuff, so. That, uh, true, it's a, America was a wasted country, but not anymore, so. Uh, so not anymore, so we got some police brutality here, and we know the, that showed that it's the black, African-American more likely to kill, being shot at, than a white colored part. And, uh, that's it for the history, and that's it. And, uh, for the, uh, for the, I got a message for Kurt, Judge Kurt, so I'd like to say I'm gonna miss you and take care for the health. And I have a message for you and Coach, Trustee, Calady, I'm gonna miss you, good luck, Wisconsin at AD, and we're gonna miss you as Washoe County School District, and you go do well in Wisconsin.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
The board also received emails from Katie Stout, Judy Cook, April Ophria, Sarah Pinkston, Ava Bopri, Karen Kellison, Constance Hansen, Richard and Deborah Carey, Molly, Kristen DeHahn, R. Crump, Blair Speth, Rachel Fisher, Valerie White, Darla Lee, and James Goodrich.
Thank you, JJ. Okay, that's it for Agenda Item Seven, Public Comment. Our next regular meeting, regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees is July 27th. That is the regular meeting, but there are meetings for those who may be interested in filling any of the open trustee seats, and that has been publicized, so. Thank you very much, everybody. We are adjourned.